One, we're going to get started. And let me just check in with our clerk and make sure everything's a go with her. All right. And for those online, we were just pausing. We had so many people out in the lobby. Wanted to make sure people got in safely and got residents their seats. And so, Madam Clerk, tell me when we are all together to start. Okay?
Madam Vice Mayor, we're ready to go if you are.
Yes, I am. All right. Well, again, let me just make sure I got the right agenda here. Again, good morning, everyone. We are calling to order the Wednesday, September 25th, meeting of the Reno City Council. I want to welcome you all. I'm sure we have some first timers in the audience. In fact, why don't you raise your hands if you have not been here before? Okay, that is the vast majority of you. Okay. Well, I want to make it as easy for you as possible. Thank you. You can lower your hand. The clerk will be, before we start public comment, and we're not up to that yet, the clerk will be reading a notice of disclosure about how people online can participate in public comment, and also what to say, what not to say. Just be careful and just be aware and be thinking right now. You have a three-minute timeline to speak. We want you to be able to say what's on your mind without getting cut off, so just keep that in mind. We will begin today with the Pledge of Allegiance. And let me just see. I was looking for our, yes, our artist. You know who you are. Oh, we can't hear. Okay. So, Mr. Reese, would you please lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to a Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, calling roll for Wednesday, September 25th, Reno City Council meeting. Councilmember Breckus.
Present.
Doerr.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert.
President.
Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Sheevy, absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right. Fantastic. And then, just so you know, and in case there's people online, you may also make public comment. And in fact, I'm going to have the clerk read a disclosure right now about public comment.
Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to do that before our proclamations this morning?
Well, I was going to have the proclamations be part of the public comment. Just call them first.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, our first public, our first item today is public comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash L-I-N-K-S period R-E-N-O period G-O-V forward slash C-O-U-N-C-I-L nine hyphen two five. It should be noted for those in attendance that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
All right. Well, thank you for that information. I hope everybody got it. And we want to start public comment this morning with two proclamations. We have, first of all, we're joined with some furry, four-legged friends, which are my very favorites. No offense to all you people. But it's in honor of National Service Dog Month, and I'd like to ask Ted Burford and his friends from Canine Companions to come to the podium, please. What a cutie pie. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Ted Burford. I'm with the Canine, the Comstock Chapter of Canine Companions. And for this month of September, City of Reno has issued a proclamation, whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of human canine bond and exclusivity for all citizens. And in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability, and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and the need is growing. Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships, and Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life of greater independence by providing best-in-class, ongoing support in the community. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. Now therefore, Ms. Mayor Hillary, Mayor City Reno of Reno, Nevada, do hereby declare September 2024 National Service Dog Month, and in for the city of Reno. She encourages all citizens to celebrate service dogs and be respectful to the rights afforded to adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of this assistance. And if you'd please, I just have a little bit of a basic etiquette.
Yeah, please.
All right. I have a little thing here, basic service dog etiquette. So if you see a dog with a vest out in public, speak directly to the handler, not to the service dog. Ask before interacting, because some dogs, like flying dogs, CNI dogs, cannot be approached because they have to focus on their handler. Always assume a service dog is busy working, not off duty. And be respectful of the dog's space, because we've seen time again, kids, people walking all the way up or rushing up to one of our dogs. There are three different services. Service dogs are trained with specific tasks to assist a person with disability. They're allowed in most public places. Therapy dogs, like our organization provides their dogs, are certified dogs to provide support in schools, courts, hospitals, and they're only allowed in public places where therapy work occurs. Emotional support animals are just, provide comfort to people with mental disabilities, and those are not allowed in public places. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. What's your next stop for National Dog Day?
I do have.
Or month, excuse me.
I do have a very special announcement, that in the 49th years that we've been here, we have placed over eight, we placed Team 8,000 this past August.
8,000 service dogs?
Eight thousand service dog teams.
Wow. That's an incredible number. That's across the country?
That is across the country.
Okay. And you are part of the national group?
Yes, we are part of the Comstock Chapter.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you so much for being here. And did you introduce who you have here with you?
We have Marcus, who is one of our senior puppies, and then we have Casole, who's five and a half months.
And then who's with you here?
We have Laura and Tom, who are, burn, who are with, from Dayton. And then we have Margie, who's one of our breeder caretakers, and then Cheryl, who is Marcus's, and Cheryl has been, is our chapter president.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and your dogs are magnificent, and I've seen many of them at work in our community. Thank you so much for making, helping people live a more regular life, we'll call it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Our second proclamation this morning is about using the power of sports to cross cultural barriers and build relationships and understanding. And I'd love to invite April Wolf. Thank you, April, for coming up to present a proclamation on sports for social change.
All right. For the record, April Wolf, therapeutic recreation specialist for City of Reno. I'm just putting up a little one-pager about PH International and what this exchange is about as I read the proclamation. So whereas PH International solicited the City of Reno to host 10 Nepali participants for a multi-day, all-inclusive, Sports for Social Change sports program, and whereas PH International, an implementer of cultural exchange programs on behalf of the U.S. Department of State's Department of Education Cultural Affairs, Sports Diplomacy Division International Sports Programming and Initiative, whereas the City of Reno's Sports for Social Change sports program provide Nepali participants with the opportunity to engage as representatives of their home community and learn about how to grow adaptive sports programs in Nepal. And whereas the City of Reno is a leader in offering year-round adaptive recreation programming and takes pride in hosting this program for our community's Nepali participants. Now therefore, I, Hillary April Wolf, she be mayor of the City of Reno, do hereby declare September 25th, 2024, Sports for Social Change Day.
Wow. Amazing, April, and just incredible. And then who do you have here with you?
So with me is James and Keenan from PH International. They are the staff that helped bring this group of Nepali athletes to Reno, Nevada.
What a journey. And how long have they been in Reno?
So they landed Monday night, and they will be flying back to Nepal on October 4th. So we have a very action-packed agenda for them of adaptive sports. Most of the athletes are wheelchair basketball or wheelchair rugby athletes, so they'll be integrated into our practices and programs, as well as getting cultural experiences while they're here U.S.-bound.
I mean, truly remarkable, and I haven't run into the likes of it, frankly. I mean, this is a first for me in the 10 years of serving here. Just thank you for what you do every day, April. And I know, Madam Mayor, or I'm not sure, you said the mayor's not online yet?
I did say.
Oh, she is. I know, Madam Mayor, you have a real heart for what April Wolf does. I didn't know if you also had a comment. Okay. All right. Well, not quite online right now, but I know that how deeply she cares.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Oh, sorry. April, you are amazing. I love everything that you do. We are just so lucky to have you. Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. You are just a shining star, and I'm sure you also appreciated our previous proclamation, since I know you're very familiar.
Yes, I also have a service dog.
Service dogs, right? So it's kind of April Wolf Day in the City of Reno, but this is fantastic. And just keep bringing them to council, because we want to support you in every way possible. But I think you're one of those people, you're so humble, you're very shy, and I don't think a lot of people know the amount of work that you get across the finish line. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. You are truly amazing, amazing, amazing.
Thank you. If we could put the picture back up one minute. So there is a unique opportunity with this exchange. This is the inbound exchange as far as the Nepali athletes coming to Reno, Nevada. However, there is an outbound exchange as a part of this program. If anybody wants to scan the QR code and knows an individual that's a wheelchair basketball athlete or is passionate about disability advocacy or adaptive sports, they are welcome to apply to potentially go to Nepal in April.
Whoa, okay.
Wow.
So Renoites could go to Nepal. Wow.
Fully funded by the U.S. State Department.
Really?
That's amazing. And so can we just make sure, I'm sure A.J. would love to continue to highlight this. So let's just make sure we share it as much as we possibly can on our social.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for being here, April. And then, Madam Clerk, I know we have our next speaker. Thank you so much again to all the athletes who have come to Reno and made the journey to participate in our community. Again, thank you so much. All right. All right. Well, Madam Clerk, if you could call up our next speaker?
I think they want to go.
A photo. You bet. Come on up. Can someone out, our staff, help facilitate that, please?
Here, guys?
Oh, all the way up?
VIP.
Take that down.
All right. Thank you so much.
So guys, chairs in the front, I think, so we can all get dressed.
Shoot that side, I'll shoot this side. You shoot front. Right here in the front.
You sure? Okay.
You're much taller than me, you'll get a much better angle.
All right, everyone ready? Are you ready? One, two, three. Let's say, "Sports for Social Change." There it is. Wonderful. Thank you, guys. Oh, we got one more.
One, two, and, oh wait, hold on. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Right out this way, next.
Again, thank you for making the journey all the way here, for participating in our community. It's truly remarkable. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, Madam Clerk, we're going to move back to our regular public comment.
by Craig Bronson, followed by David Shakar.
Welcome, Terry.
Good morning. Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today's presentation is about so-called class and politics when it comes to discrimination. People are more likely to vote if they are members of the upper class and are also more likely to vote for members of the upper class. People are more likely to run for office if they're members of the upper class, and they are more likely to win with votes from the upper class. People of the upper class give more as campaign donations, which helps people of the upper class to win more elections. So the people of the upper class tend to be more fully represented, which encourages them to vote and donate, so they will be more contented. People are somewhat likely to vote if they're members of the middle class, and they are somewhat likely to vote for members of the middle class. People who run for office, who are members of the middle class, will probably receive more of their votes from members of the middle class. People of the middle class give less in campaign donations, which makes it less probable for middle-class candidates to win such elections. So the people of the middle class are usually somewhat represented, which sometimes encourages them to donate and vote and hope they will be more contented. People are less likely to vote if they're members of the lower class, so there won't be many votes for candidates of lower class. So very few people run for office who are members of the lower class, and if they did, they wouldn't receive many votes from the lower class. People of the lower class give very little in campaign donations, which makes it less probable for their candidates to win elections. So the people of the lower class don't seem to be well-represented, except for when politicians who care about them want them to be represented. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I got a lot more to say.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Always a cute social commentary. Thank you.
Craig Bronson, followed by David Shakar.
Craig Bronson, resident of Reno. I'll be brief. I wanted to lend my support. I'm a longtime park recreation professional. I also serve on the City of Reno Recreation and Parks Commission. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve in that capacity and support staff. The two items I just wanted to lend support to were D1 and D5. D1 is creating a park of all the city-owned property along the river, and I wanted to remind the city council that great, great cities that have rivers that embrace them become great cities, and I think what you're doing is excellent. It also will allow staff and enforcement, when you have one property with one set of rules, it makes it easier so that people aren't differentiating between what you can do in a park, what you can do in a sidewalk, what you can do on a street. So I hope you'll support staff's recommendation on D1. D5, unfortunately, the $2 million of ARPA funds that were set aside for flat fields couldn't all be spent, and of course, it wasn't going to solve all the problems. So I support the recommendations that are being made to use the money in other avenues, but I did want to remind the city council, and I heard this at the opening of Moana Pool, which by the way, congratulations, that was longcoming. It is a wonderful facility. But flat fields, I think, are the next issue that we need to deal with in this community. And I heard one of our council members remind, flat fields is next on the agenda. So anything we can do, either as a private citizen or with the Recreation and Parks Commission or the community at whole, we need to make sure that we start taking care of those flat fields throughout the community. With that, thank you.
Mr. Bronson, thanks for taking time. Thanks for serving on the commission, and thanks for being here to advocate on their behalf. Really means a lot.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Shakar, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor and honored council members. My name is David Shakar. I'm a freelance, independent artist, and I owe a personal apology to Mayor Hillary Sheevy. And the reason for that is, many years ago, after Stephen C. White sued the city of Reno, and with the help of Mayor Sheevy and the previous administration of Bob Keschel, art became legal in Reno pursuant to Reno Municipal Code 5.14 and Special Events, RMC 8.13. So what happened is Hillary Sheevy, you had asked me to draw portraits of all the people on the city council at that time. However, I had a, an issue, a vision issue, and I stopped drawing, and I lost my confidence. I didn't draw for, for many years. But then I realized I love drawing people's faces live more than life itself. And so I got back into it, and I just wanted to let you know, Mayor Sheevy, that I will, I will pursue that, and I will promise that I will do as we once said, which was back in, when art became legal, is on April 2014. That's when you spoke to me about asking me to draw the portraits of everyone on the city council at that time. And I will do that, except it'll be a little bit of time, because I need to have my skills get better in order, so that I could honor you in the manner to which I aspire. Thank you.
You are so kind, my friend. I so appreciate you, and I have the one in my office, and I will forever cherish it. You just got to keep creating, because it's so good for the soul, and I'm glad you're back at it. And I look forward to seeing the portraits. So thank you so much. That is awesome.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Sheevy. Appreciate you.
Likewise, likewise, David.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Shakar. And can we expect portraits or caricatures, or what are you thinking?
Caricatures.
Okay. All right. Thanks for being here.
Stephen White. David, will you? Thank you. Followed by Anthony Townsend, followed by Will Truce.
Good morning, folks. My name is Stephen White. I'm an artist and artist advocate. You know, for the last many years, I've been doing my best to deliver the gift of art back to the children of our country, as a gift from the kids that died at Columbine 25 years ago. Today, I came to talk to you about the state of Nevada. The state of Nevada, by law, is requiring artists to get a license, requiring artists to put a tax on their protected speech, and requiring artists to steal sales tax money from the public as a condition of engaging in our First Amendment constitutional right to freedom of speech. Now, I've written a challenge to the state attorney general on this matter, and I've given you all a copy of that challenge, and I hope you all read it, so you understand what this is about. This directly affects your ability here in Reno to have artists in your downtown area to revitalize your downtown area and your rural walk. It's never going to happen as long as the state is licensing artists. And I want you to understand, I sued the city of Reno over that very matter in 2002 in one of federal court cases. You cannot license artists. I sued the city of Sparks over the same thing, requiring a license, a business license, went all the way to the United States Supreme Court. You cannot require a license as a condition of me engaging in my First Amendment constitutional right to artistic self-expression on public forum. Now, I'm providing language here for an exemption to be added to our municipal, to our state codes, exempting artists from licensing. And that language comes from the Arizona League of Cities and Town Model State Tax Code. Now, I've updated that language to be in compliance with the Ninth Circuit, make it a little more understandable. But the bottom line is, it lays it out, and it gives the state, you know, a positive example of how they can change their law. Now, this is so important, because if we can get this into state law, it gives me the tool to take it federal, gives me the ability to take it up to DC and take it to the federal government and get a federal law passed exempting fine artists from licensing. If we can do that, you know what? We can finally deliver the gift of art back to our children. We can finally start developing community support for art programs in our children's schools, and we can start building community participation in the fine arts when it's most needed to build bridges of understanding between all these people that make this melting pot of humanity we call America. So I'm asking for all of your help. Please go online on the state attorney general's website and file a complaint on behalf of your own community, on behalf of all the people that are artists in your own community. And I'm going to ask, Mr. Hall, would you please also join me in that and file me a complaint with the federal, with the state attorney general? And I'm going to give you a copy of this.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, Mr. White. I know we've been through a lot when I was on the liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission, so thanks for following through. All right. Madam Clerk?
Anthony Townsend, followed by Will Truce, followed by John Firestone.
Thank you for listening to me. My name is Anthony Townsend. I'm a downtown resident, couple blocks from here. I live adjacent to Barbara Bennett Park. That's this picture of, of the playground. It's really nice playground. It's got the squishy mats. It's like walking on the moon. But if you'll notice, there's no children. This was taken on a Saturday about lunchtime. We all know kids go to school Monday through Friday, and you'd think on Saturday, that would be loaded full of children at lunchtime on a Saturday, but it looks like that every Saturday. It looks like that all the time. And a little short of a year ago, I heard a young mother come here to address this same issue. It's not safe for children to be there. It's well-known, and let's look at, let's take an honest look as to one of the reasons why. Every Saturday at 11 o'clock, some well-intentioned folks, local citizens, hand out food, sometimes tents, sleeping bags, and that's good. I know they're well-intentioned, but the result is, the people that show up for this at a city park, the only park that I'm aware of that has a playground, to hand out goods to, some are needy, some, some subsets of this group have mental illness, several are drug addicts, and all of them have refused the services, which are several good people here provide services for our unhoused citizens. But the small portion of those that show up every Saturday, and there's sometimes 60 people show up, they have been lured to a park that has a playground. And another subset of those people are not infirm, not elderly, young, able-bodied people who have chosen not to be productive members of society. They've chosen to disrupt it. And right now, it's gotten out of control, because there's a dozen or so people 20 to 30 years old, they're not infirm, they're not elderly, they're living in the park. They have been living there for three weeks, cracking whips, threatening people, intimidating people. I've tried, I've filed with the city online, I've called the police, I've filed police reports with pictures of these people cracking whips. I've used almost all my legal means, I know what to do. I mean, this is an ongoing problem. The young lady that spoke about this over a year ago, it didn't get better. Now it's out of control. They won't leave the park, they're intimidating people. I sat on my patio, I had to close my door, because the whips, it simulated gunfire for an hour last night before sunset, an hour, it was continually whip-cracking. 2:45 in the morning, Monday morning, 15 minutes. 2:45 in the morning, Monday morning, 15 minutes of simulated gunfire, with the only intent is to intimidate the citizens and the children of Reno. And I just don't think that's acceptable, and I would hope you don't either. We've elevated this group above the children of Reno. That's not appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Townsend, and I just will... I will...
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could, I believe...
Yeah, I just want to remind, you go ahead.
We have, Nathan really, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is available to chat with this gentleman and address some of the concerns at Barbara Bennett.
Okay. And I just want to go on record as stating, we passed a law ordinance against use of whips in downtown Reno. And so, if this is happening on a regular basis, we really are going to have to get our law enforcement engaged on this issue?
It's happening all the time.
All the time?
All the time. And it's unacceptable, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about it when we get to D5. I'm done, done. Thank you.
Right.
So, Madam Vice Mayor, we can also have Chief Nance address with the constituent as well about that?
I think we need to. And I think we're going to have to have an update. I mean, we passed a law very specifically about this. We were so concerned. This is over a year ago. We got a lot of pushback about it, but we were very insistent that it was very disruptive to our community. And so, if it's not being enforced, that's a problem. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I want to make sure Mr. Townsend knows our appreciation for bringing that forward. All right.
Will Truce, followed by John Firestone, followed by Sierra Violet McConie.
Good morning, members of city council, Assistant City Manager Ashley Turney, and Mayor Sheevy. I own a small business in the Reno Brewery District, along with serve on the informal board scape through improving the conditions in our streets and the river for us all to enjoy. They've connected many of us across economic and cultural divides by creating community caches to better understand and heal some of the important issues related to homelessness. Most importantly, they've helped so many of our community members access needed services, recover from trauma and addiction, and reunite with their families. The folks doing the good work of the Karma Box Project are often some of the most familiar with the importance of such work. Many have experienced homelessness and addiction themselves. As a team, they work from early in the morning through late in the night, across many of our downtown neighborhoods, to help others reach for their incredible potential. I'd be grateful to this council for their continued support of the Karma Box Project, and ask that you approve item D5 today. Thank you.
And I want to make sure, Mr. Truce, thank you for being here, but, and if I, presumably I have the right agenda, according to my agenda, D5 is actually...
Uh-oh.
About ARPA funds? And that is, it's embedded in there?
Okay.
Right? Okay, just wanted to make sure that it is listed there. Here it is, I found it. Thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilwoman George.
Thank you.
John Firestone, followed by Sierra Violet McConie, followed by Casey Johnson.
Thank you, council members, Madam Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor. Good to see some of you again. Those of you that don't know me, my name is John Firestone. I am a board member for the Karma Box Project, and I'm here in support of D5. And I want to talk a little bit about the work that the Karma Box Project's doing through my experience. I'm also the Executive Director of the Life Change Center, which is Northern Nevada's largest provider of opioid treatment services. And I'm also the President of the Nevada Opioid Treatment Association. The company I work for, which is the Life Change Center, helps about 900 people a day in our county that have problems with opioid addiction. Of that, nearly 10% struggle with housing. We have a lot of interaction with the CARES campus, we have a lot of interaction with SafeCamp, we have a lot of interaction with Karma Box Projects, and it's really, really been great. Matter of fact, I come with compliments from a lot of my staff. We have a team of seven people that work directly with this population, people that are both experiencing addiction and homelessness. We call her high acuity group. It's not a very flattering name, but that's what it is. It does take a lot of extra energy, so we can help them to get stable. So, from the mouths of our patients, they are very highly appreciative of Grant Denton, the Karma Box Project team. I know some of them are here today, and I really want to just reach out, just a public thank you for the work you guys are doing. It's really, really helping. I also was told a story, we just had one of our patients move into SafeCamp at the beginning of August, they're doing great. We're seeing more medication compliance, higher levels of retention within our clinics, based on the interaction for this small group of people. And they're not small, we'll be helping perhaps hundreds of people a year that are both experiencing homelessness and substance use disorder. The other thing I'd like to support is that, working as a board member, I've watched Karma Box Project flourish, I've watched Grant Denton's leadership just get us to where we're at today, and I just want to compliment him for all our work. And that is it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for those comments.
Sierra Violet McConie, followed by Casey Johnson, followed by Ilya Arbitman.
Good morning, council. I am going to speak in my support of also D5, and just give my public comment on my shared experience that I have with Grant Denton. I'm also going to be speaking for my friend Stephanie Myers, who's not able to attend this morning. She wrote, "I'm writing this in regards to my experience with Grant Denton. I've become a participant in the GRIT program at Redirect Athletics every week for the past four months, along with seven to eight other females that attend as well. Grant Denton leads the boxing exercises to both men and women that join GRIT, and we also participate in a cleanup afterwards for the homeless community. Grant has always been a professional-oriented individual, making me feel completely safe and comfortable with every interaction. The other women that attend have also communicated multiple times how nice it is to be motivated, inspired, and led by such an upstanding and respectful person. He teaches us a better outlet to cope with everyday challenges in a positive and safe way. I'm thankful to be taught by Grant Denton, and I'm happy to say that he leads me to regenerated hope and a belief that good people still exist." And as for my comment, Grant Denton has been a man that's nothing short of caring, inspiring, supportive, and respectful during the time that I've been training with him. He's been an incredible boxing coach and an incredible mentor as well. He's a pillar for me and for many other people in our community, and he has the power and the drive to make sure that he makes positive changes for our community. I think we're all, you know, well aware that people in our community need help, lots of it. Grant has been a voice for the people who don't currently have voices. I've seen his first impact, like firsthand. You know, I, one day, I'm not going to forget it, we were picking up trash underneath a bridge, and he spotted this mom with this daughter. The daughter had no shoes, her hair was disheveled, and it was just sad to see. And he didn't even have a second thought, went up to her and made it happen, that she was in a women's shelter that evening. So, I just wanted to advocate for him. This man has always made me feel safe. He's given me incredible memories that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. He's also served as a father figure for me personally, when I'm not able to have one. Without his support, I know that I would have never found my passion for boxing, and also my passion for being an advocate for those that are voiceless. He's going to continue to be that same inspiration to others who choose to ignore public comments and focus only on their personal experiences with this individual, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for being here.
Casey Johnson, followed by Ilya Arbitman, followed by Blake Mellicone.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Casey Johnson. I am a wife, and I'm a mother of seven amazing children. I met Grant working at the city of Reno at the Record Street, worked along with Pat and Grant and amazing efforts that they brought forth, and created an outreach team. The outreach team moved into, Grant going into the ambassador, and him growing into this amazing boss that I have today. I was not prepared on what I was going, when I walked into the field of service. I came from a medical background, and I've done medical scheduling for over 20 years. My heart was always in there, as far as seeing hurt people, and when you see hurt people on the street, it's no different. We're just here to help, and we're here to make things better. To have a population with some who are extremely acute in drug-induced psychosis, consumed in depression, or just coming across a bad situation, all of these things on top of cleaning up trash, feces, needles, vomit, daily, while you're desperately trying to find something to help them, clothes, much like she was just speaking of, this is our day-to-day. These are our eight hours a day. Grant is there with us every day, without question, 24/7, seven days a week. I'm there every day, I've known Grant for over six years, we've worked this industry, and we've worked this... It's just not a hard, it's not an easy place or an easy thing to do. And to have negative social media influences is extremely frustrating, and all the work that we do every day, all day long. Grant, the city of Reno, and the VOA collective, excuse me, sorry, I've known and worked with him, like I said, over six years. He's a positive, he has a positive attitude, unique style, and really makes a difference out there. Grant's approach creates a supportive and encouraging environment, and always good, and always a good laugh. If you know him, you know you're going to laugh. We're going to figure it out together. I now help run the Resource Center, which I prefer to call our Resource Bistro. We service people who do not have a voice. They are able to come in, take a shower, do some laundry, regroup, be treated kindly. We also encourage the housing, we also encourage job seeking, we also encourage taking showers, basically just good and productive things. By promoting positivity and understanding, we just might enable others to overcome their fears of rejection and embrace their true selves. You notice people being more willing to share their ideas or feelings, which can lead to deeper connections and follow-through, eventually connect, getting back on track. However, that's exactly what we go through every day.
Casey, I see that you're out of time, and I just want to thank you. Did you have one more sentence to wrap up?
I do. I want to congratulate Grant. He, I had so much, I'm not used to speaking, so please excuse me.
I know. It's hard sometimes. But if you could just wrap up in another 15 seconds, I'd appreciate it.
You got it. Recognizing individuals like him as best local advocacy, excuse me, activist, not only honors his hard work, but is also encourages others to engage in similar initiatives. There are, there should be great sense of collaborations, support among our nonprofit organization and groups.
All right, Casey, I think we got it. Thank you so much for being here today. I know it's hard, public speaking is hard sometimes.
Ilya Arbitman, followed by Gary Mellicone, followed by Blake Mellicone.
Ilya Arbitman, for the record. So, if the previous comments are an indicator, obviously, we know that we are in the depths of probably the worst poverty, income inequality, homelessness crisis the city has faced. And why, during this time, the city would choose, the city would sabotage an existing social services facility is beyond me, especially as to what some of these people were speaking to. All I'm thinking is, wouldn't it be great if we had another social services facility that could be meeting some of these needs? The truth is, we do. We're just in the process of giving it away. That being said, I'm here to talk about the items D7 and D8, the exclusive negotiating agreement with Ulysses, because I went through this, I hope all of you did as well. And I just wanted to flag a couple things that I found concerning, that I think should be part of the discussion today. First of all, this agreement, as far as I understand it, does delegate a lot of discretion to the manager's office. Now, I'll remind you all that we're partially in this mess, because the manager's office was mismanaging and neglecting this building for many years. On page one, and here on page nine, at the bottom here, the city managers have the authority to issue interpretations, weigh provisions, and/or enter into certain amendments to this agreement on behalf of the city, so long as such actions do not materially or substantially change the uses of concept of the proposed development. That does seem very vague. I hope you guys discuss exactly what that means, because I feel like as the agreement develops with Ulysses, it should be going back to council regularly, rather than just having the city manager's office signing off on it, so that we ensure that the agreement actually fulfills what the city needs. Next, the scope of the development. In the presentation, we said we have 160, or sorry, 136 units at 60% AMI. Nowhere in this agreement does it say 60% AMI. It does refer to the presentation, but I just want to make sure that that's in there somewhere. As we know, the term affordable housing is essentially meaningless, because it could be 80% AMI, it could be 85%. So, somewhere in the agreement, we have to make sure that the word affordable, especially if we're looking at something going up two or three years from now, actually means affordable, and is not just a buzzword, to allow the developer to make a little extra dough on this project. I'm confused about the demolition timeline. I really read this over many times, and I really don't understand what it says. On one hand, there's a provision that says, sorry, it's down here, "During the due diligence period, purchaser shall apply for a permit to demolish the building within six months after close of escrow." But then, there's also something up here that says, "If demolition occurs after the effective date, but the parties fail to reach close of escrow, purchaser should reimburse the purchaser for demolition." I don't really understand, and I don't think there should be a rush to demolish the project, the building. I feel like the project needs to be figured out, and then the building should be demolished. Also, the construction timeline does seem very long. Five years after close of escrow means that it's going to be not till like 2027, probably, that a building goes up. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ilya, for being here. Appreciate your concerns.
Gary Mellicone, followed by Blake Mellicone, followed by Lydia Lovelace.
I want to say thank you for listening to us. I'm here with...
Gary, I mean, can you put, go to the mic? Just speak to the mic.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Myself and some of the tenants at Vintage at the Crossing, we have major issues there. The reason why we're here is because we understand that Vintage is asking for a $1.4 million grant from the city to build two new apartments. We feel that the city council should put your loan on hold or eliminate it completely until you reform all the maintenance and repairs that we have not been done, and we, and all the cleaning. Next Tuesday, it's seven years they've been open. Our carpets have not been cleaned in seven years. We have windows that haven't been cleaned. We have a trash issue with rodents inside the apartment, in the walls, in the ceilings. They don't want to address it. They're, basically, they tell us we're lying. The carpets are so bad, they've got dog urine, throw-up, who knows what in them. They haven't been shampooed. You can smell it in the hallways when the fans are not on. I have terminal cancer, I can't breathe that stuff. They told me, "Well, just move." I'm not going to move, I lived here for seven years already. It needs to be fixed properly. We believe that this company is slum lords. I'm not the only apartment. We've got two, three other apartments that want to join this, Lincoln Apartments, Lakeside, and the Sanctuary. We turned in 26 notices, the problem's wrong. The other three apartments are bringing me some more notices. It's got to end. You just can't keep doing this. And I'd like to enact the whistleblower act, for me and the people that come, because we've been threatened already, and we have to come up here. This is our life, this is where we live. You can't keep granting this company money to build apartments that they do not take care of. And I want to say thank you again, and we'll talk to you later.
All right, thanks, Gary, for being here, and I'm a little concerned about what you said about whistleblower. I will just make a comment, I hope, I hope it's understood that anyone, anybody that lives in one of our affordable housing...
Well, we have two people. One is in the audience, LaVita. I was told yesterday that she's going around, "You better not go attend, because you'll be terminated with Gary." And some people did not show up today, that were going to show. And some of the people that filled out the seven, the 14-day notice, didn't show up. They're scared. They put the threat, they throw 30-day notices around like candy, lawyers from, letters from the lawyer, that says you can't do this. I spoke up at a meeting, and I got wrote up, and a lawyer notice, because I talked about what I wanted, not what they wanted. But it's really a mess. And if you want, I will invite you to come down. I'll take you around, you tell me what you want to see. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary. But as I was saying, you know, I don't think any resident of any, you can sit down, I don't think any resident of any complex that the city supports have gotten grants, or even any resident should be, I know we have no cause eviction here in Nevada. But nevertheless, you know, if I heard about that, I think any one of us would take that up.
It just happened in the last few days. Since we, since we heard there was a meeting, and you were going to grab money, we stepped up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Blake Mellicone, followed by Lydia Lovelace, followed by Pat Amman.
Good morning, council. My name is Blake Mellicone, and I also live at the vintage of the Crossing. And just making you aware of the maintenance problems that we have there. For myself, I moved in in the last September, and I wrote up requests on fixing the chairs, because the casters on the bottom of the chairs... because the casters on the bottom of the chairs were wore out, literally wore out. December, I sent the notice to the management or the director. Nothing was done. January, I fell, hurt myself. I've been seeing a chiropractor for nine months since the fall. The casters were changed, but they were changed with the wrong casters. We have carpet, and they changed them, well, not only in casters. And now the chairs are still wore out again, because they're hard to pull. When they pull a chair, they weigh, they feel like they weigh about 50 or 60 pounds. When we have seniors in our complex, you can't pull a chair of 50 or 60 pounds. So they're neglecting the service, maintenance of those stuff that we use every day. And then also, I would like to state that I've had several issues with some of the tenants, and I wrote them up. They asked for write-ups. We write them up, they do nothing. I've had conflict with this particular tenant several times, and was threatened by him, called names by him. So I went to the court and filed a restraining order on him. The judge denied the restraining order, because we live together, and said that he must be evicted. That tenant is still in our building today. Thank you.
Blake, if I could just ask, you mentioned that you fell, but was it in a chair, or did you-
I went to slide the chair, and the chair just basically went over. It didn't slide, I just basically tipped it over, and a dead fall.
All right.
I hurt my back, my neck, and everything, so yeah.
I didn't know if you fell in a hall or-
I have casters that were on the old chairs, and like I said, the new casters are the wrong casters, they don't work.
Okay. Thank you.
Linda Lovelace, followed by Pat Ammon, followed by Paul Cotler.
Good morning, council. My name is Linda Lovelace, and I just want to start by saying I'm in support of D5. I believe that Karma Box is a very good outlet for businesses, putting a bridge between businesses and the unhomed. We get very irritated by what is going on around our businesses, and they help us understand what the unhoused go through and the obstacles it takes for them to get off the streets. I believe that they're invaluable to the efforts of the city, of cleaning up and making us understand that there are outlets for us, and that we can help. There's multiple ways that the businesses along the Fourth Street corridor can help them, and how properly to give to the homeless.
Okay. Thank you, Linda, very much.
Pat Ammon, followed by Paul Cotler, followed by Rebecca Eklund.
I'm Pat Ammon, and I live at Vintage of the Crossing. I have to say that I agree very much with Gary and Blake, but I also want to add that there is a tenant that has threatened me and another person. We've done everything that they've asked us to do, and nothing has been done. And I can give you an example. She picked up two rats the other day and waved them in my face, going like this, like I was going to be killed. She makes, looks at us, threatens us, gone to our apartment, and they haven't done anything. It's really bad. The other thing I wanted to address, I have had three problems with my check. The first time, they lost it. The second time, they deposited way too early. And the third time, they lost it again. I have been told they found it after I had to write them another check. So I just don't understand what is happening in the office. I really don't. And then I have one other issue, and that would be our air condition and our heating condition. They had promised us last month that they were going to service all of them. There's a lot that's really bad. You can hear them grinding. Have they done it? No. This is what we get all the time, all the time. They make promises, and they don't do anything.
Before you go, let me just quickly ask, Pat, you said some issue with three checks, but did they ultimately find them? I mean, did you have any late notices?
I had to tell the director that on the first two checks, I wasn't paying for the stop payments. I wasn't. She wanted me to pay them, and I said no. And then she finally wavered in on that. Now, I haven't gotten a late fee on this last one, so I hope that I don't, but I'm not paying that either.
Did you get a late fee on the first two?
Yeah.
Oh, you got a late fee?
Yeah, on the first two, yeah.
And did they rescind that because they lost the checks? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I could mention, we do have Monica Kirsch in the back of the room, Director of Housing Neighborhood Services, and some of her staff are available for the residents in the audience. If they would like, when they're done with public comment, they can step out into the lobby, and her staff can help address some of these issues and ask questions.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for letting me know. Thank you for being here, Monica.
Paul Cotler, followed by Rebecca Eklund, followed by Jeff Nell.
Good morning. My name is Paul Cotler. I own a business on Fourth Street. One is Fourth Street Bar, and I also opened a new place. It's a sober bar called Fourth Street Brewery. I'm here in support of D5 and the difference that they've made on Fourth Street. I've been there for over seven years. It's been pretty challenging. And over the past year, with Grant Denton running Karma Box, and the way it's been managed has made a huge impact in the neighborhood. It's very reminiscent of what you'd think of a beat cop back in the day, where they actually patrol the area and know everybody in the neighborhood, and they keep the streets clean. There's not a lot I have to say, other than I'm in support of D5, and thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Rebecca Eklund, followed by Jeff Nell, followed by Jason Candler.
Rebecca Eklund, Director of Grants and Strategic Partnerships at the Nevada Museum of Art. This year, the Nevada Museum of Art was awarded two grants by the City of Reno Arts and Culture Commission. A project grant for our longstanding program, Art Afternoon Workshop and Social for Seniors, and an event grant for our yearly celebration of Dia de los Muertos, which is a part of the Hands-on Second Saturday series of programs. The Nevada Museum of Art has a longstanding commitment to serving as an educational resource for everyone, and although distinct both the project and event supported by the city, serve as compelling illustrations of the museum's mission and our commitment to serving this community. Art Afternoon Workshop and Social for Seniors program is a cornerstone of the museum's outreach efforts to engage visitors of all ages. This program offers seniors the opportunity to engage in creative activities, to socialize and experience the museum's exhibitions. After all, seniors represent the fastest-growing demographic in Washto County, accounting for nearly 35% of the population. Art Afternoon regularly sells out due to its high demand. And each May, in celebration of Older Americans Month, the museum offers free admission to seniors every Wednesday, and throughout the year, discounted memberships and admission are available to those age 60 and above. These initiatives, coupled with numerous volunteer opportunities, demonstrate the museum's commitment to making art and cultural experiences accessible and meaningful for all ages. The museum also seeks to engage families. Through the Hands-on Second Saturday, the museum offers free admission on the second Saturday of every month throughout the year. The day-long event offers family-friendly hands-on art projects, live performances, and age-appropriate guided tours. In particular, the Second Saturday in October is the most beloved of this type of event, where an annual celebration of Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, provides family with a vibrant celebration that emphasizes the importance of preserving cultural traditions. Each year, the museum welcomes over 1,000 visitors to the Dia de los Muertos celebration, where they enjoy live music, performances, presentations, art-making activities, and storytelling sessions that all provide insight into the cultural significance and history of the holiday. We thank the city for supporting the Nevada Museum of Art through these two grants, and we would love to invite you to join us on Saturday, October 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., for the Dia de los Muertos celebration, to witness the engaging ways in which the museum contributes to this community. Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you so much for being here.
Jeff Nell, followed by Jason Candler, followed by William Pulsif.
Greetings. My name is Jeff Nell. I'm a street preacher. I preached at the homosexual parade, and boy, it was nasty, absolutely nasty. I'm an almost 26-year-old Nevadian. I'd like to begin with scripture. Proverbs 29, verse 2 says, "When the unrighteous rule, people groan; when the righteous rule, people rejoice." Psalms 2, verses 1 through 3 says, "Why do the nations rage, and the people plot a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves, and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us break their bonds in pieces and cast away their cords from us.'" I represent Nevada Salt and Light Brigade. We fight the spiritual and natural warfare of the evil in governments, their political and their philosophies. The main point today is the political ideology of the LBGTQ, which kills slowly or quickly. That is depopulation. The guide stones in the state of Georgia says, "Reduce the earth population to 500 million." How can it happen? Communist goals, which is right here in Reno. The word homosexual was created in the year 1869. No more homosexual parades and festivals in this city. Why? Communist goals. Present homosexuality, degeneracy, promiscuity as natural and healthy.
All right. Mr. Nell.
Nikita Khrushchev of the Soviet Union in 1959, at the United Nations, took his shoe off and pounded the podium, referencing that communism will take over capitalism. In other words, take over the United States without firing a shot. Communist goal: Take over one or both of the political parties in the United States. The Democrat Party is done, and the Republican Party is not quite there yet, but soon. Communism has almost taken over the state of Nevada legislation, Washto County and Clark County, which has the largest population. One of the Roman gods, Astaroth, rituals, the sex god, are in disguise through DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, that removes genitalia, have sex orgies, same-sex relations, heterosexuality, bestiality, and pedophilia sex. Let me ask you this question, city council. Do you care about human life, adult and children? Nevada revised statutes says that electing and assigned to government positions can be removed by incompetence and malfeasance. In closing, repent and do the righteous thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nell. I don't happen to agree with your point of view, but you are entitled to it. Thank you.
Jason Candler, followed by William Pulsifer, followed by Nanita Sinclair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council, for giving us the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jason Candler. I am a proud board member of the Karma Box Project, and I'm here today to show my support for item D5. Karma Box is near and dear to my heart, because it does serve an incredible population in our community. I've known Grant for several years, recently joined the Karma Box Board. They're an integral part of this community. They do work that is a first-line service to everybody in this community. We've already heard from business owners. We've already heard from people who have worked closely with Grant as well. And Karma Box is a vital resource for this community, because it not only serves a vital piece of our community, but it also reduces the strain on first responders, healthcare systems, reduces the strain on city and county resources. We have proven that we will continue to build on the, sorry, it's my first time speaking.
You're doing great.
We have proven, we have a proven record of building people up and helping restore them to be vibrant members of the community, and we will continue to do that. So please accept my support for item D5. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
William Pulsifer, followed by Nanita Sinclair, followed by Sandy Parkhurst.
I think that's Billy, he had to go to his doctor's appointment.
Oh, okay.
So he was sitting here, so he probably won't be back.
Okay. Madam Clerk, it looks like Mr. Pulsifer-
It is Sinclair. I'm here. I'm a resident from Vintage at the Crossing, and I agree about all the problems that Gary and his brother and Pat Ammon is telling you guys. I came here and speak today because I have that problem about the check. I give this check-
Can we get the overhead, please?
On the manager on August 1st, and she signed it and wrote it down. And this is the check, that is the last check, that after the city is helping us for our rent in Vintage, because, and then I told them, they told me when I go to the office on September 2nd or September 3rd, that I have a problem with this check that I'm giving to her, and I've been charged a late pay, because she didn't put it in on time. And then I told them I cannot pay for $2,000, this one, this amount, $2,274 at that day, on September 3rd, because all I know is I have to pay the $1,224, not the $64. So I tell them I have to wait until my survivor benefits will come on the 11, which is, this check is dated to the 11. And then they said, okay. But guess what? After two days, they send me an eviction letter. Right there.
It's on the overhead, if we could-
Madam Vice Mayor, we're just being very cognizant of confidential information that was on the first document, so we're making sure that that does not show up on the public record.
Okay. And then they're not satisfied, they send me another eviction letter. You know, and the thing is, look, I have the senior, I am 62 years old. I don't have insurance. I cannot afford it. Sometimes I work if I felt good, you know, sometimes I don't. This thing right here, these Vintage people, I don't know what they're trying to do. They trying to kick us out in the streets, so we have more homeless?
So let me just get this straight, Ms. Sinclair. You're saying that you paid your rent?
Yes.
But you've still got a $60 late notice, a $60 late notice, is what you just said? And then you couldn't pay that, so you got a letter of eviction?
Yes.
And has this been straightened out? I mean, have they refunded?
No.
No?
I'm moving to one-bedroom. I'm downsizing, because I cannot afford two-bedroom anymore. And I've been asking that for years and years, since management, after management changing, so many problems in that place, that I don't know what we're gonna do. The city, thank you for everything you did to us, you know, all the senior in the Vintage. We appreciate all the city employee, no merits out to us, and do the best we can. But they just keep coming up with problems after problems, you know?
I think I got that, and Monica is in the back. She's raising her hands. And anyone in the audience, if you continue to have problems, or have problems now, and they're not resolved, please get with Monica Cochran. She cares about this deeply.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Sinclair.
Well, thank you for everything you do to me, to us.
Thank you.
Sandy Parkhurst, followed by Trey Pepas, followed by Cliff Nellis.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Parkhurst. I'm here today speaking in support of item D5. I am also a Karma Box Project board member. I wanted to first speak about Grant as a person. We've heard a lot of great comments about what he's doing for our community, and I have been working with him for years and seen that firsthand. Him and I have worked together organizing a Christmas fundraiser for those in the homeless shelter, and he works tirelessly to support our population's most vulnerable, and bringing them a sense of hope and a sense that they can actually achieve their goals and getting back on their feet. I've seen him-
Can you just hold up one second? I am so flo- I am so... Can you pause the clock, please? I know that the folks are going out to work with Monica, but if you haven't given your public comment, would you please stay in the room? Make sure you've given your public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please go ahead.
Thank you. I've seen him working with participants in the homeless shelter and always showing respect, working with them on accountability, and always giving them the dignity that they deserve. His lived experience has made him a huge asset in working with and supporting this population because I truly believe you're most qualified to help the person you once were. Grant does just that with his personal connections, support, and relentless work to help those who want to get better. And these are all values that are instilled in the Karma Box Project. You've heard from many business owners in support of what they're doing, help clean up the streets and support people and protect them as a result of Karma Box Project's efforts. They are effective at supporting the homeless individuals in their recovery and personal growth, which has had outcomes in reconnecting and reunifying families, reducing strain on other county and city resources, and in some instances even saving lives through effective use of Narcan. The Karma Box Project is a huge asset to our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sandy.
Cliff Nellis, followed by Amanda Brierton, followed by Grant Denton, and Scott Oxerot via Zoom.
Hello, my name is Cliff Nellis, resident of the city of Reno from 1975 to 2019. And I have a daughter that still lives here. I live in Marshall County now. But I want to speak about the Nevada Pride event that affects all of us living in this county. And I want to ask the question, why was it moved to the same weekend as the balloon races? Isn't that like a family event with a lot of children? It was in July, and I think, wasn't it before that in Pride Month, June? Why do we celebrate this? I attended there, and I was disgusted by the flaunting of sexuality. Is that morally correct for us to flaunt our sexuality? I mean, why do we put clothes on, right? We do that because it's shameful to be naked. And in some places where they do these so-called Pride events, they're completely naked in front of young children. And I think it's giving the message, the wrong message, to the youth of our community to endorse and even fund, I think the city of Reno funds that event. I am really shocked and amazed how people that I thought had American traditions and culture have been so easily propagandized into thinking that something that is morally wrong is now acceptable behavior. We saw people just doing all kinds of stuff. And it's just like, really? Are we promoting that? Don't we want our children, you know, to prepare for marriage and children and families? Instead of being on a life of self-torture that never finds fulfillment when you seek alternative sexual things like that? It's, you're always seeking for more, something different. And you end up being a sexual predator. And we don't need sexual predators in our community, in my opinion.
All right, sir. I have to pause here for a moment. I appreciate your courteous tone. I really appreciate that. But it's my principle...
I'd like to stop my...
I did ask them to stop your clock. You have 50 seconds, so. I just want to be cautious that we here at the city of Reno, we support everyone, every creed, color, religion, everything. It's very difficult to hear comments against people, individuals. And so I appreciate your respectful tone. But I would ask you to kind of, I'm hearing your message loud and clear, and you're entitled to it. But if you can keep along your main message, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, go back to my 50 seconds then. Okay, so the idea I'm coming against people is totally incorrect. I have the opinion and the feeling of seeking people's happiness. I know that a person that does things that are contrary to human nature will never find happiness. That's why I oppose this lifestyle and the promulgation of it. And now, have you ever heard of the problem called kleptomania? Would you invite a kleptomaniac into your house and he could scope out your house and see what he needs to steal? That's what we have done. This is morally wrong. The city needs to make a stand against it, not for it. And our taxpayer money should not be put in this direction. And I'd like to see you put it back to June, if you do anything.
Thank you, sir.
Amanda Brierton, followed by Grant Denton, followed by Scott Oxerot via Zoom.
Oh. All right, welcome, Amanda.
Thank you so much. It's my first time. We'll do it.
Sure. Take a breath. There you go.
Good morning, City of Reno Council Members, City Manager and Madam Mayor. For the record, my name is Amanda Brierton, and I'm here on behalf of Josh Tyrion and the companies we have that own and operate properties on 4th Street through Chronicle Capital Management. We're here to voice our support for agenda item D5, Renewing the Karma Box. We work regularly with Grant Denton and his team at Karma Box. The Karma Box team has proven to be responsive and very helpful in mitigating and addressing many of the issues and challenges we encounter in the area. My boss, Josh, has been in front of this council several times. He couldn't make it today, so I'm here. Updating on these challenges. Progress has been made, but the efforts need to continue. The additional help and support provided by Karma Box are imperative to running a business on East 4th Street. Almost daily, it's necessary to clean up trash, ask people to move from doorways and entrances to our businesses, make repairs to windows, doors, and gates, address the blight of graffiti, waste, and vandalism. And the additional provided support allows for us to cover more territory and provide a preventable work environment every day of the week. The Karma Box support also provides our customers with a sense of security, camaraderie, and reassurance that issues will be addressed quickly and thoroughly. Retaining Karma Box will add value to the area and to the business tax income generated by local businesses. Customers remain hesitant to visit the area, and thus, a cleaner and safer environment is critical to the atmosphere of the area. East 4th Street has deep roots in Reno's history, and bringing the vibrance back to the area remains an all-hands-on-deck task. Thank you so much, Grant and your team.
All right, thanks, Amanda. Appreciate that.
Troy Regus, followed by Grant Denton, followed by Scott Oxerot.
Hello, Board. For the record, my name's Troy Regus. I want to start by thanking this body for not going forward with the proposed business license changes and going back to the drawing board. After speaking with my fellow business-owning friends, we know that the city of Reno's business license process needs to be reworked to promote the ability for business to form, grow, and prosper. This can only be done with input from the community, from all businesses. I look forward to seeing conservatives' conversations happen, though I do not think another 60,000 should be spent on bad proposals. Now some sour grapes. I am against D5, specifically the proposed $347,704 donation for operating expenses to Karma Box for one-time federal funds. Though this money is meant for organizations to support our community recover after the pandemic, it is clear that the executive director of Karma Box, Grant Denton, has some very concerning allegations against him for abusing his power and trust. And our community has given him, through Karma Box, previously failed to maintain their C3 nonprofit status. And despite the multiple allegations from women in our community against him, Washoe County awarded Karma Box more money and took part in a kangaroo investigation to clear the county from any liability. At this time, Jane Does began coming forward. Mr. Denton responded by hiring legal counsel and serving them with cease and desist letters on the women who came out against him. It is clear that there are many Jane Does that are not and will not be represented here today, which is shameful. Now, Mr. Denton is claiming within the community that he has been cleared of all allegations, which is not the case. I urge this body to not further enable him to continue this negative and dangerous behavior aimed towards women in substance recovery. It saddens me that there are people in a position of power that have known about this problem and allowed it to continue. I hope this body changes the course and believes women in our law-abiding society. Thank you.
Grant Denton, followed by Scott Oxerot via Zoom.
Mayor, council members, City Manager, Assistant City Manager. My name is Grant Denton. I'm the founder of the Karma Box Project. I'm going to be brief, and I'm going to stick to the facts. I started the Karma Box Project as a single father of two in recovery with nothing but the shirt on my back and with a primary focus to help those experiencing and struggling with addiction and homelessness to know that they could climb out of it too, as well as I did. A lot has been sacrificed to get here. We started four years ago from a meager four-person board to a strong 11-person board today of directors with a focus on growth, sustainability, and financial stability. We started with one employee four years ago. Your boy. To now 40 employees, 80% of which have lived, experienced, and most have come from these streets. Since Karma Box has been around, we've touched thousands of lives. This year alone, with our current contract with the city that allowed us to place 33 individuals in housing or shelter, it's allowed us to help 160 individuals access IDs or resources. We've reunited 17 individuals with families in other states, and we've cleaned up in the last year over 1,900 yards of trash in the city with using the help of our unhoused population. And these numbers are still climbing. I'm going to close real quick. It's, this is, and anybody that works in this knows that this is a tough job. You guys know what you guys do is tough as well. And it's a lot tougher when you're being attacked. It's real easy to take shots from the keyboard and on social media or come here and make false exaggerated accusations. What isn't easy is actually doing the work. I know this Karma Box isn't just Grant Denton. Karma Box is 40 employees, 11 board members, and thousands of the homeless population. Karma Box has proven, committed, and unwavering in its mission to help this city solve these problems. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for being here.
Scott Oxerot via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, council members, and hello, Scott Oxerot for the record. My day job is Communications Manager at Northern Nevada Public Health, but today I am representing the Association for Frontotemporal Degeneration. I'm the ambassador for the state of Nevada. Frontotemporal degeneration, known as FTD, is the most common form of dementia for people under the age of 60. It's becoming more and more common as movie star Bruce Willis and talk show host Wendy Williams have recently been diagnosed. Last week, Mayor Shivi and interim manager Bryant presented a proclamation recognizing World FTD Awareness Week, which is this week. I'm so thankful for that. FTD is a disease that takes good, caring, loving people and horribly changes their personalities. The disease impacts the frontal lobe, which impacts decision-making reactions and social behavior. My father, Steve, also known as Ox, died of FTD in August 2023. He worked at IGT for 25 years and was a season ticket holder for Nevada Wolfpack baseball, basketball, and football. He was a proud Basco who loved his family, friends, pecan punch, chorizo, and playing golf. The disease destroyed that beautiful side of him. He started making decisions that were not typical back in 2019. He started losing interest in hobbies, making impulsive decisions like buying a new car of nowhere, eating way too many sugary sweets, and constant confusion. He eventually became paranoid and delusional because of this disease. He once called 911 to report a dead body in his house in Carson City. SWAT team came, at the surprise of my mom, and quickly found out there was no dead body there. He later told my mom, his wife of over 30 years, that he had a new girlfriend and that he was hooking up with, even though that was a delusion as well. Incontinence is also an issue with FTD, which if anyone here has had to help out a family member with an accident in a public place, you know it can be humiliating. There is no cure for FTD. It's incredibly hard to share my dad's story, but I will continue to do so until there is a cure or treatment. The average time to diagnose this disease is two to five years, and that's done by cognitive tests by neurologists. Researchers and scientists are working hard to develop a diagnosis that can be done via normal blood work. So for World FTD Awareness Week, if anyone listening to this has had a loved one in their 40s, 50s, or older who is acting differently, making decisions that aren't normal, lacking empathy, or any other weird behavioral change that is inexplicable, talk to your primary care physician. Suggest an appointment with a neurologist and connect with the Association for Frontotemporal Degeneration for more resources to help not only the loved one but also caregivers through this very difficult time and process. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I know how very difficult it is to take care of family members and especially given the condition you just mentioned. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, with that, we have no additional live public comment registered. For the record, I would like to state that we did receive one written comment, which has been distributed to the Reno City Council as one letter of concern.
Okay. Okay. At this point, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda and the minutes. And then what I'd like, given the hour, it's almost 12, what I'd like to do is go over the consent agenda and approve the items that we can, hold the items that we can't, and to take a break. Okay? All right, so I'm looking for information from Ms. Attorney about the agenda. Anything on, off, pulled, changed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. A few things to note today. Item D3, the Truckee River Vision Plan, has a time certain of 1:00 p.m. So we will likely, as you mentioned, take a short break. Council does not have labor or attorney-client briefing today.
Good to know.
So we will have a shorter lunch and then resume. Second thing to note is item D6 correlates to the redevelopment agenda. So we will need to open the redevelopment agenda when we get to item D6, so we can take redevelopment first and then return back to the Reno City Council agenda. The last thing, Madam Vice Mayor, though I think she snuck out, is I did want to extend...
Oh. Did she sneak out?
I think she snuck out on us.
Man, okay, because this is when I was going to do this.
I figured you were going to. Would you like to step in? I think she's snuck out on us. She's listening.
Well, I don't like that. I don't like that she's listening somewhere. If she's in this building, could you have her come down? Okay. Keep going.
Madam Vice Mayor, those are actually the only updates that I have for our agenda, other than our last announcement that you're going to make.
Okay.
I'm just not sure of the elevators and when she'll get down here.
Yeah, we'll go on to the consent, but next is...
Let me move to approve the agenda.
All right, so I have a motion for Mr. Reese, second. Ms. Taylor, any comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, and then on to the minutes.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Reese, second for Ms. Taylor. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Breckus.
Okay, any opposed? All right, minutes are approved unanimously. And we also want to now move on to the consent agenda, and we'll come back to our announcements in a minute. I'm going to go around the room and ask if anyone would like to pull anything off the agenda, and I will start with Ms. Taylor.
B17, please.
Okay. Mr. Reese?
Nothing, Madam Vice Mayor.
Ms. Ebert?
I have B12, B15, B16, B17, B18, and B23.
Okay. And then online, Ms. Breckus?
I have nothing.
All right, and Ms. Shivi, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, mine has already been pulled by Councilwoman Ebert. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Martinez?
Nothing for me, Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, and I was also going to pull B23, so...
Move to approve all remaining items.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All right, a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And you know what? In the interest of time, let me think. Do we want to take our break now? You said we...
I wanted to note that we can go back to our last announcement, if you would like, Madam Vice Mayor.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. We have a person named Bubba in the audience. Would she come up to the podium, please? Would you please state your name for the record?
Barbara DeCiano.
All right, Ms. DeCiano, otherwise known as Barbara by so many, by Bubba, so many.
Yeah.
I've had, I have recently learned that you are on your last-day fumes, that five days to go. And how long have you been at this city?
26 years.
26 years. And I understand that you are going into a phenomenal retirement plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I just wanted to say personally how very grateful I am. And I know, I feel like I'm starting to choke up here because I'm trying to count how long I personally have known you. When I first came on to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, you were sort of my shining star. You were a liaison at that time, and you guided everything. You knew everyone, and you knew what to do, and you knew how to guide us on the NAB. And I will never forget something that happened, and that is, we don't do that today, and you had to push through to do this, but there was a development that came, a zoning project that came before the council. And I was not on the council. This is about 2013. And I was opposed to the project, to the zoning, and very concerned. It had to do with flooding. I had just left my job as a flood director the previous year. And I got equivalent of COVID, but it wasn't COVID then. It was some really illness that I could not appear and make my public comment. I wrote out my public comment, and you read it into the record. And I will never forget that. I mean, it meant so much. We didn't have Zoom. We didn't have any other way to participate except show up, and I could not leave my bed. But you represented me and represented me very, very well. And my comment was heard. I didn't like the decision that was made, but at least I had my voice heard.
Right.
I'm sure that if we asked anyone in the city, there's very many similar stories to this. And I just appreciate personally the service that you've given the city in these 26 years.
Thank you so much.
I know everyone that's worked with you, for you, has felt the same. And I just didn't know if anyone else on council or online wanted to make a comment. This is the last time you're in the building while we're in the building. So there you are.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'll just say a couple of things. One is, you know, it's the smile. It just radiates such goodness for all of us. And it's been an absolute joy the last six years to work with you. I know that we'll have the opportunity to still see you and work with you in other capacities because, you know, it's hard to get away from this place even after 26 years.
It is.
But I will say that it's the people, right? It's the people that keep other people being here. And you've been one of those people who's kept other people here. You've had such an incredible demeanor and sort of sense of grace about you, never getting in the weeds of political nonsense or other kinds of machinations that happen in government, focused on doing the work of this city. And so sometimes there's glue people, and you're one of those. So I love that you're going to have the opportunity to do other things with your life and pursue other passions. And I know our paths will cross again, but congratulations and thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. Let me ask. I didn't know if we had anybody. You have a lot of people here. I don't know if you noticed, but, right? These are people that have worked with you, that have taken their time to come down here, that are going to appear at your retirement party. And we are saving our gifts and awards for you for your retirement party. We decided not to do it here where everyone can't join us.
Big gifts. Big ones.
Big ones. Yeah, that big. I didn't know if any managers or attorneys that have also worked with you for a long time also wanted to make a comment right now, but yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. Bubba hates this. She hates this. I know she is just squirming now because she, she is so kind, so sweet, so humble, and she never, ever takes any credit. So I know that she just is like hating all this attention that's on her right now, but it is so well-deserved, Bubba. I mean, I've been able to work with you for 12 years. You never complain. You never say anything unkind about anyone. You always want to help everyone possible. I mean, you just have been incredible. As a matter of fact, Bubba was supposed to leave early, and she stuck it out with us. And, well, it wasn't early, but she, you know, had the opportunity to go a long time ago, and she stuck it out with us because she loves this city. She loves our community and the people that she works with and everyone and all the citizens. And we get to go out there and take a lot of credit for the work that our staff does. And Bubba has done a lot of that work, and then we get to go take the credit. So this is so deserving. We love you. We're going to miss you like crazy because you truly are a shining light on 15. And, you know, you've worked with Mayor Kachel and so many others, and, you know, they are singing your praises today as well. I know that, you know, Bob just absolutely loved and adored you. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that because you always had a good Bubba story, and, you know, he told the best stories.
He did.
So I want to know that we love, adore you, and appreciate everything you've done. And this just, you know, saying goodbye is so hard, and we could never truly repay all of the hard work and the love you've put back into the city. So thank you, my friend. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. I gotta add another round of applause. So you have found your voice?
Yes, I think so. I just want to say that the past 26 years have been the best in my career, and this has been my family. I've spent a lot of time here. My, I raised my kids while I was working here, and it's, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with every single person that I've worked with and to represent council. It's been amazing, and I wouldn't take anything back. And I thank you for every kindness and every encouragement that you've ever given me. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to giving you hugs later.
And I do want to mention one more person. You know who's a huge Bubba fan was Doug Thornley.
I know.
And so, please know that, Bubba, you just are so, so loved.
All right. Well, let me ask. Let me get the sense of the body. We could take a few consent items. I don't think we'll get through all of them. We need to break for lunch. We don't necessarily need a whole hour. But any advice here? Should we just break or get started?
Madam Vice Mayor, I would recommend that we try to get through a few of these items and then see how council's feeling maybe in the next half hour or so.
Or 10 minutes. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to turn our attention to item B12, which is the first item pulled off the agenda. I think this is by Councilmember Ebert. Yeah. Go right ahead. Uh-oh. You doing all right?
I'll come in.
Are you okay? The first question.
Yeah. Nathan Elliott, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. I suffered from the three O's last night in volleyball. I'm old, overweight, and overconfident, and I hurt my ankle last night. So, yeah. But I'm okay. Thank you.
All right.
I just had a question on how this works. So I read through here, but I didn't catch, like, is this available for all throughout the city of Reno, or is it certain locations? Or how does somebody use it?
It is. Sorry to interrupt. It is our, it's available for Sierra Kids and summer camp participants through the Children's Cabinet. We get a reimbursement as, I mean, as low as 0%, but it has a sliding scale that Children's Cabinet puts together, and we follow their process and get a reimbursement for, for children and families who are able to take advantage of this. But it is available at every site we operate at and at many sites that aren't City of Reno sites, too.
Okay. So is there like a, is it on our website where people could see what locations it's available at, or how?
True. I think it just lists any Sierra Kids site, and then, so if it's Sierra Kids. But again, also, I think other programs have access through this, through the Children's Cabinet, since it's not city dollars.
Okay. Okay. So it is throughout the entire city of Reno?
Yes, at all of our, yeah, at all of our sites.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was my only question.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question on this item? All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Do I hear a second? All right. We have a motion for Ms. Ebert on item B12, and a second from Ms. Taylor. Are there any other comments on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Brackus.
Yep. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. And then we're turning our attention to item B15. B15, as pulled by Councilmember Ebert, which is about the acceptance of a grant, I believe. Let me just make sure. It's a little over $10,000 from Washoe County Local Emergency Planning Committee to support the partial cost of an unmanned aerial vehicle. Hi. Hi, Chief. Welcome.
So I just had a couple of quick questions here. So this is an acceptance of a grant, and in the paperwork, it says the cost is approximately $21,000, but in the paperwork it says that the drone is not to exceed $10,879. Is that just because that's the amount of the, the grant?
Chief Nance, for the record, yes, we are accepting a grant for partial payment of the UAV, unmanned aerial vehicle.
Okay. And then will City of Reno be the only agency using this, or will people be able to borrow it for like search and rescue or anything like that?
We would be the only ones authorized to use it through the insurance contract, and so our pilots would fly it.
Okay.
Within the City of Reno.
So Sparks wouldn't be able to use it? Sheriff, Washoe County sheriffs couldn't use it?
We could always assist them if they called for our assistance. We would fly it and provide that assistance.
Okay.
But we would not allow them to fly it.
Borrow it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't just pass them along. We would have to use it.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
All right. Anyone else with questions on B15, the UAV? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, or please, I'm looking for a motion. Excuse me.
Motion to approve.
All right, Ms. Ebert, thank you.
Second.
All right, Ms. Taylor. So motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Ms. Taylor. Any comments on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brackus.
Yep. All in, any opposed? Please say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously on item 15. And moving on to item 16.
I'm also here for that.
Also you.
I'm the next three.
And also Ms. Ebert.
Yeah. I don't know if we just want to do them all at the same time, or we can.
No.
Okay.
We have different people at fault.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had similar questions, so don't worry.
All right. Give me just one second here. Okay. So on this one, when I was reading through here, I saw a lot of information that gave some numbers on arrests, citations, things like that. That was a baseline. What was the timeframe for these baseline numbers?
Can you tell me what page you're looking on, just so I can make sure that I'm-
It doesn't have a page number.
I've got measurable steps. Let me look. I'll find it.
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
In the attachment.
It's on the third page of the staff report, I think.
Oh, is it the bottom? The measurable steps time? Nope. It's in a little box, and it says include baseline local data grantee. I think it's on like the 34th.
Oh, I see. Yeah. So usually what we do, it's, I'll have to go back to make sure that I'm right on the days and the months before, but it's usually the prior grant year that we would utilize. So that would be, because we've gotten this grant every year.
Okay.
So we would utilize data from the prior grant year to say how we've spent the prior grant money. Now, what the exact dates of that are, it looks like it's a fiscal year, '23, '24.
Okay.
Is what we're getting right now. And so that's, this is the prior grant, what we did with the money.
Okay. Okay. So we had, we had 5,705 citations for speeding last year. Is that accurate?
Yeah, whatever the time period was of this, yeah. So I must, it, it most likely, it's, mine's printed very weird, so I've got a lot of little boxes. I don't know if yours shows up that same way.
Yeah.
So it's kind of hard to go back to see where it came from. But I think if you go back, it's going to talk about the prior grant year, 2023. We talk about a bunch of the things there. And so it's going to be for our prior grant.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, and I just wanted to talk about this because I know, I know that speeding is a huge problem in the city of Reno. And I had somebody, actually two people messaged me yesterday about speeding enforcement that we need. And something that I hear a lot is that it's been submitted to Reno Direct, and they don't see any enforcement. And that's not to say that there hasn't been enforcement. Nobody is out there 24 hours a day seeing if there was any enforcement. But just wanted to know if there is any kind of additional patrol that's going to go out there, or, you know, what we can look for to help address this.
So the way that the works with the, especially the Reno Direct, which is probably the best way for people to provide complaints about an area, we have a 48-hour policy. So within 48 hours, our officers do enforcement out there. And if the person that reported it says what time it's normally happening, we try to tailor that enforcement around that same time. We'll do enforcement for, depending on what we see out there when we get out there, and if it's a problem location, maybe one or two days or up to a week. And then generally, we find that resolves the problem for a little while, and then we'll get another complaint, and we'll return out there. So our traffic unit divides their time between a few different things. One is Reno Director Complaints, accidents that have high frequency, or locations that have high frequency of accidents, places that they, or identified as being problem areas based on their travel, path of travel, and then anything to do with the grant. So if it's a pedestrian safety grant, or if there's any confines of something, they'll do that grant work also. So it, we don't continuously stay in an area where a Reno Direct complaint was. We go out there during that time, and then we leave, and then we come back if there's another complaint, unless that area falls into the high traffic accident location.
So I have a comment, too, and we'll come back to you, Ms. Ebert. So I, this, too, has been, I've talked to you, this, too, has been a very routine, both concern and complaint from residents.
Yep.
And what, my question to you was, does all the enforcement for traffic occur under these grants, or do we also spend general fund dollars on it?
We have a very robust traffic unit. So we have officers that are motor officers. We have DUI officers and officers that respond to accidents. We have a lot of different types of traffic enforcement that we do. So our traffic enforcement team does, that's their normal 40-hour-a-week job, whatever, you know, whatever days they're working or hours.
And how many people are in this team?
I would have to get you exact numbers later. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can get that to you. But we have, they work all hours of the day. So it's just dependent on what their specific assignment is. In addition to that, we also have these grants, and those are all overtime funds. So outside of their 40-hour a week that is dedicated to traffic enforcement, we also have overtime funds allocated to that, and that's what you're seeing in the grants.
So I have seen what I think is an uptick in enforcement. I saw one recently on Plumas, which I haven't seen anyone pulled over. And I'm on that road probably three, four times a day with round trips, three or four round trips a day. And it's a, it's an easy one to speed on. It's a big downhill. And I recently saw someone get a ticket, and I was very impressed. But it also made me think I hadn't seen anyone get a ticket in five years, probably, on that street. Doesn't mean, again, like Ms. Ebert said, it isn't happening. But what I did ask you privately or in a briefing was, do you think we could get a presentation separate and apart from this, approval of this grant, that would just get us up to speed and also the public up to speed on the program? How many tickets have we issued? How much money we collected? Where are some hotspots? Those kind of, you know, some metrics generally. And I just think it'd be extremely informative for all our residents. We usually have a police report that happens at our NABs. But just for example, our last, I think, two or three NABs, they have not been there. So we have not had a Reno Police Report. And people are hungry for this kind of information. It's probably one of my biggest complaints after a ban of cars, is speeding.
As for the NABs, we attend those quarterly.
Right.
So they're quarterly, and we're providing data quarterly. We can add in traffic information into that. I will say that traffic is one of the units in the Police Department and really in most police departments, because of the types of grants and the reporting requirements behind them, that provides a lot of data and stats.
Fantastic.
So they can, they actually have that ability to- So they can, they actually have that ability to provide a lot of information more than, they're much better stat keepers than other departments.
Well, rather than on this item, perhaps you could come, you know, at another time, whenever that suits, and just give us a little update on how it all works, who pays for it, how many tickets we give, where are some hotspots, those kind of things.
All right.
All right, anyone else have comments on item B-16? Anyone online, on Zoom? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Ebert, did you have a follow-up? I didn't, okay. Do you want to second this?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion for Mr. Reese, second for Ms. Ebert, on item 16. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Brackus.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And then we only have a few items to go, B-17, as pulled by Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Ebert. Do you want to kick us off? Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just have more of a comment and a request, Chief. It looks like through OTS Grants, which I'm very grateful for, we have a little bit over $220,000 for traffic, DUI, other enforcement joining forces. I've received a couple of requests from the folks downtown, if some of those areas could focus on the downtown areas specifically at night, if that's possible for speeding, some car racing, and some DUI enforcement. And then, I'm sure this is happening throughout the city, but I'm just letting you know what I've heard from my constituents. And then the second thing that I think is really important is, as my colleagues have mentioned, I also get requests and concerns about speeding and pedestrian safety and all of the above. So I would ask that we work with our communications team to make sure that we are creating awareness of what we're doing as the City of Reno and the Police Department in these spaces, so we can talk about some of the good news from the enforcement that we're doing. And again, thank you to OTS for the grants. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Excuse me, Ms. Ebert, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just again, curious about how, how this will be, you know, put into use.
Specifically for B-17?
Yes.
This is an impaired driver, so this will be DUI enforcement.
Okay.
And this is overtime hours that are usually used, training and other equipment needs, that's what the grant is for.
Okay, so this will be used for overtime training for DUI?
No, overtime enforcement for DUIs. And then there's also some training money included.
Okay, so this will be extra hours that police will be on patrol for DUIs? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, this grant is specific to DUIs, and it's for mostly overtime hours. So our DUI unit and other officers will participate in additional patrols outside their normal work weeks. We have DUI officers that work all the time, but they would provide additional hours for DUI enforcement.
Okay, so I guess I'm trying to understand, like, how, how would they identify that they're going to be pulling people over for a DUI? Like, if they're out on overtime, like, are they only looking for people on, like, driving erratically or something? Are they, you know, is that the only thing they're doing on this overtime? Or, you know, if they pull somebody over for a DUI at that time and make an arrest, does that, does that period of overtime get paid for out of this grant?
No, they'd work us, they'd work overtime hours, and their primary focus would be DUI enforcement. So they would make traffic stops either based solely on, obviously impaired drivers or things, or they might respond if somebody else pulls somebody over that has a DUI, and they make another traffic stop or an accident that's DUI-related. So their primary focus is identifying and looking for DUI-related traffic stops. But obviously, they can't tell that always when, you know, just making a traffic stop.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Ebert, second from Mr. Reese. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. We're on to item B-18. And as pulled by Councilmember Ebert. This is $90,000 for pedestrian safety.
So is this going to be similar to how the other allocations are going to be used? Is this just going to be overtime for this type of enforcement, or?
Yes, this is enforcement and education related to pedestrian safety, yes.
Okay, so what is the education piece?
The education piece might be meant going through comms or doing media releases. It can be education when they stop people or going to different areas and providing information on the need for pedestrian safety. It just really depends on what their quests are. The grants are really fluid in allowing us, as long as we're utilizing them for their intended purpose of either education or enforcement, we can base it on the needs of the community and the needs at that time.
Okay, so there will be extra, you know, actual patrol for these types of, I don't know what you call it, violations from this money as well?
Yes, and this is all pedestrian safety, so we do a lot of work in school zones and different areas where we have high pedestrian accidents.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? I just love the work you do here. We're always trying to get to zero fatalities, right, with our pedestrian element? And I'm sure when you report on traffic safety, maybe you could report. I don't know if we regularly have jaywalking or other issues related to pedestrian safety, but you know, it'd be good to bring that to.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion on item B-18.
I'll move to approve.
All right, a motion from Ms. Ebert.
Second.
Second from Ms. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brackus.
Thank you, any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And then our last item in consent is B-23. And I think several people were interested in pulling this. I heard, I think I heard the mayor, but I'm not sure, I heard Ms. Ebert, I know myself, so take it away.
Hello, good mor, good afternoon. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Assistant City Manager Attorney. So what you have before you today is a request for a letter of support from the City of Reno that will go to the State of Nevada for the affordable housing project identified as Skyline Flats. It's 402 units of affordable housing. What this letter does is allows the state to issue all of the tax-exempt bonds for this project. So the city has ran out of our volume cap, so we have nothing more to give. But in order for them to get their financing from the state, they need a letter from the governing body saying they're going to, that we support it, and then they can issue the financing for it. So that's what the action is before you today. I do have the developer here, and then I also have Ms. Foose here, if there are any questions regarding any planning issues.
Okay, well, let me have Ms. Ebert take it away.
Yeah, I had a question on, so this is just a letter of support, so it's not coming out of City of Reno's funding at all or anything. Do we know, you know, if there's still going to be funding left over for other projects? Or, I mean, this seems like a large sum of money. Do, like, do we think that all of this will be allocated to this one project?
I can't speak for the state. I do know it's not all of their bonding capacity, so, I do know that.
Okay, all right, I have a question. So where is this project? Like, could you just?
Sure, I actually brought a map for you. Okay, so that's the project site right here, and then this is Dandini Boulevard, and then this would be Sun Valley Boulevard.
Okay.
And then, of course, this is TMCC.
Okay. Now, this project, it's in the City of Reno, it's not in Sun Valley, right?
Correct, so actually, just over here, this is county, so right, right at the border. But it is within the City of Reno limits.
And then where is this project, since you have Ms. Foose, where is it in the permitting process?
Angela Foose, Assistant Director for Development Services. They just went to Planning Commission last week. They were approved for a major site plan review, so that's the entitlement. The next step for them would be to submit for a building permit.
With, which permit?
A building permit.
Okay, thank you. The question I have is, have they, you said it just went?
Last Wednesday, a week ago.
Wednesday, okay. Let me ask this, and I'm just, this is just a little bit awkward question, so I apologize. I know very little about this project, with all due respect. I mean, 402 units of affordable housing sounds amazing. However, I also know we have a process, and there is an appeal process. We were alerted, I don't know if, I don't know if it was unanimous, I don't know if any residents had any concerns. I have known none of this. But I do know that it's important to let timeframes run. Is there a timeline for submitting this? Or should we let our permitting process run before we submit? Like, to cut off any appeals that might monkey up this application?
So I will say from an appeal perspective, the 10-day appeal window will be next week on October 2nd. That will be the last day if anyone wants to appeal it. The Planning Commission voted to approve it. It was a 3-2 vote in favor. I believe we had maybe three or four people speak under public comment with concerns. And so I'll let Elaine talk about the volume cap deadline.
So from my understanding, Elaine Wiseman, for the record, the, they are planning, the developers planning to take this to the Board of Finance on December 12th. And so the deadline, absolute drop deadline for all materials and everything for the state would be November 22nd. That's their agency deadline.
Got it.
And so if this letter of support does not go through, none of the financing goes through, and the project folds.
Okay, is it possible? I think what I'd be interested in, I love the concept. I don't know anything about the details of the project or why it was a split vote on the commission, or who might have spoken for or against it. But I am sensitive to the issue that, you know, in case we received appeal, I don't know how to handle that. And so what I would recommend, and for consideration by our body, is that we consider approving this item, but not submitting it until after the deadline for the appeal. And if there is one, we would not, we have a whole process to go through. If there isn't one, we send it right in. I don't know if that's workable, but I think it would achieve both goals.
So I just want to be clear, you would approve the resolution today, and we would just hold on to it until after the end of the appeal period?
Correct, and the other part of that would be if we received any kind of appeal, that we would have to toll submitting it until those appeals are dealt with. Does that make any kind of sense to anyone? No, okay, that's fine, that's why we have a council. Let me have.
Do I not be recognized?
Yes, yes, please, Ms. Brackus.
Are you, are you done?
I am.
Okay. You know, I knew it was going to Planning Commission last week, and I reviewed the materials in the decision letter, but I would agree with you that it should be told through the appeal period. I think that does put the council in an odd position if we've already, in one capacity, endorsed a project, but in another, then we come and sit quasi-judicial, you know, in our capacity as hearing appeals. I think that's just good practice. I don't think that it should be auto, you know, auto moved on to our agenda until that has occurred. But my, my concern is more about the applicant. And the, the first question is for Ms. Weiss, is this is 407 units?
Two, 402.
402. To my knowledge, then, this would be maybe the second-largest subsidized project that we have in the city. I think Austin Crest is maybe the, about 500 units, would you?
I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I, this is definitely the largest or very close to it, yes.
Yeah, so with that, you know, the applicant is Vintage, and we had people come and speak about that. I have longstanding issues with Vintage, the, there are operations and maintenance. One was.
Ms. Brackus, this is not a Vintage project.
Yeah.
Oh, Vintage is not the applicant?
No.
No, Dominion Development is the applicant.
Okay, okay, then I will with, and I appreciate that clarification, okay. But I do think that we should move this on to our next agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I, upon reconsideration, I mean, your time is not up, so do you have more to add? No, well, I'll just fill in, upon a thought, I think your answer is the right answer, is that rather than having this confusing vote, I think that we should continue it until the next meeting, it's only two weeks, and, you know, make our decision based on whatever's happened with the timeframes on the project. I just feel that we would get caught in a difficult position. Madam Vice Mayor. Okay, yeah, please. Mr. Reese.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank the folks who are considering making this investment in our community. We have an incredible lack of housing here in this community. And the fact that these units will serve individuals at 60% or below the AMI, I think is enough of a reason to continue our longstanding history of approving these when they come along the route. The decision that we make today is not a decision about whether we think it's a great project, or it should have blue walls versus yellow walls. That may or may not come to us at all. The decision here is one that is very sort of ministerial, meaning the state has volume cap. If they want to change funding through that system, they have to ask us for our willingness to send a letter of support. I don't think that those two things are the same, right? I think ultimately, we can say, we think it's an appropriate exercise to use volume cap to promote affordable housing. And we've done that over the time that I've been on the council for thousands of units. And so this question about why the timing of it is off, I think is a red herring. Ultimately, I think we are not necessarily needing to be constrained by that. And if someone should appeal it, they will, and then we'll hear it then. But for my part, I am unwilling to, or reluctant to grant a continuance. I think one of the things that happens in the building construction industry that is not always easily or rarely apparent to electeds is that time is money, right? And every time that we impose additional conditions in a project that slow down its ability to go out to get financing, you run the risk that they miss the bond market changing, the interest rates fluctuating. All those things happen in real time, and so this is not a reason not to approve the volume cap.
Okay, so if I understand, I just want to make sure I understand, because you always make good arguments. There are two separate decisions, and what you're saying is if we should receive an appeal, we'll go through that process. And let me ask our staff then, if, just trying to scenario, understand the scenario, what would happen? I mean, let's just say the state approved the bond cap out in December, but it was appealed in October, what would happen here?
Well, if, if, if the correct zoning and all of that doesn't go through, then the project doesn't go through. So like.
Well, I think they said it did go through, right?
It did, but if there's an appeal.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so if there's an appeal and you deny the project, the whole project dies. If there's an appeal and you approve the project, then the volume cap moves forward. The challenge is, we don't know when this would come to council on an appeal. Depending on when we receive the appeal determines when we can get it on an agenda. Probably the soonest would be that second meeting in October, because we have to do the noticing, so that's a maybe. And by then, I think we're getting too close for them to probably be able to submit, to be able to even hit their deadline to get the volume cap in.
I think they said November 20, is that what you said?
November 22nd is the, like, drop deadline for them to get all of their financials and their package together on the rest of their financing.
Madam Vice Mayor? Yeah, please, please, Ms. Taylor.
I just have a comment, and I think this council says that we're supportive of affordable housing. We're supportive of affordable housing. I think we need to do everything we can to show that we are supportive of affordable housing. And I don't think this is the first time that we've seen this project at council. I think we were celebrating the 400 affordable housing units that we were going to be working towards. So I am in the same position as Councilman Reese. Let's really show that we are supportive of affordable housing. Thank you.
Okay, and anyone online, on Zoom?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Brackus. You know, I think the timing issue that was raised is incorrect, is kind of mentioned, because they're working towards a December date with November deliverables. And looking at the resolution, you know, it's written pretty broad. And, you know, I worked for the Housing Division at one point, and not through this process, but through other processes, they really do, you know, as I recall, and Ms. Weiss could maybe answer, is, you know, these letters of support are go times. And it's not go time, because we have some due process considerations. And I just, I think it's, you know, staff should, you know, populate the agenda after these appeal periods. I just don't think it's, it's good. these appeal periods. I just don't think it's good, you know, to the, you want to talk about lag time, you get an appellate in here, and this thing's held up, questions about the council's, you know, leanings are questioned. So I just don't know. I think it's really bad practice to allow staff to populate these agendas during the appeal periods. And I'm not entirely sure in summary that this resolution, if you read it through, is not like, yeah, we're all on board. And then due process is kind of questioned if an appeal comes.
Yeah. All right. And then anyone else on Zoom, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, just curious. Back to Ms. Breckus. Did you attend the Planning Commission?
No.
Okay. I just was wondering, or maybe staff can give us a little feedback of what sort of transpired.
Angela Fuze. So some of the concerns from the Planning Commissioners that voted against the project had more to do, I think, with more community outreach. They had concerns that TMCC was nearby and there was not one-on-one communication with the applicant and TMCC to ask how they felt about the project or if they had concerns about the project. The Planning Commissioner that also voted against this had concerns that they did not reach out to Washoe County Sheriff. There's a jail further down the road. I think it's over a mile away. And they wanted to probably get more feedback from the sheriff and how he felt about the project and if it would impact his ability to serve Sun Valley. Those are kind of the two big ones that really jumped out. Traffic was another one. There was concerns related to some of the comments from RTC and then how they looked at the project. And so I think some of the comments from Planning Commission was, had that been addressed?
May I ask, was, Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of hers?
Well, just one sec. Let me, okay. Madam Mayor, you're willing to cease talking? And Councilmember Breckus, yes?
Ms. Fuze, did TMCC make an appearance at the hearing?
They did not.
Okay. And Washoe County didn't either?
They did not.
Okay. But they were notified, they were on the agency review list?
TMCC was, received a notice. They are within the 750 feet. And then Washoe County as a whole receives all of our notices as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And Madam Mayor, did you have more?
Yeah. No, thank you for that feedback. I appreciate it. It gives me a little bit more context. Yes, listen, we all are big proponents of affordable housing, but also I think you still have to do your due diligence. Just because someone comes in and says it's affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're voting on. So I want everyone to just take a little step back when you're looking at it. However, I would say in this instance, you know, also, I assume our team, they do a great job, and I'm sure that they communicate to projects how critical the outreach is. And we all know that. And all of us, especially in your cab, make that a point to be considered. So obviously, really, really critical and important. However, with this one, those aren't concerns to me in the sense that we should hold off, because I'm not sure if there's, you know, a massive problem here or a huge red flag. I'm not seeing it. And that's just my opinion. Other projects might be different. But in this instance, to me, I would think that, you know, these are kind of minor. Obviously, we want to continue to advocate for people to come and speak up behalf of projects and how they feel, but Ms. Breckus just clarified that they were noticed. So that's important. So I'm glad she clarified that.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then Mr. Martinez, I don't know if you're still in line or have a thought about this.
I am here. I appreciate the opportunity. I would just say that I align with some of the comments that were already made. And if we want to make sure that we're helping these projects come to line and just giving all the facts that we already provided, I think we need to continue to be supportive of affordable housing coming into the market. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Has everyone had a chance to speak? Anyone need a second turn? Ms. Ebert?
I'd like to say something. Just that I agree about process with Councilmember Dewar and Councilmember Breckus. And I don't think that wanting to follow process is not being supportive of affordable housing. And I think a delay of a few weeks is not unreasonable to make sure that we're following processes correctly in case there is an appeal. So I think that we should hold off on this.
All right. Well, I'll just weigh in. I really do care about process because I'm very concerned about people's rights in our system. And it's often difficult to even participate in our system for both developers, applicants, the members of the public. I want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. I think everyone knows that I've been one of our biggest champions of affordable housing, even projects that we had a split vote on here. I remember one in my ward that we had a split vote on 4-3. It was very close, but the four prevailed. And we were able to build that. There were a lot of legitimate concerns from the council, as well as other people about that affordable housing. In fact, we have the developers here in the room. It was vintage at the steamboat. That was very controversial. But anyway, but I felt very confident in all these cases that we have had process. So I'm of two minds here. But anyway, I'm looking for a motion.
Really quickly, have we any direction? Sorry to cut you off.
Yeah.
But before we move on, I just have a quick question. Have we had any recommendation from the state? I mean, is there something, maybe Angela could speak to that, Elaine, I don't know, about is, how much this could affect moving forward? I don't know if they have a certain process in place or-
Right.
Guidelines or timelines. I think we should ask that question.
Right. I think we did, but we're calling back Elaine to discuss it again.
So I just want to clarify your question, Mayor. So if this is not approved today, how that will affect or if there is an appeal?
Yeah, exactly. If this is not approved today. I mean, listen, we can't control if there are appeals and what have you.
Right.
And so therefore, I think we are maybe projecting a little bit. It's just my thought. But I guess give me some ideas about if it's not, and like I said, the guidelines may be coming from the state.
Well, they are in fact. So in NRS, it states that if we are out of our volume cap and the developer needs tax-exempt bonds, that they have to get a letter from us in order to get the tax, all of the tax-exempt bonds from the state. So if we don't approve it, if we do not approve the letter in support to the state, the financing will fall through. With that being said, it doesn't have to be today per se, but that does put the developer, from what I understand, in a bit of a crunch, because that's the majority of their financing is the tax-exempt bonds. So they have to get that financing together.
Okay. Is the developer here?
The developer is here.
Okay. Maybe he can speak a little to that.
Yeah, Mark Lambing with Dominion. So basically, getting this letter means that we can start the process with Nevada Housing Division to apply for those bonds which are required for the 4% tax credit program that we'll be utilizing. And so one thing I'd like to make clear is that we could have came in two months ago asking for this resolution of support, saying, here's generally the area, here's how many units, here's how many bonds we need. And it could have gotten approved independent of us getting site plan approval, because site plan approval is more about how are we orienting the buildings? So those are two very different things. It's kind of unfortunate that we put the timing so close together that now they're being seen as one. But I would just like to clarify that they are two separate, very separate, distinct paths. One's about physical buildings. The other is about, is the city okay with the state using financing for a project of this nature?
Okay. Thank you so much for that. And I just, you know, I went and just chatted with our attorney to make sure. I didn't want to do anything that would be considered prejudicial if in case we receive something. And I guess I'm going to ask our staff. I think you just made a good point. You could have applied two months ago, and we could have approved that before you even got a permit. Is that correct? Is that correct, staff? Right? And Angela, do you agree with that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I think that's a very important point to make. It's unfortunate that they're together. But I guess I would ask our staff, just before we get to the motion, to think about those kind of outcomes and to help us do better in terms of not having this kind of so close in time. If there is a permit, let's let it run its course. But let's, I asked our attorney and I wondered if Mr. Shipman could share with us, you know, is, if we approve this, is it considered prejudicial in any way should an appeal come?
And for the record, John Shipman, no, this is, these are two separate tracks. One's about financing, one's about zoning. The bottom line is, Councilmember Reese discussed, if this does get appealed, it comes back to this body, and then you can address it on the merits in terms of the zoning. And if the project is denied at that point because you don't believe it's a good project, then this entire discussion is irrelevant. So, and if, so this is, it's fine. These are totally two separate tracks, and they don't have any-
Bearing on each other?
Bearing on each other legally, or it wouldn't prejudice the land use decision.
Okay. That's an important distinction for me, so I appreciate you putting that on the record, because, you know, it's not just approve or deny. When appeals come, there is also sometimes modifications. It might be, we approve it, except this one condition change or something like that. And so I want to make sure we're all in the clear to do anything that we need to do.
Yeah, and to confirm that. Yeah. I mean, again, that is a totally separate approval, and you have all the tools that you have in the current toolbox.
Okay. All right.
Approve staff recommendations.
All right. So I have a, just hold on one sec. I think I hear this from the mayor. Just hold on one sec. I want to make sure everybody's just had a final chance. Mr. Martinez, Madam Mayor?
I'm going to.
Okay. And Ms. Breckus, you've said what you wanted to say. Okay. All right. And so it looks like we have a motion from Mr. Reese to approve staff recommendation, which is to forward the project to the state with a letter.
Second.
And we have a motion from, a second from Ms. Taylor. All right.
I'd like to speak on the motion, if I could.
Yes, yes, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, we usually defer to the ward representative on these motions.
I know. I was going to ask her.
I don't know what happened there, but I understood the motion. I'm going to support, but I'm also going to state that, you know, these resolutions that we have, you know, I think there should be clarification by staff on what exactly they mean. Because for the 4% deals, when those come through the competitive allocation process, you know, zoning verification is a requirement. As I recall from working there, my work there ended around 2012, but I think the process is still the same. So I think staff should be tasked with explaining what happens with these other deals that go with bond cap. And I'm not so sure that there isn't some signaling that goes on that it has zoning in place to some level. And it doesn't, because it's in an appeal period. So I don't know that I agree. I think it's really easy to task staff with the minimum threshold. If a project is one that drives a Planning Commission requirement, make sure that's done through, done. You know, I don't think it matters, you know, when the applicant decided to get it through or not. Their timing, I think that it should be a threshold. We have so much that's built to write, right to build, which actually presumably are easier considerations from a land use perspective. So one that goes through site plan review, and this one does, because it involves extensive grading adjacent to neighborhoods. You know, I think that should be in place, and I think staff should queue it up properly before you go down and put in your letter of support. So that's what I would ask, that, you know, administratively, staff is tasked with in the future, so these kind of discussions don't have to happen. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up. And I'm going to concur with your position. I just think it would be helpful to us to not have this kind of situation develop, but it would be a way of avoiding this kind of conflict. So, and did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, why wasn't this asked four months ago then? Like, if that was possible, this project, you know, has been around for a little bit, why is it happening right now?
Mark Lambing with Dominion. So basically, it's just a matter of course. We get this site under contract. We need to figure out what we can build there, how many units. And we got to that point. Then we had a pre-op meeting with the city to see if it was something that could get approved and have staff support. And so that's just the normal course of it. It would be putting, you know, the cart before the horse to try and get an approval on bonds the day after we get under contract, when we don't even know how many units we're going to build, if we're going to have staff support. And so once we realized we had staff support, we started gearing up. And it takes a while to get on this. I think we probably would have had everything documentation-wise ready about a month ago to get to today. And so it's just how it works. I mean, we could have done it that way. We could have waited six months and applied. There's risks doing it that way. But it's just, there's a thousand things to do to develop an apartment complex. And once we got through the hurdle of getting staff approval on the site plan, we then turned to the financing, because that's the other second main thing. And just if I may quickly talk about being in the appeal period, that is for the site plan. That is not for the zoning. With the tax credit app, you are correct, ma'am, that we would need zoning verification. So if we requested that from the city, it's zoned, makes you suburban, unlimited height, unlimited density. So if we said, hey, can we get a zoning letter that says we're allowed to build 402 units, we would get that independent of the site plan approval that is in the appeal period. It is not site plan specific.
So what you're saying is you already have the zoning?
So we are working on the tax credit application. Yeah, we already have the zoning, correct.
Right. And you've had it. There was no change. Is that right, Ms. Fuze? So they already had the zoning. So in order to show that in the application, you already could.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Breckus?
Aye.
Was that aye for yes of support of the motion?
I vote aye in support of the motion.
How do I?
Okay. And any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, welcome. We are, I was just going to reopen public comment for a moment.
Go right ahead.
If I can just continue. Please. What's that? No, I'm not. We're on public comment. So anyway, we're reopening public comment. Madam Clerk, and I'd like to get a public comment. I understand someone came late, so.
Have any public comment cards?
Okay. Could you fill one out after you speak?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for giving me a moment to speak. My name's Dean Hilliard with Green Street Development. I think many of you know our projects. We've developed about 2,500 affordable housing units in the valley. Very interesting public comments this morning, and we like to address it a little bit. One, we are Green Street. We develop the properties. We don't manage the properties. Our vintage partners are the operators after they're built. And so some projects we have ownership in, some we don't. We don't have any ownership on the project that we heard the complaints about today. We built that about eight years ago. Given that, this 1.4 million that we're asking for makes or breaks the 180 units we're trying to develop as Green Street, and we are owners in this one. Given the nature of what we heard, we think we'd like to spend the next two weeks before council and meet with residents, go to the property, meet with Vintages, meet with FPI before we come before this request for a stoker. We just think it's the right thing to do after hearing these people. We saw some, even in the hallway, and talked to them out there. So we'd like to request a continuance to the next council meeting on this item, if that's okay.
Well, let me find out from our, our city, acting city manager here.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. That would be the decision of the body when you get to that item.
Okay.
This is, I believe we are going with general public comment is what we are-
We are.
-with this item. So my recommendation would be when council gets to that item, you have the option, because you've already adopted your agenda for the day.
Yeah.
So we can open that item when you get there, and then council can choose to continue to a future meeting.
Okay.
Or not.
I'd like to, I'd like to, as we're, I think we're going into break, I'd like to request waiving of the rules to reopen the adoption of the agenda.
Okay. So when we come-
To do it now. No, to do it right now, to reopen adoption of the agenda, so we could make a change to item C2, to move that, if that's what the applicant is requesting. So I'd like to request and to open A4.
Assistant City Attorney, I believe, would like to-
Yeah.
Yeah. If I may, just maybe make it a little bit quicker. My understanding is that item C2, you want to-
There's a request to continue from the applicant for item C2.
Yes. So you could take that right now, and you don't have to reopen the agenda. You can take that item right now, and you can just move to-
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to- Yeah, I know, I just wanted to, but we would have had to go on to see one. So, anyway, let me consult with the mayor.
Okay, if there's no more public comment, Madam Clerk, is there?
We've closed general public comment, so no, none at this time.
Okay, so then we can go jump right back in to this item, correct, Jonathan?
That's what he's saying.
Okay, perfect, well, let's do that. First of all, I would say thank you so much for listening and hearing the concerns, and, you know, we've had the opportunity to, all of us actually worked with you and all the wonderful projects that you do. So we understand that you don't manage them, but I know that you are jumping in and you care deeply about sort of the outcomes of those projects. So I want to praise you and thank you so much. Sometimes we don't see that from developers, unfortunately, but you've always been, you know, very easy to work with, but have an open door and listen. So I want to...
Madam Mayor, if I could jump in.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a public hearing, so in order for council to continue, we do need to open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, I thought, okay.
That's okay.
Sorry, Jonathan. Okay, so at this time, we will now open the public hearing. Any correspondence received?
Um, thank you.
And all notices given?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Proper notice was given on item C2 and no correspondence received. Additionally, we do not have any public comment registered.
Okay, thank you. So we are now open in the public hearing for process.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so if council would like to continue, we would be, you'd either need to set a time certain or not, and then staff will renotice.
Okay, sounds good.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
It's in Ward 2, and I would like to say something before we do much.
Sure.
I am very grateful to you, Mr. Hilliard, for being here, first of all. Apparently, you heard the comments this morning.
Yes.
You know, I, I'm sitting here, I just counted them up, with 27, what they call 14-day notice to landlord. And their concerns, and it sounds like we got a tip of the iceberg here today, but there's many concerns from this. And I learned from our staff that we have a process where they're making sure that there's no outstanding compliance issues. So I think you're very wise to take this course and, and very, let me put it this way, you're out over, you're being proactive, is the word I'm trying to use. And I like the proposal that you have. What I don't know is how long it might take you to work through all those things. You sort of indicated a two-week period for the continuance. I'm not, I, I think you should let us know. We don't have any special posting or requirements where we have to put up notices. All we have to do is put something on an agenda with a three-day public notice. So let me ask Madam Mayor, just, I don't know what a right timeframe would be. I think they should come back to us when they feel like it's ready.
Okay.
Or hear from our staff.
Thinking the next meeting.
Yeah, I think for us, we have, and this all came news to Green Street on Monday, so the management company has already been given a 60-day termination notice if these corrections are not made. It's part of the legal contract with the management company. So that was made yesterday.
Good.
They're very interested in fixing all these problems, because they manage several thousand units for Vintage here, and also in Oregon and Washington, and Vintage has threatened to remove them from all the projects.
Yeah.
So what we're proposing is to come back in two weeks. Green Street's gonna go to the property itself, meet with residents, look at it, see the real issues, walk it with a clipboard, with staff, with maintenance.
Yeah.
And determine very quickly what, what can happen. So we think we can do that, we're gonna do that this week, so.
That's great. I think that's very helpful. Unfortunately, it sounds like there's some issues among this management company.
Yep.
This is not the first complaint that I've heard, so it's not just you. So I appreciate you sort of being the first out there to really address it.
We want to get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I support having it come back to our next meeting, and I just want to correct, this is the one on Stoker Ave that I thought was in Ward 1. Otherwise, Miss Dour would have been on the phone yesterday on a telephone conference with a neighbor interested in the party rather than me, so, in the project rather than me. So I'm pretty sure it is in Ward 1, and, you know, I have a keen interest in this project, so I would support having it come forward. And if anyone knows it's not in Ward 1, go ahead and state, but I think it is.
Okay, thank you.
Could I clarify that?
Yeah.
Apparently, our staff look at, when, when an application comes in like this from Vintage, they look at a number of the properties and they do a compliance check. One of the properties that they looked at is in Ward 2, and those were the residents we heard today. This project, Stoker, is in Ward 1, and it's in, it's on Stoker in Ward 1. But it's the background that I think that they were evaluating our staff. So that's, that's what it's about. I'm not saying this is in Ward 2. Okay?
Okay, and then also, A.S.M. Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Some of the questions that actually were brought up, I would assume, and I actually know that they do, rise to the level of code enforcement. I assume we have, we have some of those on file, and I assume that there are complaints, formal complaints through Reno Direct. Can you confirm that? And then also talk a little bit about processing, because some of these affordable projects come in, first come, first served.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I'll go in the order that you asked regarding code enforcement, starting, we have received complaints into Reno Direct regarding multiple of the Vintage, particularly in some of the other managed properties as well. When a service request comes in, the request is forwarded to code enforcement. They go do an onsite inspection, depending on the type of the request. If it is a health, life, and safety issue, those are addressed immediately, and citations are issued accordingly. Many of the things, we can only reference from the public right of way. However, when they do have layered home funds, there's additional opportunities for inspections that are required in that space as well. So we work with multiple departments to make sure that we are keeping an eye on some of these when they're reported to us.
Okay, thank you.
And then to address the first come, first served, the direction of council with this program was that these properties would be brought forward on a first come, first served basis. So at that point, we do have others in the queue, however, they've just come forward to council in the order which they were received. My direction to staff, and I would look for confirmation from council, is that if you do choose to continue this item today, we would not bring forward the next in line until council makes a decision on this one. So we're keeping in order with previous direction of order of receipt.
Okay, perfect. Alright, thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Attorney. Ms. Attorney, I, I was just handed copies of what's called a 14-day notice to landlord, and it says, "In an effort to ensure fair opportunity for landlords to address issues with the rental property prior to action by the City of Reno Code Enforcement, tenants need to complete this form and provide it to landlord or landlord's agent as soon as possible." And I just received 27 of these that may not be in Reno Direct. I think they're going a different route to code enforcement, so just be aware, there might be...
They, they like, they all end in code enforcement, because that's the only way they can get this form.
Gotcha.
So if requests come in, if there's a notice of no heat or no water, that's something that we address right away.
Okay.
We need to connect with constituents, so they allow us into the access, and then that way we can address it with the landlord.
Alright, yeah.
So I appreciate that. I'll make sure that staff has a copy of those, just to ensure that they're all getting where they need to go.
Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, this is your word, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're a little off-topic here talking about these other items.
Will you just give me a motion?
Yeah, I move to continue this item to the, is it October, what is it, October 9th meeting?
Yes, okay, thank you. I have a motion...
October 9th at 10:00 a.m., please.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Breckus, I have a second from Councilman Reese. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Hilliard, for doing this and championing and kind of being the voice for probably some people that don't get to come before the management company. So thank you.
Thank you.
And you're always doing a great job. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. Real quick announcement, October 15th, we have the grand opening of our Washington Station project.
Yay!
The one the city gave us a much reduced market price on the land. It's open, we have residents moving in, grand opening October 15th. Everyone's invited.
Okay, how much affordable housing have you supplied in this city?
I think we're north of 2,500 units.
That's fantastic.
Somewhere in the 4,000, 4,500 residents. And on that note, we hardly ever hear the negative thing, so hearing this today in person is why we decided to postpone this. We had already discussed it a little bit yesterday, but actually hearing these people and meeting them, it's, that's why we decided to do this.
Well, you're one of our favorite project developers, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much.
You guys are amazing. Thank you so much. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd recommend that we take a break for 30 minutes. I know we have a time certain, but they...
I just want to make sure, because we have people in the room, so I want to get their items. I would assume, Madam Clerk, that you took some inventory?
I know we have...
Of, who's here for what item, so that you're not sitting here all day.
C3, for sure.
C3? And that way, staff too. You guys have lives and gotta get going.
Madam Mayor, we also, just to note, we do have item D3, the Truckee River Vision Plan, which council stated to hear no sooner than 1:00. They are also in the audience from out of town.
Okay, well, that's good, because it's 1:00. So we're, we're right on schedule.
Okay, so you don't want to do a...
So if you are in the room for an item, I would just ask that you walk on over to Madam Clerk, tell her what you're here for, so we can hear that on the agenda. And there's, there's a little council hack for you, so all of you listening up there, when you come into council, we like to prioritize, prioritize the people that are in the room so that they can get back to work. Alright, so moving along...
So, Madam Mayor, could we take a 10-minute break, or do you want to take zero break? I just want to know, because I'm gonna go...
Well, let's just take a, we say 5, but it ends up at 10.
Well, it'll be 10, okay.
So, what do you guys think?
10 after 1?
What do you think?
I would like to take 1, but anyone?
Okay. Okay, 10, 11, yep. So we'll take a 10-minute break.
Fine.
And then, Madam Mayor, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna do the, which item will we pick up on after that?
The 1:00 time...
We're on...
D3.
Yeah. We gave them a time certain, so that's item, what is that?
David 3.
D3.
D3.
Okay.
So Councilwoman Breckus, D3 when we come back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
and at this time, Councilmember Breckus is absent.
Okay, she'll get back on-
And Councilmember Ebert is also absent.
Okay, she's gonna... She'll be here in a second, and Councilwoman Breckus will get back on really quick. With that being said, do you have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item. Additionally, are we... I'm sorry. We're opening D, right?
Yes.
We did receive written correspondence from... As four letters of support on this item that has been distributed to the Reno City Council and is a part of the permanent record.
We're doing D3.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I... My brain is not functioning in full capacity today. We have no public comment on Item D3, but we do have a live public comment from Irish Jalee Papard. Jalee Papard.
Ah, come on up. Go ahead and fix it for the record.
Yeah, I'm so sorry for the awkward last name. Jalee, like a jelly bean.
How do we spell?
J-E-H-L-E.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
So yes, Iris Jalee Papard, for the record, One Truckee River Executive Director. And I want to just fully support the Truckee River Vision Plan. I'm very excited that we are at this point, and I fully support it. And I want to also share, starting off, that I've reached out to the county and also Tom Warf, that I have a meeting at 2:00, so if I run out, that's why, related to the EPA Community Change Grant Program. And it's, I think, a stellar opportunity for this region to apply. It's due November 21st, and it speaks to the Truckee River Vision Plan. So I'm very excited to work with city Reno staff, along with Sparks and the county, to put in an application. You can ask up to $20 million. So we're talking about some good work here.
That's awesome.
Yes, so I am really excited about this being approved and just going forward immediately into figuring out how we're gonna implement it.
Oh, that's great. And it's also nice to see the collaboration between jurisdictions on this. This is super important.
Yeah.
Good job. Thanks for all you're doing. Okay, so this is a presentation discussion and potential approval of the Truckee River Vision Plan, prepared by DIG Studio. And I know we have DIG here with us today. So go ahead, Brian, take it away.
Yep. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager, for the record. I am here to introduce DIG Studios and the presentation of the Truckee River Vision Plan. We started this project last October, where we went out seeking partners to start this process. One of the greatest things we did under this process is there were 32,000 points of contact with the public. The interactive website that was launched to tell people what they like about the river, comments, pros, cons, areas where they'd like to see improvement, garnered 8,000 participation, as well as the survey got about 800 people. And so the massive amount of public engagement on this project, as well as working with the vast amount of stakeholders, the previous plans that were drawn that had to be reviewed and incorporated, this is quite a tremendous and substantial project. So without further ado, I don't want to take any more time away from DIG to give their presentation. So let me introduce Brandon with DIG Studios.
Thank you, Brian. Brandon Sobiak, Principal with DIG Studio, and excited to be here. Councilwoman Dur, I appreciate, in retrospect, the moving to today. Instead of doing this at 8:00 p.m. at night, I think everybody will be a little bit more awake. It is a-
I just didn't think it would get the attention it deserves. It's our pride and jewel.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I will try to be as brief as possible, but there is a lot of content to go through today. So if there's anything that you see, feel free for questions afterwards. Like Brian had mentioned, this was kind of the statement that led to the Truckee River... The creation of the Truckee River Vision Plan, RFP, cohesive plan to guide current and future investment. Where we are today, like Brian mentioned, we've gone through various rounds of stakeholder engagement, community engagement, and visioning and draft plan. And we are here with the final plan today for adoption. So a little bit about the approach to the Truckee River Vision Plan, from our perspective. It is a 17-mile corridor from basically the Reno-Sparks line over to the California border. It is adjacent to a lot of different communities. And so when we looked at the plan, these different character areas began to develop, and a lot of our recommendations kind of situate within character areas in their descriptions. We also looked at planning pillars of safety, water, ecological systems, land use and design, parks and open space, mobility and connectivity, and public art. So this is a very broad plan when it comes to the river, just beyond the banks, you know, how to engage it in a meaningful way that brings community value. Like Brian also mentioned, we had two rounds of public engagement and stakeholder outreach, live interactive website, with the top things of cleanliness, aesthetics, safety concerns, and connectivity rising to the top of issues and concerns by the community of why the river is not currently visited. One comment that we had in the second round of outreach was to prioritize the goals.
convening it is 1:19 and at this time council member Breckus is absent.
Okay, she'll get back on.
And council member Ebert is also absent.
Okay, she's gonna, she'll be here in a second and councilwoman Breckus will get back on really quick. With that being said, do you have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment on this item additionally. Are we, I'm sorry, we're opening D, right?
Yes.
We did receive written correspondence from, as four letters of support on this item that has been distributed to the Reno City Council and is a part of the permanent record.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I, my brain is not functioning in full capacity today. We have no public comment on item D3 but we do have a live public comment from Irish Jale Pappard. Jale Pappard.
Go ahead and, and fix it for the record.
Yeah, I'm so sorry for the awkward last name. Jalee, like a jelly bean.
How do we spell?
J E H L E.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
So yes, Iris Jalee Pappard for the record, One Trekkie River Executive Director. And I want to just fully support the Trekkie River Vision Plan. I'm very excited that we were at this point and I fully support it. And I want to also share, starting off, that I've reached out to the county and also Tom Worf, that I have a meeting at 2, so if I run out, that's why, related to the EPA community change grant program. And it's, I think, a stellar opportunity for this region to apply. It's due November 21st and it speaks to the Trekkie River Vision Plan. So I'm very excited to work with city Reno staff along with Sparks and the county to put in an application. You can ask up to $20 million. So we're talking about some, some good work here.
That's awesome.
Yes, so I am really excited about this being approved and, and just going forward immediately into figuring out how we're going to implement it.
Oh, that's great. And it's also nice to see the, the collaboration between jurisdictions on this. This is super important.
Yeah.
Good job. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a presentation discussion and potential approval of the Trekkie River Vision Plan prepared by DIG Studio. And I know we have DIG here with us today. So go ahead, Brian, take it away.
Yep. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager for the record. I am here to introduce DIG Studios and the presentation of the Trekkie River Vision Plan. We started this project last October. We went out seeking partners to start this process. One of the greatest things we did under this process is there were 32,000 points of contact with the public. The interactive website that was launched to tell people what they like about the river, comments, pros, cons, areas where they'd like to see improvement garnered 8,000 participation, as well as the survey got about 800 people. And so the massive amount of public engagement on this project, as well as working with the vast amount of stakeholders, the previous plans that were drawn that had to be reviewed and incorporated, this is quite a tremendous and substantial project. So without further ado, I don't want to take any more time away from DIG to give their presentation. So let me introduce Brandon with DIG Studios.
Thank you, Brian. Brandon Sobiak, Principal with DIG Studio and excited to be here. Councilwoman Dur, I appreciate in retrospect the moving to today. Instead of doing this at 8:00 PM at night, I think everybody is, will be a little bit more awake. It is a...
I just didn't think it would get the attention it deserves. It's our pride and jewel.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I will try to be as brief as possible, but there is a lot of content to go through today. So if there's anything that you see, feel free for questions afterwards. Like Brian had mentioned, this was kind of the statement that, that led to the Trekkie River, the creation of the Trekkie River Vision Plan, RFP, cohesive plan to guide current and future investment. Where we are today, like Brian mentioned, we've gone through various rounds of stakeholder engagement, community engagement, and visioning and draft plan, and we are here with the final plan today for adoption. So a little bit about the approach to the Trekkie River Vision Plan from our perspective. It is a 17-mile corridor from basically the Reno-Sparks line over to the California border. It is adjacent to a lot of different communities. And so when we looked at the plan, these different character areas began to develop and a lot of our recommendations kind of situate within character areas in their descriptions. We also looked at planning pillars of safety water ecological systems, land use and design, parks and open space, mobility and connectivity, and public art. So this is a very broad plan when it comes to the river, just beyond the banks, you know, how to engage it in a meaningful way that brings community value. Like Brian mentioned, there were several plans in one way or the other that did intersect with the river, from Parks and Rec open space, the transportation plans, to the Virginia Street study. And so our first task as consultants was to understand that there had been a lot of people with eyes on this. I think it's something that we heard back in October of last year, that there were a lot of people that had put some serious time and effort into this plan, including, or into this river, including Iris sitting behind me. And it was important to understand what had been done to be able to move things forward. Like Brian also mentioned, we had two rounds of public engagement and stakeholder outreach, live interactive website, with the top things of cleanliness, aesthetics, safety concerns, and connectivity rising to the top of issues and concerns by the community of why the river is not currently visited. One comment that we had in the second round of outreach was to prioritize the goals. And so we went out to the community and with the goals that were developed with the first round of input, we said prioritize this, what resonates with you the most. So these are in priority level now, so encourage a clean and safe river, prioritize the ecological function of the river, and celebrate the river as recreational asset. Planning for consistency in design and maintenance was critical, and then building a connected river. So that was very brief of how we got to the plan recommendations, and so I'll take a little bit more time now with the recommendation summaries. So the recommendation summaries are organized around a series of planning themes that relate to those lenses that we, or those planning pillars that we talked about previously, which are enhancing ecology and safety, promoting great neighborhoods, activating public space, creating connections and integration of public art. So in starting with enhancing ecology and safety, this really rose to the top as a, as a high priority for the community and really led, not only within its chapter in the Trekkie River Plan, but really led as the foundation to a lot of the recommendations beyond, you know, its chapter in terms of planning and zoning and, and parks and recreation. But the safety water and ecological systems recommendations were, revolved around three main categories of promotion of desired riverside use, improving in river safety, which was a very large concern for the group of recreational constituents that use the river, both for kayaking and fishing and other activities. And collaboratively steward the Trekkie River, understanding that there's a lot of organizations that have been doing a lot of work for a long time and how can this plan support and fund their ongoing efforts. Some of the other recommendations for that chapter were providing consistent and ecologically sensitive lighting, vegetation management, and identifying areas of bank restoration, vegetation management areas, and then providing long-term funding sources for the management of vegetation along the Trekkie River corridor. Standardizing and implementing Trekkie River site furnishing package, which includes new trash receptacles that are animal resistant, as well as benches, picnic tables, and other park site furnishings along the trail. And then this was another important one, which was assessing in river obstacles. One of the key recommendations is to go forward with an assessment of those low-head dams and in river obstacles to understand potential opportunities for removal, creation of additional recreational features, or, you know, additional portages or passages that, that need to happen. So that leads us into promoting great neighborhoods, which is about land use and planning. One of the big recommendations of this plan is to create the Trekkie River Overlay Zone District, which would be a specific zoning district overlay that would guide development for all non-single-family parcels along, within 200 feet of the Trekkie River's edge, and this would just be city of Reno. Again, that would include industrial mixed-use type properties ripe for future redevelopment along the river corridor. And then to, to then kind of build on that was the recommendation to come in after those guidelines and that zone district was established, to then incentivize responsible redevelopment along the river corridor. Excuse me. And there were two kind of interesting takeaways from the second round of community outreach that related to this. One is almost 80% of the people ranked that it is either extremely important or important for the city to have the tools to properly regulate development along the river corridor. And then the other is that 50% of participants also said that the city of Reno should use the economic tools that they have to then incentivize good development that follows those guidelines along the corridor. About 30%, 28 to be exact, had no opinion, and only about 22 said, you know, don't incentivize. So that was kind of an interesting lens from the community of supporting not only, you know, the zoning overlay district, but also then incentivizing redevelopment of the corridor and understanding the value that good development can have to protect the river and engage it in a meaningful way. So I'll go in really quickly. We outlined kind of what those guidelines would entail and the scope of what, what that zone district would, would kind of oversee. The first is building and massing. So this right away establishes a setback boundary from the river edge, making sure that there's always area for a native river, river edge bank, public access easement, that no buildings or roads could be built within 100 feet of the river edge going forward. It also talks about activation of the ground floor, so no more turning buildings back on the river, having more cafes, retail, those types of environments, actually fronting the river to make that river corridor a lively edge. And then it gets into massing of buildings, making sure that the river always has solar exposure and things like that, that there's this step up of building massings from the river edge. The second is connections and open space. One of the biggest issues facing kind of the eastern portion of the river from downtown is basically the large walls of impenetrable connection to the river. So you, you know, you can't, you don't have any perpendicular connections or eyes on the river corridor, and so you have these long stretches of either walls or back of industrial buildings. And so this is basically saying, as those areas start to redevelop, we want to make sure that we have those publicly accessible pedestrian connections at maximum every 300 feet in these areas. And that through the development, we want to dedicate public open space and that public open space should have a relationship to the river, and that's shown in the red there. Thirdly, amenities and materials. So talking about not only, you know, site furnishings, consistencies from a maintenance standpoint, but also performance of those materials in terms of permeability, solar reflectance, how those, and where and how they're sourced. The fourth is access and parking. So, you know, parking is something that is concealed and doesn't become a visible distraction from being on the river corridor. I think we need to, as one respondent from the community survey said the second round, we need to be very cognizant of still allowing a high degree of access to the river trail in the corridor, but we can do it in a way that kind of hides those parking garages, hides those parking lots, so they don't become something that is an eyesore. And finally, green infrastructure. This overlay and building on, you know, guidelines of, you know, permeability, stormwater management on-site to improve water quality, ultimately entering the Trekkie River. And so that's kind of wraps the, the five lenses or the five kind of pieces of the zoning overlay district plan. That brings us to revitalizing public parks, which builds a lot on your Parks and Rec open space plan that was recently passed. One of the big key things, and I know, Mayor, it was something that was talked about, you know, last session, or actually two sessions ago, was this idea of a Trekkie River Special Parks District. You know, we do see that as a key recommendation from the pros plan. It's carried forward and this plan is something that, you know, taking the next step, understanding the service plan and moving that forward is really critical to building long-term funding and support. Even items like Iris brought forward in terms of grant applications, you know, districts have that ability to, to then staff and have, you know, full-time grant writers, that sort of thing, to, you know, continually build beyond just assessments and, you know, levies, build financial backing for improvements that you see within this plan. In the appendix of the document, we actually break down several different parks districts that have been developed in the states. One case study that we highlighted was Three Rivers Park District, Hennepin County in Minneapolis. Parks District oversees all the trails and parks along the Mississippi River. Thought it was really interesting and comparable in terms of looking at, you know, their board setup and how they ultimately became. So one of the other key recommendations from the Parks and Rec Open Space Plan was this redevelopment in key civic spaces in the downtown core, and we 100% firmly backed that. This plan comes out and says that, you know, we would see great benefit in revitalizing areas like West Street, the plaza in front of the post office, city plaza, and really start to bring some more of the river into those hardscape places. I think we're firm believers that public space can reflect, you know, the values of the community and this push of integrating ecology and water quality. And you take a look at something like West Street where it's basically a, you know, big concrete plaza, goes into, you know, the sewer and then out into the river, and how can we re-envision a space like that to bring some more vegetation into it, clean that water before it enters the river, but then also bring in, you know, this idea of activation and liveliness and partnership with surrounding businesses. So this is showing, you know, an activation kiosk where you could imagine bike rentals or kayak rentals, tube rentals, that sort of thing happening within, within the plaza space. We continue to look at, you know, through the Parks and Rec chapter, areas like the River Walk, looking for opportunities where we can continually soften the edge. That was something that was a priority from the community is the integration of green, providing a lot more shade trees on the south especially, that can help shade portions of the, of the river in terms of creating cooling in the water, and then offering opportunities for education and observation decks along the way. There are partnerships that are available out there and owners of buildings that are very interested in having discussions and conversations about turning, you know, parking lots into public space and publicly accessible space that are activated by retail and cafes and, and that sort of thing, that brings a level of vibrance to the downtown core. And when you think about what could happen on the post office side to how that could relate to the city plaza side, you really could create this wonderful public square in the center of the city where you have these, you know, you have city hall with this historic post office and they're both kind of speaking to one another. And you have this amazing green space with the river running, you know, running right through it. We are recommending, you know, redesign of city plaza in something that is a lot more park-like. I think there's a lot of plaza spaces within the city. You know, even the street there can be used for markets and festivals and tents and all of that. And so bringing that green space back into the city, I think, would be a priority. And really opening up as much as possible that connection, both physically and visually down to the river, because right now it's very cut off and in many ways, there's kind of a ramp down there, but when you're down there, it feels unsafe because you can't be seen. So this idea of visual connection to the river is, is very important. Ideas like shaded river walks, if you can see over there, like the, the little fish, the idea of integrating sculptural play, places for family that can tell stories. So your kids jumping and, you know, climbing all over a trout and learning the, you know, the importance of that species and the river and what it does. We talked to Reno Sparks Indian Colony a lot about the importance of storytelling and naming and how you can use these public spaces, these places of celebration of the water to engage their community as well. So a lot of, a lot of potential with, with that downtown core and what could really become the heart of the city. And then the Parks and Rec chapter goes on to look at the East Reno Neighborhoods Parks, which would be like Broadhead, John Champion, Fisherman's, and identifies new family amenities that could occur in those areas and then potentially even for park expansion. This is that, back from the land use and planning slide, this is that city maintenance yard currently. You could think if that ever got redeveloped into, into development, that would be a great opportunity to expand Fisherman's and create more of a regional park opportunity along the river. Within this document, I won't get into all the different details because there's thousands, we break down basically every single park with recommendations on how they relate to the river, where to place access points, what types of amenities could enhance those, and how various links from the mobility chapter could work through those park spaces. So that brings us to creating connections, which is the mobility chapter. The big, the big kind of move here is obviously creating consistency and connectivity within the path design. The, the, the document and the plan involves a series of these plan graphics that look at things that are both short-term, quick fixes, and long-term, bigger visions of how we can basically navigate the Tahoe Pyramid Trail and have better adjacency with the river to keep, you know, folks off of, say, Mayberry when they get over that, we have to go through the neighborhood and then all of a sudden you're on a busy street. It was those types of comments on that map that were really, really helpful, and that's why that map feature with the interactive website was great, because it said, you know, hey, I love this trail, but I don't like this area, and this is where our family always stops because we don't feel comfortable. And so that, a lot of the map feedback that we got really drove a lot of the recommendations within this portion of the plan. We do get into then preferred cross-sections, both from a suburban, or from a, from more of a rural perspective into more of the suburban and downtown neighborhood, looking at Riverside Drive, understanding that there's a level of comfort that, you know, avid cyclists have with shared bike lanes, but again, kind of from a family perspective, is there a way to isolate and protect those, those travel lanes along the Tahoe Pyramid Trail? And actually, within this current footprint of Riverside Drive, modify that cross-section with a, with a protected two-way bike lane. Looking at areas, again, like downtown where you're adjacent to flood walls, how you can soften that from a, from a pedestrian perspective. And then also looking at bringing in decorative pavement to identify and clarify where the trail is and, you know, using, using permeable pavers to mitigate and reduce stormwater runoff, but also to slow traffic. You know, it'll give a rumble, it'll give a texture, it will naturally kind of slow down bikers and those folks using that facility through downtown where you have a lot of that different activity happening. And then moving east, obviously, looking at some areas of severely robed bank, public safety concerns, are there innovative ways that we can still get whits that we need for pathways and do it within a limited footprint and, and then come back and, and re-engineer that bank so it can be a sustainable vegetated bank moving forward? And then in addition to kind of on-trail mobility recommendations, another one is kind of within the water itself and development of a blue-way plan, which includes increased signage and wayfinding from actually being in the river itself, looking at, you know, ingress points, egress points, and kind of a better understanding of where you are through the river corridor. Sorry, almost there. Like I said, there's a lot. The final chapter of recommendations is integration of public art. This was not something that was necessarily asked for during the RFP process, but we felt was really important after being here. There is a significant influence of the arts in Reno, and it was something that came from previous planning as well, is that Reno wanted to be known for outdoor recreation and art, and public art. And so I think the number one message here is that integrating public art early in the process is really important. We worked with our public art consultant to develop some recommendations, who have also been coordinating with Megan as well. One of those is to create an icon or a symbol that can intuitively let you know when you're at the river and at the trail, utilizing mural art for wayfinding. There's already a lot of functional art out there, building on that program and funding it, Underpass Art to kind of make those not-so-comfortable spaces more appealing to be in. And then just a minor one of repositioning believe or taking a look at that in city plaza, because it is a barrier to the river right now, and if that opens up to the river, maybe there's a different way to position that. They also developed this kind of hierarchy or typology of art installations from iconic, temporary, mural, discovery, and functional, and went through a symbol or mapping exercise that we did from a Parks and Rec and a mobility chapter sections of understanding and identifying various opportunities to implement art. So that leads us to, now we have all these recommendations, and what do we do to implementing the vision? We have an implementation chapter that will serve as a guide for the city of Reno in terms of prioritizing, understanding potential funding sources, and timelines for all these recommendations moving into the future. I don't expect anybody to read what's on the screen, it's just to kind of give an understanding of what this looks like. It's actually a live Excel document that the team has access to that can be continually updated, you know, based on progress and, you know, what grants may have been applied for, you know, where you are in the, in the process. But each chapter that we just went through, all those recommendations are then consolidated into this one place. So, you know, anybody has access to this can then look at the highest priority items to low priority items, kind of the timeframes on each. The priorities were based on community feedback on that second round. A lot of the questions we asked, because we had a lot of different recommendations, were what speaks to you, what is a high priority to you, and that, that influenced the back chapter of the implementation matrix. And like I said, it's a kind of area description, priority, timing. You know, there's also one called a project trigger, which is, is does something have to happen first before this thing can happen? So when that is the case, we make note of that as well.
Go back to say, stakeholder priority one is...
Priority one...
For anyone that's looking for it.
I would say priority 1A and 1B. Can I go 1A and 1B? I would say would be looking at the service plan for the Special Parks District. And then priority 1B would be the Overlay Zone District, because that's going to have a lot of influence immediately on, on how development engages the river. So, yeah, next steps. Right, I don't know if you want to come back up for next steps, but plan adoption today, complete the ARPA-funded projects, trash cans are ordered, dog bag dispensers are ordered. Yes.
Right here.
Yes, they, they, yes, we're, we're there. Create a service plan, implement the overlay zoning district. process is really important. We worked with our public art consultant to develop some recommendations who have also been coordinating with Megan as well. One of those is to create an icon or a symbol that can intuitively let you know when you're at the river and at the trail, utilizing mural art for wayfinding. There's already a lot of functional art out there, building on that program and funding it, underpass art to kind of make those not-so-comfortable spaces more appealing to be in. And then just a minor one of repositioning believe or taking a look at that in City Plaza because it is a barrier to the river right now and if that opens up to the river, maybe there's a different way to position that. They also developed this kind of hierarchy or typology of art installations from iconic, temporary, mural, discovery, and functional, and went through a symbol or mapping exercise that we did from a Parks and Rec and a mobility chapter sections of understanding and identifying various opportunities to implement art. So that leads us to now we have all these recommendations and what do we do to implementing the vision? We have an implementation chapter that will serve as a guide for the city of Reno in terms of prioritizing, understanding potential funding sources and timelines for all these recommendations moving into the future. I don't expect anybody to read what's on the screen, it's just to kind of give an understanding of what this looks like. It's actually a live Excel document that the team has access to that can be continually updated, you know, based on progress and, you know, what grants may have been applied for, you know, where you are in the, in the process. But each chapter that we just went through, all those recommendations are then consolidated into this one place. So, you know, anybody has access to this can then look at the highest priority items to low priority items, kind of the timeframes on each. The priorities were based on community feedback on that second round. A lot of the questions we asked, because we had a lot of different recommendations, were what speaks to you, what is a high priority to you? And that, that influenced the back chapter of the implementation matrix. And like I said, it's a kind of area description, priority, timing. You know, there's also one called a project trigger, which is, is does something have to happen first before this thing can happen? So when that is the case, we make note of that as well.
Go back to say, state with priority one.
Priority one.
For anyone that's looking.
I would say priority one A and one B. Can I go one A and one B? I would say would be looking at the service plan for the Special Parks District. And then priority one B would be the overlay zone district because that's going to have a lot of influence immediately on, on how development engages the river. So. So yeah, next steps, and Brian, I don't know if you want to come back up for next steps, but planned adoption today, complete the ARPA-funded projects, trash cans are ordered, dog bag dispensers are ordered. Yes.
Right here.
Yes, they, yes, we're, we're there. Create a service plan, implement the overlay zoning district, and then develop funding plan to complete high priority projects and quick wins. And so with that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Great job. Love it, love it, love it. Okay, I'm going to start with each one of you and I'm going to give you three minutes and we'll try to get back on track because I know we also have other people here that have been here since 9:30 this morning. Councilwoman Eber, go ahead, take it away, three minutes.
I like the idea of turning the believe area into a park, but I don't know like how feasible that is. Like, I don't know, like, do we have numbers on how much all of this?
We do have estimated numbers on, on each one of these. And what I would say is that's a, that's a high priority, but, but longer vision, right?
Yeah.
And so it's something that I think through, through funding, planning and that sort of thing, we recommend that those allocations and just having that on the horizon would be made. From, you know, our perspective of, you know, these civic spaces and how they serve the community, you know, it really is truly the heart of the city. It's where Virginia crosses the river. It's where, you know, the entertainment district meets Midtown. It's kind of, you know, it deserves its, its kind of moment.
Yeah, yeah. And I like, I mean, I like the Blue Plaza, they use it for a lot of different things, but I think it would be great to have some green space there too for when we use it for different things. So also I like all of the vegetation along the river. I think that's great. I think it's good to also kind of protect the banks to the river as well from, you know, erosion and things like that. So I don't really have any questions other than, you know, great job. It's not really a question, but just great presentation. So thank you.
I'll take that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Dorr.
Yeah, thank you. Love the presentation. How much work has gone into this is incredible. I said that as sort of a question, but as a statement, how much has gone in is incredible. The amount of public input that you got, and I know you extended that to get these thousands of comments, one of the things you said early on was that the priority, I got a little confused. So the priority you said was about safety, I think environmental water quality, I think I heard that. And yet the action item priority seemed quite divorced from that. It was about more policy issues, a district or regulatory issues, I'm not sure what to call them. So I'd love to hear you square that up, but before you do, I just want to say, just seeing, for example, the post office with trees, I was trying to imagine what a change to that space that would be and having restaurants up top, not just the basement, but maybe being able to bring some of that upstairs, you know, with additional feud items. I thought that would make an enormous difference. I mean, they're already a commercial operation in comparison to us at City Hall. And to be able to have that kind of resource, I mean, that would be a huge draw, just right there.
Yep.
And then seeing the boats, you had kayaks there, you had the egress or, you know, access to the boating. Once upon a time, I did see people walking around downtown with inner tubes. I don't anymore because the shop that supported that, which was on the corner of Arlington and First, it went away. And it went away. You know, there was no more sort of tubes downtown and sort of activity. There's the kayak park, of course, but there wasn't something to support those activities, you know? Not everybody has everything. I don't have a tube, but I would have liked to rent one.
I also thought at the last meeting, we heard that there was a reason that, that staff had implemented something on the tubes so they were no longer allowing them.
I didn't hear that.
Okay.
But okay. But anyway, but then getting back to your last point, I wasn't sure how, what you're recommending as next steps flows from what you're saying are the priorities.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So the priorities of safety and things like, you know, we're taking first steps on, on things like trash receptacles and lighting and that sort of thing, right? The next step for those types of improvements requires funding and long-term management of the stuff that does get in there. And some of the safety issues is just trail management, maintenance, those types of things. So the Special Parks District speaks to that. That starts to look at these not through a one-to-two-year kind of lens, but long-term, how do you create something that's self-sustaining? So then projects like bank revegetation that's going on that One Truckee's leading over in Broadhead are not kind of piece, like piecemeal based on chunks of money that are available, you know, at a time, but something that can actually be built into a long-range kind of financial planning.
Gotcha.
And so that's where the, the district comes in. So really, the district supports and creates this funding mechanism and operation mechanism. In a discussion we were having as well about creating an entity that kind of oversees that and having kind of one as opposed to, you know, 46, this creates kind of that single point of contact as a, as a board of commissioners and as a, and as a district that can then answer those questions and prioritize those funds. So that's, that's that piece of it. And then that's where that kind of explanation of a lot of the sustainability, the ecological items really filtered in and created the foundation of the overlay district from a zoning and planning perspective. Things like setbacks from the river corridor, dedication of public access easements, you know, requirements for stormwater management within, you know, any redevelopment property. The reason of moving that overlay district plan forward is to actually create a safer and more ecological-friendly environment along the river corridor. And I would say from like a lighting standpoint, a safety standpoint, having the benches, trash receptacles, lighting as part of what gets designed and implemented along, you know, swaths of potential redevelopment. Yeah, so that's why those two rose to the top.
Okay, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, the presentation and the work that DIG has done has been outstanding.
Thank you.
I think it's a rather Herculean task that you've engaged in because the river touches on so many things. And I don't mean the physical nature of it, but you're talking about, you know, police and fire response along the river. You're talking about the ecological concerns of being along a river, the connectivity, just a lot of different things going on there. And I think that, you know, perhaps I'm less interested in the beautiful picture. I mean, those beautiful pictures are lovely and they speak to how we generate enthusiasm or excitement around a thing. I suppose my question is more a broad-based question about how DIG, in its experience and working in other communities, because I assume that you have done other kinds of broad vision planning, sees us as being able to implement elements of it over any given period of time. Like what I take from the presentation and what I think that you provided is a very well-researched and highly publicly-processed way for us to have a 10-year vision for the river, or maybe it's a 20-year vision, quite frankly. The challenge for us is going to be how to carry it out because again, although the onesies and twosies are interesting to me, I want to 20 years from now be able to look back on the thing that DIG created and say that was the roadmap or guide for how we got there. Now, we have a lot more things to do at this dais to make that happen, so maybe you could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I can speak to that. And Brian, if there's anything else you'd want to add to it, but I think that's where the detailed, the nuts and bolts implementation plan on the backend comes in, where it does talk about timeframes, responsible parties as well. So who are the collaborators? I mean, is this something that you could work with RTC on and get some transportation funding? Is it something that, again, is eligible or a good opportunity for grant funding? Again, bring it up. That's why one of the biggest recommendations before all the little things is this big idea of a district that can consolidate funds and actually move this thing forward. I think that the state is now, you know, because they have passed that ability to do that, yeah, I mean, I think you're perfectly set up to create something where you can implement the 20-year vision. I think there's some immediate action items. Brian can speak to the redevelopment agency and potential impact that that has in terms of moving some things forward. But I think what this, this plan hopefully provides the city is that, you know, there were a lot of separate plans, all with different recommendations. And I think we understood, you know, by Councilwoman, you know, mentioning, again, last October, like, hey, you don't have to, you just need to consolidate and provide clarity. And I hope that this plan, along with kind of the enthusiasm images, like you said, consolidates those and provides clarity and priority so then the city can continue to move it forward.
I suppose the challenge then is not just that we have produced another document to sit on the shelf and collect dust, as many plans have come and gone over the years. The challenge is what we can do to implement the ideas on any critical path. So while the broad-based examination, I think, is very attractive and again, has pretty pictures, I'm more interested in the minute mechanics of how we get there. And I think that your plan has given us those. And ultimately, I suppose the part of my question, I'm not sure has yet been answered, is your experience with other communities in taking the work that you do and then seeing it come to pass? And what you've learned from that that you might share with us so that we can make those choices?
It's a good question. We work with the City of Surprise in Arizona on a Parks and Rec master plan. It was really fun and because we had printed that backend spreadsheet, I think 96 by 48, and pinned it up in their, their office. So every day they walk by it and they could kind of see progress, right? And every time we went and visited the city, we could see what had a checkmark, a checkmark box behind it. You know, ultimately, it takes folks internally to the city to spearhead certain efforts. I think that the one thing that this plan has that other planning efforts have not had, that is a very big positive, is initial funding. I think the, the ability to use even something as simple as trash cans, and they're, they're going to be awesome. You know, even something as simple as that and being able to fund that right away brings it out of this, this kind of lens of, hey, this is a plan, it's just going to sit on the shelf. This is a plan and hey, one thing has already been started and done and implemented. And another thing has already been started and implemented and we're looking at, you know, activation of certain areas and, you know, around the plan. And hopefully the community will see that and the city will see that, hey, things are actually starting to happen. And then it's all about kind of building momentum. Where we've seen plans really successful is when some, when there's a particular, you know, individual or group within the city that really kind of spearheads it and continues to put it at the top of the conversation and move it forward like the City of Surprise example.
All right. Councilwoman Taylor, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Councilwoman Reese was saying. First of all, I'm super excited about the plan. Great work, fantastic. You guys are experts in what you do, so really, really happy with that. And I just want to emphasize that now we have a plan and now we're going to start doing stuff.
Yes.
We're not going to go plan anymore.
Yeah.
We're going to do stuff. And we've already allocated $3 million, right? $3 million in ARPA funds for this plan, which I think you might have said was part of our jumpstarting, right?
Yes.
So my question is, when we say in the next steps, we are going to develop a funding plan to complete high priorities, is that something that you are tasked with or is that something that has not been funded yet that we need to prioritize? And I think we might have started talking about this, we were talking about flat fields with a park district or whatever. So Brian, if you could talk a little bit about, what is our funding plan?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager. So fortunately, we've done a lot of planning the last two years and I think if it touches the redevelopment areas, we have 19 years left in our redevelopment area one downtown and 11 years left in RDA two, which extends pretty much all the way going east to the Grand Sierra and quite a ways west. What we will do, there are no phases in this plan, it's just recommended items with, with priority ranks. What we're going to do is we're going to take elements of the PROS plan, the ART plan, the Tracker Vision Plan, the placemaking study, and create our own redevelopment area capital improvement plan. That'll be ranked, they'll be slotted based on what needs to come first. And every year, we will tackle portions of that as funding becomes available so that we do achieve this long-term vision over time.
So are there other things that we can do to help fund this? Because I've, 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 one of the newest members, but I've seen we will fund it as money becomes available is not the best strategy for funding.
I agree. I think one thing to note about the redevelopment agency is it can, it can build capital improvement projects. However, maintenance is a bigger challenge. And so we can build these things, the question is how do, how do we maintain them and sort of support them long-term so they live for other, forever, they're well-maintained? And that is where the Parks District really comes in, is that the redevelopment area can pay for a lot of these improvements, the Parks District could come in and support the maintenance, and the, you know, the River Rangers and the long-term support to keep these things vibrant.
So we don't have a Parks District now, but that's something we could look at in the future for dedicated funding for these efforts.
That is why it's the highest priority item.
Perfect. Let's do it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, Councilman Martinez, I don't know if you're on or if Councilwoman Brekis is, I guess, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Sheevy, we do have Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Brekis has not yet returned.
Okay, Councilman Martinez, go ahead.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Dixie, for providing us with the overview. I just want to thank you all for the amount of public outreach that was done through social media, the ways that folks could interact through this process and being able to use the map and pinpoint certain areas and make comments in specific ways. Speaking specifically about the areas east of the river, which are the areas that I represent, I like what you said about creating more connectivity and fluidity in those areas and access to the river. So if we could prioritize looking at ways to increase that, given your recommendations, that's kind of where I'm headed. And I just want to appreciate Mr. McCardle as well for all your work in leading these efforts. So thanks again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Coming back around, hold on, I just want to ask you one thing. One of the things that I think we get really spread thin here where a lot of people are wearing many hats, let me ask you, based on your experience with other cities that you've, you work with, I am of the mindset of having someone because it's such a large body of water and it's also complicated, complex because we have other stakeholders from county, cities, tribes, jurisdictions, RTC, flood management, there's a lot of stakeholders at play here. And it, and whether it's from raising money, applying for grants, infrastructure, working on agreements with our other stakeholders, it's a full-time job. So I would like to see, and what is your recommendation, to have someone dedicated for a full-time regional river district manager?
So, yeah, you hit the word.
Explain a little bit about that because maybe you think that that's not needed, but I kind of feel like one of the reasons why this poor river has had not, has not had the love and dedication that it truly deserves is that it hasn't also been sort of the, you know, a separate dedication of someone's love, time and attention when we say, go do this.
Yep.
Because I, I, no, I should, I hate it when I say I, but we have all been sort of chomping at the bit for years wanting to get this river more time and attention. So that's why we appreciate you so much. But talk about that.
Yeah, and, and again, it's, it's difficult for, you know, that one person to, like you said, there's Tumwata, Turf Rock, One Truckee River, Parks District.
And the community, biggest stakeholders, yeah.
You know, there's, you know, probably 30-plus agencies that oversee some aspect of the river. I hate to keep talking about it, but that's where the Special Parks District. And in our recommendations, we had recommended a corridor-specific district. I know there's a lot of discussion if it's something that's bigger and regional.
Sure.
But the reason being is within kind of edge-to-edge of what you consider the corridor, there are a lot of different, you know, agencies from, you know, RTC to the Tahoe Pyramid Trail to Parks, et cetera. And so I wouldn't say that it would be one person, but I think that's what the accountability then comes from, creating a board of commissioners that represents those folks of the Parks District. And like I was getting at with, with Iris and the grant opportunity, is that not only is a Parks District just an entity that, you know, you all of a sudden have, can create a tax base and provide ongoing funds for maintenance, which is something that often gets forgotten, right? But it also allows the ability to have a full-time grant writer. It has the ability to fundraise, seek private partner, public partnerships for things. We're seeing that in a lot of communities where we're seeing major investments in public infrastructure coming from philanthropic donations, sponsorships, you know, that, that all can be kind of, you know, worked through the lens of a district as well. So.
Which I don't disagree. I'm just saying, would you recommend, because this is just what I'm thinking, is that we have some, a river director who is man, so who is helping assist with those board members? I totally think that we should. But don't you think that that?
It could be the person that is involved in getting that district established and then getting those board of, would be board of commissioners at that point, established and on the same page. And I think then if you had that entity, then that becomes kind of the go-to. So to your, I know we've had discussions.
You need a liaison between the board and the city. So that's my point. Like, we've never had one person dedicated. We tend to, like I said, we tend to spread everyone thin. We, we laid off a lot of people in what, 2000?
2008.
Yeah.
2008.
2012.
Right, and we never brought them back, and so I see that's one of the issues that we're constantly facing here. So I just wanted to, for your recommendation, being the river expert...
The point of a liaison, that may just be, I would see a lot of these different agencies all represented there, so you have a Reno, City of Reno representative that then becomes that liaison back to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman Ebert, do you have any more?
No.
Okay, Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, just real quick. I wanted to say earlier, we were talking about plans, and I more than almost anybody gets so frustrated with plans.
Yes.
However, you know, I wrote the state water plan, the state environmental plan, and we have the Trucky River Plan as part of the flood project. But the difference with that plan is that we've spent well over, probably close to $200 million based on that plan. That was a directive for action.
Mm-hmm.
And we adopted something called the Trucky River Action Projects to implement the plan. And so it was one of the first plans that I've experienced with that, actually, you know, you had real work on the ground tied to this plan.
Yep.
And everything we did tied right back to this plan, and we have pictures of the entire length of the river, you've seen it. So I think that sort of stands differently than some of the plans. I mean, it was a plan for action.
Yeah.
More than just talking about the river. Number two, I think this is a very cool idea to have a coordinated river action process. I don't know what that looks like. Is it electeds? Is it the heads of each of these boards that touch the river? I don't know what it looks like, but it probably could help us quite a bit.
Yep.
You know, to centralize activities and money.
Yep.
Towards this goal. One thing about the flood project is that its mission was written very broadly, it includes recreation, water quality, as well as flooding, you know, and a number of things that touch the river.
Yep.
It did not include economic development, that was not one of the missions or goals, and it's not authorized in the statutory language. It did not touch, it touches on safety, but not specifically about boating safety, or, you know, camp, unauthorized campers, or something like that. So it's a good model to start with, it doesn't go far enough for what we want to do. So thank you. Anyway, I'm glad that you've identified and highlighted that.
Good.
Okay, Councilman Reese.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Taylor, Councilwoman Taylor. Councilman Martinez. All right. Seeing that there are none, I believe we have to just accept and take a motion. Anyway, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
How's it been?
Really awesome.
How's it?
To be honest with you, yeah, no, I love the city. I mean, we started coming here a couple of years ago, and now I feel like I'm here every couple of weeks and...
You're one of our residents.
Literally, if there's a consistent...
You're one of our residents.
From, you know, on the other side of the fact that there's been a lot of plans and a lot of people and a lot of, you know, communication, everybody that you talk to is extremely passionate about the river, and that showed through with all the stakeholder and the feedback that we got. So it's been really, really fun.
Okay, well, thank you so much, because it's been a long time coming, and I even noticed in those pictures, I was like, oh, yes, let's go, let's go today. But what I also noticed, because I think, you know, as we evolve and time changes, we have a different idea, but that's because also materials and landscape change as well. I noticed that dramatically, that we didn't probably have a lot of those eco-friendly products and infrastructure opportunities that we had whenever they originally put a lot of this infrastructure in, because I think we look at it and go, why did they do that? And it doesn't get utilized, and we have so much opportunity. Unfortunately, it's going to take a lot of money, and that's where I think, you know, putting those districts in place is going to be really essential. Unfortunately, this is a major Massa Plan, right?
Yep.
That's not going to happen overnight, or even while I'm sitting here, but I'm glad that we're in agreement to move forward.
I do want to add just one quick little bit of information to Councilman Reese, your question, and I do think something different that we've done in this planning effort that was kind of strategic with the fact that we knew that we had funds to move things forward, is create very pragmatic recommendations. And so sometimes you get these vision plans and everything, as at a 30,000-foot level, and you're like, how the heck do you even start this? And so what you'll see through this plan is there are ranges of things that might cost $15 million, and there are ranges of things that cost $10,000 for you to go out and do. So I think that will help kind of build that momentum and always give, you know, always be allowing you to check out the next box.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd be privileged to make a motion to adopt this plan. All right, well, I'd like to make a motion on item D3 to adopt the Trucky River Vision Plan as prepared by Dick Studio.
Okay, thank you so much.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Doerr, a second from Councilwoman Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving right along. Madam Clerk, I believe we're going to go to item D4, correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
And I hear that you guys have been here since 9:30 this morning. I am so sorry. So come on up. Great to see you.
Thank you.
So before we start, Mr. Kachal.
Yes, ma'am.
What are we doing on our celebration for the firefighters?
We're looking at October 26th. We're talking to, I'm not, I'm talking through Jesse Corletto.
Okay.
So he's been reaching out to the fire departments and also Jeremy Renner, so we're going to do something, October 26th is the plan.
At Sky Tavern.
At Sky Tavern.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, keep us informed and let us know how we can support.
No, I'd love to have you all participate, because that was a miracle.
Wasn't it?
I mean, it came within 200 yards of Sky Tavern and right up to Matt Rose, so the fact that both organizations are still standing is really a miracle. So I'm looking forward to a big celebration.
And Pat called me, he goes, we got to have a big party for these guys, I just loved it. So thank you, they're going to be super happy.
Yeah, no, they deserve it, they totally deserve it. So, yeah, we're looking forward, but I'll keep you posted.
I love it. Okay, tell us what's going on, you have so much exciting stuff happening.
So you guys, the 2023-24 report is all in your packets and stuff.
Loved it.
And so we're just going to do a short presentation, then answer any questions. I don't want to take a bunch of your time, you guys have had plenty of stuff to deal with. If we go to the first slide, oh, here, you're in charge of the slides. So we can talk about new leadership, we obviously already came here, we talked to, we introduced ourselves, Pat Kachal, the CEO of Sky Tavern, and Chris, better known as Tof. We have plenty of Christopher's on the Hill, so we shortened his name to Tof. And so he comes to us. But I think before we go on to the new leadership and the rest of the presentation, I just want to recognize who's kept this program going for the last 23 years. And it's a miracle that they've been able to pull it off with the budget and the, I don't want to say lack of interest from the community in the program, but there has been a lack of interest in the community. And the fact that Bill Henderson, his wife Terry, Lithia, who's sitting with us today, and their son Colin, and then an army of volunteers have actually kept this program alive. And it's an amazing program. Sky Tavern is a tremendous asset to our community, and if it weren't for the hard work of that family, and also their employees, the short list of employees, and all those volunteers, we probably wouldn't have the junior ski program operating today. So, you know, big, huge round of applause to them for pulling that off. So obviously, Pat Kachal, CEO, Tof, the new COO, who brings huge amounts of, 21 years of experience in the ski industry, also ran a tremendous mountain bike park, which we'll talk about here shortly.
Yeah, I want to say that.
Brings all kinds of amazing stuff to Sky Tavern, so, and we have big plans for Sky Tavern, so. We've been going through everything. We've even dialed down on our mission and vision statement. Our mission is provide outdoor recreation for all. Our purpose is open avenues to all by providing outdoor recreation regardless of one's physical, mental, or financial means. So we plan on living up to those, the mission and the purpose. Our values, we've changed and we've dialed in. Our values support our mission and purpose, family first, family is the background of our organization and guides everything we do. Fun, explore and create new and exciting experiences and opportunities. Climb your mountain is one of our values. Support all striving to overcome their personal mountains through outdoor recreation. Integrity, committed to doing the right thing even when no one is watching. And explore, foster and create environments that allow all to explore the outdoors. In the past year, we had 3,034 junior ski members, we had 23,520 volunteer hours, which is amazing. We had 277.5 inches of snow. We operated the junior ski program 73 operating days. We awarded 315 scholarships, we're awarded to local families and kids in our community. The high school students, 138, that refers to the race teams that now participate at Sky Tavern. They had 22 practice days, and we had eight races on the mountain. Snowmaking in 2023-24, the second season of snowmaking, represented a significant progress over the first year, as it enabled the opening of the Webster Carpet on man-made snow, allowing the race team and high school teams to commence practice in December. The single-fang gun converted half a million gallons of water into five acres of snow, creating a solid base layer for the season's operations. We had 15 snowmaking days, 570,000 gallons of water was used, and 85% of the snowmaking is completed. Sky Tavern recently purchased a 33,800-gallon water tank, which was a significant step forwarding, step forward for snowmaking. However, millions of gallons of water storage are still needed on the mountain. Elevating the Reno-Tahoe Mountain Bike Experience at 8,000 feet, Sky Tavern's approach is as unique as it is trailblazing, a publicly accessible, community-funded mountain bike park designed from the ground up for all riders despite their ability. On average, in this last year, we've had 250 users on the mountain bike park per week, we've had five community events, 29 clinics, five, what is that? The 19th start of the season fundraiser, oh, 519 was the start of the fundraiser season, and 1013, which have invitations for all of you guys to the end-of-the-year fundraiser.
Yeah, summer, basically.
Yes.
Yeah. How is that right, end of season? But no, now I got it.
Well, it's kind of the end of our season mountain bike.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, I got it.
As long as there's not snow on the mountain, you're more than welcome to come down bike. So, what's that? Oh, and then we have a new progression, Skill Zone was built with donated funds. So, and if you don't know what it...
What does that mean?
I'll speak to that for a moment. Basically, we redesigned the whole top portion of the mountain, it used to be this long trail, to, it's like a playground. Now, no matter what level you are, whether you're a beginner or you're in advanced, you can go and practice learning these skills in a controlled environment.
Oh, cool. Okay. Love that.
All right, is that it? I think that's it, that's our short, sweet presentation, so. I don't know if there's any questions.
Well, I just, I have to tell you, this is something that we need to invest in, be more mindful of, kind of like our river, it's so special. As a matter of fact, I've been looking up, I can't find it anywhere, I don't think there is a city, is there? Maybe there's one right here, no, I don't think so. I think we are the only city in the country that actually owns a ski mountain.
He would know.
Would you know?
There are a couple others.
I'm looking up here, I can't find anything online.
There are a couple others, but none that do it the way you do it.
Okay.
They kind of keep it in-house more. Where it's a lease to a nonprofit, that's very different.
Yeah. So I would also say, I want to put this on the radar of everyone, and I would assume maybe you would know, Ashley, because you're very smart about this, would this be something that we could also include in the Parks District?
I think, Ashley Attorney, Assistant City Manager for the record, I, Madam Mayor, I think that's an interesting path. There might be an opportunity to do that if council designates Sky Tavern as a park, then I believe that that would be something that you could roll into your Parks District. We'll have to have legal confirm.
So it's not dedicated as a park? I thought it was.
If we do a county option?
So that's, thank you, so Nathan really, I was clarifying. This would, as we know, this is an interesting space, because while the City of Reno owns this, it is actually in the county at this point. So if the city were to move forward with a Parks District that did not include the county, then we would not be able to include Sky Tavern in that. However, if this were a regional effort and Washoe County Parks were included in a Parks District, then yes, you'd be able to do that.
Okay.
So there is a path to yes.
So that, I think, is really important when that starts to, because we're going to start talking about that pretty regularly.
Okay.
But it is phenomenal. I was there last year, I got to tell, anyone, if you have not been up there, and I don't think, is there a cost to just going up to the top, riding the chairlift?
No, especially for you guys.
Well, no, but...
But, no, if the chairlifts are spinning, then you're more than welcome to jump on.
I mean, I was born and raised here, I had no idea that that view was so spectacular, it's like heaven, it's breathtaking. I don't think we realize...
The whole park's amazing.
It's incredible, it's incredible. So I'm going to drag people up there like I did last year, so I'm going to drag even more up there. It's going to be just like our river, one of the most, it needs to be.
Absolutely.
So...
And we have an event coming on October 13th, and I highly encourage everybody to come.
Okay, talk a little bit about that.
Even just come up and check it out, it's, want to talk about it, just the...
Yeah, it'll be our end-of-season mountain biking event and our first big kind of fundraising push for the winter season. Lots of vendors, bike demos, things like that, as well as we'll be running some shuttle options for people to ride their bike down the new trails. We'll be announcing our newest trail that we completed, as well as, you know, really building the hype around the Progression Skills Park. We took a lot of time developing that. I've been at bike parks in a lot of places, at a lot of very big resorts, and we put a lot of effort into making sure we did it right.
Yeah. I think you've done it. So I have a friend who is very famous in the industry, and he said, Hillary, you have one of the best mountain biking paths there that I've ever seen, and so that's where I want you to come into the RSCVA and ask them for funding to get that chairlift going so we can generate revenue, and getting shuttles up there and making it a destination.
Absolutely.
Because I think the summer can also help carry a lot of the winter. But I'm excited to see what you're going to do there, Pat.
It's going to be fun, it's going to be amazing. Our goal is really to turn it on, so, you know, it's been the junior ski program, which we always want to honor and respect that and hold that dear and close to our hearts. But it's a community mountain that we need to expand and get more people from the community on the mountain.
Yeah. All right.
But I do want to say thank you to City Council for the sewer hookup, which is taking place right now, which is, I mean, you wouldn't think, but hooking up the sewer is a game changer for us.
Yeah, big deal.
It's been an issue for us for years, Lithia can probably speak to that, but it's been an issue for years, and you guys found the funds and made that happen, so. And we're working with the county to waive the hookup fees.
Hey, good, that's awesome.
Yeah, I just wanted that on the record, so they felt the pressure.
So glad to hear it, and glad you mentioned the junior ski program. We've all been there, done that, and have very, very wonderful memories of the junior ski program.
Absolutely, so, cool, okay.
Those were, you know, back in the high school days, you know, your first kiss on the bus, I remember all that.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right, thanks so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving right along. Where are we at, Madam Clerk?
Item C3, Charlie 3.
Oh, I'm sorry, C1, we're back on C1. Okay. All right. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Was proper notice given, any correspondence received? Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Proper notice was given on this item and no correspondence was received.
All right, and Monica's going to come on up, because you know how much she loves to give presentations.
Well, since I'm here, Monica, for the record.
I think you have really grown into it.
You know, I'm just leaning in.
You're just leaning in, I love it. You're just leaning in. I love it. You can't tell if you're nervous at all in any way, and I think you have really just embraced it.
That's what I do.
I love it.
But I'm only here to introduce Jana because Ms. Litz will be giving the presentation today. And she's going to lean in.
Now I'm going to pawn it on to someone else. All right, perfect. Hi, Jana.
Hi.
How are you?
Great.
Is this your first time in front of us? No, you've been here before.
Few times.
Few times, okay.
Always for the fun stuff.
Yeah. All right, take it away.
Hi, Jana Litz, Housing Manager, for the record. Today, I am going to present to you our annual, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for HUD, which is also known as the CAPER. And I'm looking for your acceptance for us to submit the report to HUD. It is due on Saturday.
Yes, so we need to get that done. I looked over it. I thought it looked great. You guys always do a great job. I'm going to ask any questions. Do any of the council members have any questions?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, give me a motion, please.
I'm moved to accept.
I would like a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye, Brackus.
Okay, all right. Motion carries. Well, there you go. She's like, I stayed up for two weeks getting ready for this presentation, and this is how I get treated. This is how I get treated here. One and done. Good job. Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you.
Charlie 3.
Madam Mayor, I'd recommend we go to item C3 for our next item.
Okay. All right, any public comment on this item? Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, this item was properly noticed and no correspondence was received. Additionally, we have no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I don't have question for Ms. Weisman, so I'm prepared to make a motion if the body would desire that.
Madam Mayor, I would like to just hear from Elaine on just a few points. When you reviewed these, you know, what your process was, if you could share that.
Sure. So.
In that, we have one coming and we have more coming.
In case I need to refer to some of the numbers. Great. So I just wanted to tell you something new that we've implemented, which I think is a great addition to this program. It's an administrative update. So before staff actually presents these application to council for approval, we now require the following. So we require that the project has all applicable building permits. So what we had found with past submittals is that they submit way in advance. And so some of the projects just kind of sit there and they haven't been built yet, yet the money has been spent, right? So that's a new provision. And actually, it's at the final design stage where the construction drawings are submitted to the city of Reno for the building permit. So just to clear that up. And then all applicants must be current with any outstanding loans with the city of Reno or an affiliate, which would be like the Washoe County Home Consortium. So if some of these developers, they have developed other projects and they have loans with us, if they are, have any payments that are outstanding, we hold on to their application for the sewer fee reduction or building permit fee reduction until they come current on all of those things. Additionally, they must be in full compliance with all applicable codes and regulations that we know about and all provisions of their written agreement for the home program. So the home program, and that goes along with the money that we lend them to develop these projects as well. So those are some things that we look at before we bring these before you.
Well, I just have a question on that. Is that okay, Madam Mayor? Yes, please. Okay, I just want to understand, so when you're reviewing these things, and you've been doing it how long, since the spring?
I'd say, yes, late spring is when we instituted these new provisions.
Have you found anybody like that's not current on a loan that owes us money that haven't paid?
Yes.
We have.
Yes, and we have collected.
Oh, excellent.
And they are now current.
Now, one of the ones that I happened to review was where they were collecting rent over and above and allowed 5%. Is that just for home properties or is that everybody in the unit? And then I also saw some of them were requiring or implementing two rent increases in a month, I mean, in a year, and then it looks like some people overpaid. Can you just tell us about that?
Yes, so as part of our new compliance program, so another new, something that's happened within housing and neighborhood development is that we've instituted our own compliance and monitoring program for the home funds. And so we used to contract out with the state Housing Division to do those. And then we found that, you know, they have such high staff turnover and just they weren't getting done appropriately. And so we started our own monitoring and compliance program, started at the end of 2023. It's fully stood up now, and we monitor for compliance eligibility file reviews for our entire portfolio of.
I think you should take credit where credits do, because my understanding is that you found over collections and you actually went back two years and did refunds to tenants. I mean, that's huge. Some of those tenants may have moved out already, but they were overpaying.
Right, so if we found or when we find that a tenant has been overpaying, the rent increase was more than 5% as stipulated in the home agreement. These are for the home units only, or there were multiple raises, rent raises. We require that they go back and credit the tenant's account, so.
Okay, and then things that were out of compliance, like a code issue you're saying?
Things that are out of compliance, we followed the Inspire training, which is a new HUD training that HUD implemented. It's similar to a housing quality standards, but it's now called Inspire. And we have somebody on our staff that's certified, who has been through all of the trainings and has gotten certified. So he goes out and he follows the Inspire's standards. Now, depending on what the infraction is, they have a certain period of time to correct it. So if it's something imminent, you know, life safety thing, then it would be 48 hours. Most things with Inspire are 60 days, 90 days. It just depends. Everything is different.
I don't know what Inspire is exactly, but what I do know is it sounds like you have an internal compliance person now to go out and do inspections.
Yes.
Okay, and then you're making people correct those things.
Correct.
And I just want to say, Madam Mayor, I'm so inspired, I am inspired by what you're doing now so that when you bring projects to us, we know you've gone through these steps. You've had them paid overages back. You've collected money they owe us. I heard one was even 100 grand that we were owed, that we weren't paid. And here we're about to give money, maybe a million dollars to people, and they're actually owing us money. I mean, I'm just glad to hear all of this cleanup, and thank you for your work on this area.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Weisman. My question is on slide seven, and it looks like we had C2 and C3 together. And it's more about the sewer connection fee credits. So effectively, with Stoker and Line Drive, is this showing that we're going to be out of sewer credit money?
That's correct. Everything that the council has allocated. So council allocated between two different times, a total of 11,218,400. If you would have approved both of those today, that would have gotten us to no money remaining.
And is there something else happening at the state level where we're asking for more money? And what is the status of that, if you know?
I, from what I understand, we are looking at supporting a BDR that could possibly generate income to come in to offset some of these funds. Also internally, we are applying for a grant that we became aware of. Actually, we're getting ready to post it for public comment today or tomorrow. So we're applying for a grant to try to get funds to fund this program ongoing.
And then do we know how many projects are waiting or in the pipeline to come forward with us minus these two?
Yes. Right now, we have two in the queue. So in the queue, for that, that means for us that we've received their application. So we have two in the queue, and then we have two that are coming down any minute. They will be in the queue. Like within the next two weeks, they're getting close to submitting building permits. So they'll be waiting as well.
So there's potentially four projects that might not be seen.
Potentially, but two are in the queue right now.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? There are none. May I get a motion? I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks. Good job.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good seeing you too.
You too.
Okay, Madam Clerk, get us back on track, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to move to D8. Is that what you want? Are D items, we have members of the audience here for that?
Madam Mayor, if I could make a recommendation to council, I'd recommend that you open items D7 and D8 together. While these will be separate motions, they are related items.
But we need separate motions, right?
We do need separate motions. I just think that we should take them together. That way, if council has questions regarding all the pieces, they are together.
Which?
Items D7 and D8, these are related to 313 and 315 Record Street.
Okay. All right, here we go. Before you do that, hold on one second. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment for this item?
We do not have any public comment registered and have not received any correspondence.
Okay, I am going to read a disclosure into the record. I believe this is item pertaining to Ulysses Development, correct? All right. Hi, nice to meet you guys. I think we had you on Zoom, but now we're here in person. Good. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Okay, Madam Clerk, for the record, fellow city council members, this item involves Josh Hicks, an attorney from McDonald Carano, who represents Ulysses Development in this matter. In my private life, I have retained Adam Hosmer Henner, a partner at McDonald Carano, to represent me on a civil matter unrelated to this item. The civil matter that we all know pertaining to a GPS tracker found on my car. I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office. As a client of McDonald Carano, I have been advised that I may have a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of McDonald Carano pursuant to NRS 281, or 281 dot A065. For the record, any action that I may take on this item would not be reasonably affected by my client relationship with McDonald Carano. McDonald Carano is a large law firm. This item has nothing to do with my civil case. I have no facts, information, or reason to believe that any action I take today on this item will have any impact on me or McDonald Carano. Given that this is not a clear case where the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by my commitment in a private capacity to the interests of McDonald Carano, abstention is not required. The fact that I am represented by McDonald Carano in an unrelated civil matter will not impact my ability to impartially review, render a decision upon this item. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and put it into the record for this meeting pertaining to this agenda item. Okay? Okay, moving along. Go ahead. Take it away, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brian McCarron, Revitalization Manager. So the two items before us today are the resolution to sell the properties at 315335 Record Street, the properties formerly known as the Community Assistance Center. That is part of NRS, or a resolution does need to be passed. That is in the best interest of the public to sell this property. And then to present the exclusive negotiating agreement with Ulysses Development Group for the disposition of the property for them to build affordable housing on that site. How this aligns with the strategic plan is there is revenue to be gained from the sale of this property. And so it does have a fiscal component, as well as we are selling the property to promote an economic development purpose. That is something under NRS. The building of new housing, especially affordable housing, is an economic development need, and so it does highlight that strategic initiative. To bring us back on how we got here today, on June 4th, staff presented to council the RFPs. Sorry. On June 4th, staff did release an RFP based on council direction to solicit ideas for any potential feasible use of the site. And we entertained all interested and qualified proposers on what they could do with the property. We brought that before council on August 14th, and council, we had four proposals at that meeting. Council directed staff to negotiate with Ulysses Development Group on their proposal and to negotiate an exclusive negotiated agreement and bring it back before this body. So that's why we are here today. Per NRS, we do need to go and get appraisals on this property. How we settle on the fair market value of the site is we get two appraisals, we average the two. And so the fair market value of this property is $3.375 million. And the reason why I bring that today is because the resolution does need to, the resolution does address that it is in the best interest of the public to sell this property and for fair market value. Reminding everyone how we do sell a property, the city has the ability to put it out for public auction. Option two is that the city may sell it in the benefit of the public without first offering it to the public if it is for an economic development or redevelopment purpose after the city has obtained appraisals and after it passes or adopts a resolution finding that is in the best interest to sell the property. Just recalling the proposal that was received at that August 14th meeting was from Ulysses Development Group. Their offer was a $3.4 million seller's note to develop 136 affordable housing units at or below 60% AMI. 2,000 square feet for a potential CSA childcare facility, as well as the Property Management, FPI Management Group. After that meeting, staff went and negotiated based on the terms that council wanted to see in a potential agreement. And so we have negotiated with Ulysses. Some of the deal terms presented here, just to summarize the biggest deal terms, is that the purchase price is now $3.375 million, not the original $3.4. It was Ulysses intent to pay the fair market value of the property, so it has been adjusted $25,000 to reflect that. Council interest was, council's direction was to try to see if we get some earnest money out of the sale, some money upfront so that we weren't waiting the many years till the property is developed and then the payment of the seller's note over 15 years. And so Ulysses has agreed to pay $600,000 at the close of escrow, when this property is closed, as a sort of upfront payment. The closing date for the sale will be December 2025, with the option to extend that an additional year if they are unable to get the funding they need from the Nevada Housing Division or the city of Reno's volume cap. If they do extend that another year, they will do a extension payment of $50,000. This deal term is a seller's note offered by the city that would start at the certificate of occupancy and would be a 2% interest over 15 years. The developer has agreed to put down earnest money, $25,000 at the signing of this exclusive negotiated agreement, and then another $75,000 when the disposition and development agreement is executed. Because there's still some question on what can actually be built on the site, Ulysses had agreed that at a minimum, they were billed 100 affordable housing units on the site. Their intent is to build 136 or more, but depending on the site constraints, that can be completely determined at this time. And so at a very, at a minimum, there will be 100 affordable housing units. Ulysses is requesting that the city of Reno utilize its volume cap, as well as a potential sewer waiver to get this project done. Although that's not committed, it is just a good faith effort that we will allow them to apply for those funds. Once the property is closed, they will have six months to demolition, the existing site, and they have five years to complete construction. And those are primarily the deal terms negotiated today. And the two recommended motions, one is to pass the resolution stating that it is in the best interest of the public to sell this property. If the resolution is not passed today, we'll have to go out and get appraisals again. And so that was, we should have done this possibly last time when we brought this item forward. And so that is wrapping up that portion. And the second item, D8, is to approve the exclusive negotiating agreement with Ulysses. And assuming no material changes to the terms expressed today, allow staff, city manager, and the mayor to execute that final disposition and development agreement. Ulysses is here today. They came in for this, and so they're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. Good job. Okay. I think we all are going to have some questions here. So I will let council go first, and then I'll just ask my question if it doesn't get asked. I'm pretty sure it's going to get asked. But I'm going to start with Councilwoman Brackus. I think, was that you up there?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I am comfortable going with the resolution today. I think, you know, there's urgency on that. The agreement is a little, there's some points that I'd like to raise on those. And I also note some inconsistencies that make it a little clunky to interpret, to my interpretation. But I also want to say that I met on Zoom with Mr. Weiss and Heather also, I think her name was, yesterday. And, you know, I really am high on this group. I think they're good faith. I think they have a track record. I think they will do what they said to do. But I'd like to see a few terms changed a little bit. And I think frankly, they're terms that staff is driving, so maybe staff. So maybe staff can answer those. Is one, the demolition, you know, I think that, why six months demolish? Just like Ms. Weissman was talking a little bit earlier about how they, people came in too early for the sewer credits and they want to see them at building permit. I think the council needs to see this project to a certain point of readiness to make sure, you know, it goes forward and doesn't implode, which I don't think it will. I think that would be external facts, like, you know, long government shutdown and, you know, complete erasure of the subsidy programs, which, you know, is out of control, but certainly federal action. So I would delay the demolishing of the structures until they're in building permit or some other thing, until they've gotten a construction loan, and I did talk about that with them. I'm really curious why staff is driving the six-month demolish, because I don't think that's, I don't think that's prudent. We know those are, those are good structures. Other proposers came in to reuse them. So I think, I think that's important consideration. The other one is, was the 15-year note, which they had in their proposal, but it's at a 2% carrying cost. I think that's too low. I understand staff recommended 2%, but I think staff, you know, that doesn't even make inflation, and I think we should have that up a little bit. There's a lot, there's a couple provisions in there that punt changes to the proposal, to the ENA, to your city manager. I won't be around, but, you know, I think, one, you don't have the same city manager who's been here and watched the intent of the council. You're going to get a new city manager. So, you know, why punt? I think it should be, the touchstone should be the council. There's too much latitude. Not only that, the wording of this to Ulysses was a 4-3 vote. And I think for that reason, you know, to make sure the council is tracking it of one mind, I think it should be coming back to the council any changes. I don't think you should give that latitude to the manager. So my points are the demolishing, the 2% re-timing on that, the 2% cost, to have these go back to the city council. There's actually a very clunky provision to read on when it goes to the city council. If it doesn't, it's open for interpretation. I think that needs to be better written by our attorneys. But, but those are my points. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Councilwoman Martinez. Madam Clerk, is he on?
Yes, can you all hear me?
There you go.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to mention that I also had the opportunity to meet with applicants in Ulysses Group. Yesterday, we discussed a lot of these points that we brought up. I do think that my colleague from Ward 1 brings up some important factors that we need to discuss in these term agreements and making sure that we kind of have the points there, specifically when it comes to some of the deal negotiations, if they were to come up in the future. But as I mentioned to them during my meeting yesterday, I also say that I explained a little bit about my vote in terms of that for them. And they were clear and looking forward to continue to work with them on this project. So that's all I had at this moment, but looking forward to the discussion that we're going to have.
All right. Councilwoman Taylor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'll just comment on the points that I heard. As far as the demolition, I would imagine that it has something to do with the safety and the security of the site. And I would say I would want it to be demolished if that is a concern. That is, I don't see anything wrong with what was in the agreement. I'd like the applicant to understand that we just, the sewer credits may not be available at the time, based on what we heard in our last presentation. And then on the ENA, if those, if the material changes are set within that, I would, I would support letting the city manager move forward as long as the terms on Slide 7 are still the same. But I'm excited about, about this. And I would just say that my, the only reason my vote was against this project is because I didn't like the 15-year entanglement with this project. I wanted it to be a little bit cleaner. But after meeting with the, with the project representatives, I thank you for your investment in, in this corridor, and I'm looking forward to a great project. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For my part, I agree with Ms. Taylor and think that her analysis is spot on. First of all, to Ulysses, it's been an opportunity to get to know you all, and I'm very impressed by the work that you're doing. The work that you're doing just to the north of Reno on the existing project in Sun Valley, Super Cool, and I've looked at your other projects across the country. So welcome to the second project in northern Nevada. Hopefully, it won't be your last. Second, I, like Ms. Taylor, agree that the demolition is an important component of this process, in part because we're spending significant city resources to secure the property, also because I don't want to see this be a five-year build. I would like it to be a much quicker build than that. And so if you get into the ground and get moving, I think it begets additional opportunity to keep rolling. I also think it's important for that neighborhood to really realize the revitalization component of the work that we do. And so as you all get into the property and hopefully get moving on it and complete the demolition, I think other neighbors may choose to figure out what they want to do with their properties that are adjacent. So there is something to be said about a quicker demolition, because I think it means that we're off to the races and going. Like Ms. Taylor, I have no concern over the manager's involvement in the exclusive negotiating agreement. I think that's how they're generally done. Sometimes government doesn't do a very good job of getting out of its own way. And so with the oversight that we maintain over the city manager's office, we'll be fine there. As to the question about, well, I'll say maybe in a different way. Thank you for proposing to purchase the property at the fair market value for it. I think that's an important component of the deal, too. You know, this group, of course, could have come in and proposed to buy it for $600,000 or for $0, as perhaps other groups have come along and said, because I think that we are in a partnership to develop this project. You have shown your commitment to that important process by agreeing to pay for it at this rate. The $600,000, just, I think, is an assurance that you're in it to win it, have some skin in the game, but long-term will be paid fair market value for the property. As a result, therefore, I find no fault with the question about what the interest is at the note that would be carried. It has to be low, because the whole point is these projects are very complicated and the type of financing that happens with them. Really, every dollar and every interest rate matters to the project. And so no issues there. I do think the only area where I am primarily concerned is the five-year timeline. I just don't want it to be that long. And, and outside of external factors that none of us can control, you know, the collapse of the economy or something like that, we've got to get moving, because that corridor has a lot of work to do. So those are my thoughts, and I'm interested to hear my colleagues' thoughts as well.
Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited about the project. I think I made the motion last time because I felt so passionately that we needed ever more affordable housing in all the places, right? I did also have an opportunity to meet with applicant and went over all of the deal points. I thought they really strengthened their deal by agreeing to put the $600,000 done, because that put them on par with other offers we had that were only going to pay $600,000. So the fact that they are willing to pay market rate, the fact that they're working with us, they will be paying interest. I didn't get into the interest terms, whether that should be 2% or 3%, but as I understand, by law, you have to charge some interest. To have a legal loan, even family, even family members have to pay interest to each other. So I'm glad it's low. I don't have an opinion on what it should be. The, I do believe we do need to do rather quick demo, because the longer buildings stand, the more they are hazards. Some of you may recall that I, at the flood project, bought $50 million of land and property. And ultimately, those properties, too, were broken into over time and became liabilities. And we either had to repair the roof or demo the property. And so we did demo the property, so to reduce the liability on the land. And I think that that makes sense. So at first, I had some concerns when we were here last time about us carrying the loan. But after I went through it in detail with them about what our risks are, what I think is that we've put ourselves equal to the other project. We're getting as much money right up front. That's really important to me, and the rest to me is gravy, but it sets a good precedent. They're going to pay market rate. And I love their intention on what, I didn't hear details about the types of affordable, but in my talk with them, I heard between 30% and 80% AMI. I heard a range, and I like that, too. I don't know if that's a final plan, but I think it is good to have a range. We've talked about this at the dais. It is good to not just have all 30% or all 80%. I think it is good to have a range. There was one more point I wanted to make, and that was about, wasn't going to comment on the five years. It was about the affordable, ah, I just encourage you to get a good management company. You know, I don't know if you were here earlier, but, and I'm not saying who, but I just, you're only as good as your weakest link, right? And if you have an owner, a builder, an owner, a management company, you're a team. And you're going to be judged, including this project, on how well your overall team does. And so I just encourage you to vet various groups and pick the one that you think is going to perform the best. There are going to be challenges in this site, security, monitoring. You're near tracks, you're near activity with alcohol, right? There's a lot of bars on Fourth Street. So you're just going to need to manage the property well so it remains a beacon to our community and it inspires further investment in this corridor. So thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Ebert.
Most of what I had to say has already been said, but I just want to agree with Councilmember Doer about, you know, making sure that you have a good partner for property management. That's so important, especially in these affordable housing developments, projects, because these are the people that, that really need a safe place to be and feel safe and secure, and sometimes don't feel like, you know, that, they're just kind of get victimized sometimes. I'll just say that. Anyhow, I just wanted to thank you guys again for, for your proposals and for this project, and I look forward to seeing it completed.
Okay, good. Quick question, maybe I didn't hear this, but the five-year, you know, one of the things, obviously, this crisis is very, current, yeah, very here and now. And so we always talk about how quickly we can get a shovel into the ground. Five years seems like a long time. Can we talk a little bit about why so long? I mean, obviously, the demo and all that, but five years, what's going on?
We don't, as a city, have a precedent set for, for any timeline. I believe other development projects, we've given them five years. One, the Riverside Development, we said that if they have not broken ground in two and a half years, they have to come back before this body to explain any delays that they're seeing that are caused by, not caused by any outside forces. I would say, Ulysses would probably reinforce this, is that once they have put the money down at the close of escrow, and once they had, have expended the money to demolition the property, it would be in their best interest to keep going. They don't want to have that money held in that spot without any movement. So I would say that it's in their best interest, and they want to see the project developed as fast as possible. But the five years is, is the timeline, where if they don't develop in five years, we would claw back the property and find another future for it.
Okay, and I do think Councilwoman Breckis brought up some good, some good things. I mean, it all sounds great in theory, but we've sat here long, and I, I'm sorry that you guys sort of get saddled with this, but we have had a lot of people come before us and tell us one thing and then do something completely different. So I don't, I actually think some of the parameters that Councilwoman Breckis wanted to put in place are not a bad idea. Councilwoman Breckis, you want to go over those? Again?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the five-year was such a big deal to me. I, I think maybe, you know, I could be convinced on the 2%, particularly since they matched that with 600 down.
Agreed.
But I, but I really do think that the council should not give the city manager the ability to make open-ended changes. I would lay out, if possible, what those changes are. Ms. Taylor mentioned those that are on, on Slide 7 of the presentation. Maybe that could be brought up. And the demolishing was a concern to me. I mean, maybe an agreement is, because I think the demolishing, they have to apply for permit then, but then within six months of escrow. You know, I don't know. I really don't like that at all in case the deal closes. And I'll just let you know, you know, Mr. Dane Hilliard on that Stoker one, you know, he's got, he's got an affordable housing project, you know, going, moving dirt. And he's going to have a lot of work to do this winter to maintain that property from the activity that's occurred on it. I think these affordable housing developers, you know, they know how to manage a property with a lot going on, you know, before they go vertical. And so I don't think that's too onerous on them. So I would say, I don't know, what's on Slide 7? Could you bring up Slide 7?
Yep, it is up right now.
So I, probably a good question for Carl or Shipman. I wouldn't mind bringing it back to the council for approval if there are significant changes into the project. What could something like that look like? Is there some sort of?
Yeah, and I'll defer to Jasmine, but I think the, the basic concept is as long as it's within the context of the deal terms that are being presented here today, the, the concept is that it would go straight and be signed by the city manager. If it was outside those terms, whatever the council decides, then that would have to come back for an approval.
Okay, so Jasmine, that would be, I think that would work for all of us, as long as we stay within these parameters. But the minute we go outside, you would have to bring it back to council, correct? So it would significantly, if you're significantly changing the impact of this project, obviously, outside of this, these perimeters, that would constitute coming back to a council, for council approval, correct?
Yes, that's, that is correct. Jasmine made it for the record. Yeah, the, the concept, and obviously, you know, council has a discretion to change this, whether it, whether it comes back or not. But the concept was, as long as we can stay within these deal terms, then the DDA itself wouldn't need to come back to council.
Okay, is, are there any points you want to include, being that you are the legal expert here and we are not? I want to remind you, we are not. So, I mean, I know you've looked at it. Obviously, you feel very comfortable. What would be your recommendation to the council?
I, I'm comfortable with, you know, staff, city manager being able to finalize the agreement. We've done that in the past. So as long as, as we stick to the terms that council wants.
Okay, I'm good. All right, thank you so much. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Doer, and then I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Reese.
Sure. Well, Madam Mayor, I was really glad that both you and Councilwoman Breckis brought that up, because we do leave a lot floating, and I get nervous that terms change. I even heard, I mean, just as an example, I heard we took a motion on an appeal. We gave some direction, and by the time it was written up, it looked a little different. And I'm still pursuing that one. Just, you know, sometimes what we say is hard to implement exactly. And so I would like to see the final thing, like whatever you hammer out, you bring the agreement. Does that add a lot of time? I mean, it would add some time.
It would just require us bringing it back before this body.
I mean, is that what you're looking for, Madam Mayor?
No.
As long as we have the deal, according to these terms.
These are all the deal points.
Yeah.
And if it's anything outside of that, then they would have to come back for our approval.
I like it.
Yeah.
And might I, if, Ulysses is here, if you, if you'd like to invite them up to answer any of the questions or concerns.
I think it would be good for them to come up. We don't really know them.
Right.
We tend to be very partial to our local partners. I know that they're not. And so it would be good to get to know you a little bit. So why don't you come up and, obviously, this is your bailiwick and your space. This is kind of what you, you guys are known for is affordable housing. I guess I'm curious, why Reno and your passion for what you do? He's like, no, you first, no, you first.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Heather LaFerty. I'm with Ulysses Development Group, and it is such a privilege and an honor to be able to have the opportunity to envision this project with all of you. My colleague Ryan and I have been on the ground here this week. We have had the opportunity to meet with many of you. We've had an opportunity to be on Fourth Street and in Record Street and to be in that area. that area and to begin to meet with the neighbors and the property owners there. And it is just a really unique opportunity and one that we are just feeling very excited about being a part of. We understand the need for affordable housing. I've worked in affordable housing for the last 25 years and have just witnessed the increase in need that has happened in cities like Reno across the country. And so to have the opportunity to be a part of the solution with all of you in this property is really very exciting. So, thank you for this opportunity. Ryan can get to any more of the specifics, but I just really wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. We look forward to moving this forward as fast as possible, so we're hearing you on that, and we appreciate working with staff, really want to thank them. It has just been a really wonderful collaborative effort to get to this point that really feels like a win-win, so, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Ryan Watt, Ulysses Development Group, for the record. Just want to say thank you to the council members for meeting with us this week. Your input has been so helpful as we develop our project concepts. In terms of, you know, working with staff, I just wanted to reiterate Heather's point that Brian, Jasmine, the whole staff has been great to work with throughout this process. We really thank them for their time and effort here. In terms of the agreement itself, what was presented today was developed as a collaborative team effort. We believe, you know, the deal works for us as well as it does for the city, and we're comfortable moving forward with it as presented, including, you know, the city manager approval of the final version. So just wanted to reiterate that. Happy to answer any questions that council may have for us.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you so much. Go ahead, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you so much, Ms. LaFerty and Mr. Watt. Let me just make sure I understand there are a couple of deal points that I don't see on here, but I think are part of this. One is a decision to deed restrict the property for 99 years for affordability. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate. To deed restrict the property as affordable housing in perpetuity, so 99 years.
Yeah, see, that's another thing that perhaps should be on this, only inasmuch as, I will just say that my colleague, Ms. Dewar, has been really pushing this issue for her entire time on council, that sometimes what happens is we get an affordable project, it's affordable for 20 years, falls off the affordable matrix, right, at 20 years, and they sell the property, and then we've lost it. And so I want to just highlight that that 99 years would be a deed restriction, so that is certainly part of what I would expect to have included here in the deal points. The other thing is, as we talked this week, and I think it is important also to share with primarily our community, because I think maybe my colleagues know this, but the affordability matrix that was discussed was a range of affordable product, including units as low as 30% affordable. So it's 30, 60, 80, it's the whole range. And I think the reason why that is important to me is it also, A, it inspires in me some confidence in the background that the both of you possess, which I know is a lifetime of a career working in the affordable housing space. You know how desperately it is needed. We also talked about when we met, the importance of units that are accessible to folks with, experiencing disabilities. And so this is something that Madam Mayor has been very, you know, advocate for, and of course, any project built with these kind of funds would require those kinds of units. So I just called these two things out to say, great additional information for our community to understand that the decision we make today will be something that will certainly outlive all of us, 99 years, to lock it in affordable criteria, so, and those rates, the range from 30 to 80 is very important to me. Thank you so much.
I have one. Councilwoman Dewar.
Yeah, and I don't know if this belongs in, I'm so glad you brought that up, because that was very important, having a 99-year term, deed-restricted, affordable housing. Your point about, and it is as short as 15 years, where people are coming back and wanting it to make it market rate, and that's a no-go. But let me ask you about this. We heard earlier today that on home funds, and a lot of our contracts that are through our Housing and Neighborhood Services, they've instituted a 5% cap on rent. I don't know, on rent increases, I don't know if you've run into this before, or have used it before.
Sure, I can take that. Thank you for the question, council member. So we have seen several municipalities or cities set caps on rent increases, and we'd certainly honor any cap that is, you know, put on rent increases at this property. In general, our goal is to not promote turnover or any situation where residents are moving out. We are long-term owners, we want to own the property for hopefully the full 99 years, if not longer. And a key to success for long-term ownership is low turnover, and so a key part of that is making sure that residents are not being displaced by large increases, so.
So I don't know if it comes when you request the volume cap, because that's a process that our Housing and Neighborhood Development is engaged in and would have to advocate for you, just like we discussed writing a letter today. And I would expect, so I don't know if it needs to be a deal point, but I wanted you to have it on your radar, that they've been doing that for now several years, when they're involved with anything, whether it's tax deferrals, whatever it is, they're looking at 5% rent cap, so just to let you know. The other thing is that I keep running into, and I don't know if our building code's been amended yet, when we have multi-story apartments that are for affordable or for seniors, and I don't know if this is going to be a senior product or anybody, but it's often good to build in a generator or separate electrical line for the elevator, because what happens then is that when that goes out, it gets very hard for the tenants to live, and this is not out of your control. This is a power failure, could be a lightning strike, could be a fire, could be anything. You know, is there an alternate way to move within the building, especially for older people? So I don't know if you're comfortable putting that in a deal point, but it's, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up with you earlier, but it has been a recurring issue in Reno. We have not thousands of power outages. I mean, it's not like a state like Florida where it's, the power's going out all the time. But when they do occur, which is in big snowstorms, for example, they are very affecting to these kind of housing. Do you have an opinion about that?
So, thank you for the question, council member. So our intent is to deliver the best possible living experience for our residents, and of course, to comply with any building codes or regulations. At this point, we have not fully designed the project, and so we'd be interested in looking at that.
Yeah.
But before I respond directly, I'd want to fully understand the implication of the design and the cost.
Absolutely. Well, I just asked, I don't require it as a deal term, but I do ask that when you are designing it, you plan for that. Many of the housing that we have do incorporate that feature.
Yeah. And I just want to say how much we appreciate that you all are so focused on ensuring your constituents, the residents here, have a place that they can call home, live in dignity. And so that is something that we will continue to want to learn from you about some of those local factors, so, thank you. Our headquarters is based in Denver, Colorado. We are currently working in several states in kind of the Mountain West as we're growing and continuing to find ways to serve communities where affordable housing is so much in need. As Ryan said, we are solely an affordable housing, workforce housing developer, and so that is our focus. Our developer team is highly qualified in knowing how to be creative, to make sure that these projects work for communities, residents, as well as long-term partners.
That's why I felt that it was important to support what you brought forward, because this is your space, that's all you do, and 100% dedicated to affordable housing, and so it's not your first rodeo, but I also think, you know, we can't walk the walk and talk the talk if we're saying we need affordable, we need affordable, and then in, I guess, in an area where it is known for services, that it's important that that project happens. And so, I was just curious, and so obviously Denver, you're probably seeing some similarities. We're not obviously as big as Denver, but probably other smaller little cities like Colorado Springs, those around that area, very similar to Reno. So, little like home for you guys.
It's true, and that's why I've mentioned to many of you, I'm just so appreciative that you all are focused on affordable housing now and understand that long-term, that long-term need. So we're excited to work with all of you, because you clearly have a vision and a commitment to your community.
All right, thanks so much. Okay, give me a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As to item D7, I'll move to adopt the resolution and find it is in the best interest of the public to do so.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese. A second from Councilwoman Dewar. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, on item D8.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, this is Jasmine made it for the record.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I just wanted, on the, on the ENA itself, there, apparently the version that got uploaded had a confidentiality provision that we had taken out, and so I want to make sure that that is on the record, that we're taking that out.
Okay, good.
And then there was a provision in here that we had, about whether the DDA would come back. And initially, it had required it, and we had made it contingent on it being in conformance with the deal terms that you saw. So I just want to make sure that that language gets incorporated as well, because apparently it didn't, when it was uploaded, it didn't pull that additional revision in, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
With regard to item D8, I move to approve the ENA and UAL, or with UAL, and based on the summary of terms and conditions as additionally identified by Ms. Metta, to authorize the city manager to finalize a DDA and for the city manager and mayor to execute all documents to complete the disposition of the property.
All right. I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese, a second from Councilwoman Dewar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, good job, everyone. Thank you. All right, thanks so much. Okay, Madam Clerk, where are we at?
Madam Mayor, if we'd like to go back to item D1.
Yes, we would.
Madam Clerk, can I just make sure I understand, we are returning to item D1, that's the next item in order?
I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Item D1, so this is Supplemental Supporting Materials Resolution to designate all City of Reno-owned and/or controlled property located adjacent to the Truckee River between Booth Street and South Virginia Street as a City of Reno Park pursuant to RMC 828 dot 23 dot 010.
Easy for you to say.
Okay, Nathan, go ahead.
Hi, Nathan Elliott, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. I'm excited to bring this item forward as a result of a plan you just approved as a recommendation and as a plan that we approved last year for our Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan. So there we have our alignment with the strategic plan. Pretty apparent, the arts, parks and historical resources pieces in there, our infrastructure, environmental sustainability, keeping our river clean and consistently maintained is a good thing. There's a public safety benefit for the consistency of regulation along the river path. There's some inconsistency right now, and this would help correct that. And a strong river means a strong economy, we believe, for the downtown.
Cool.
So what we're trying to do here today is to, as the title would state, turn the property between South Virginia Street and then heading west to Booth Street on the north side of the river, and on the south side from South Virginia into Island Drive and into Barbara Bennett Park, into a dedicated park space, and make a resolution to make that a park space, and it would be kind of the start of our Park River Corridor. This was one of the number-one strategies for the PROS Plan, to improve our downtown public spaces and designate that space as a linear park. There's a couple of different maps. One of them is a little bit harder to read, so we wanted to put this in a little better contrast for you, but those kind of reddened areas are the areas we're talking about that would ultimately be a part of this larger downtown River Corridor Park. The spaces I want to call your attention to, just south of that 395 marker, or sorry, just west of the 395 marker on both sides of the river, currently they're city rightaways. We have control of those spaces, but they aren't designated as parks currently, but I think most people, as they go through them, think of, hey, I'm on the Riverwalk, I'm in a park, and then they go in and out of park spaces along the river as well. So the other large portion is that kind of southwestern flow from Bicentennial Park along Riverside Drive that is not currently designated a park either, and this would bring that into the fold. And then finally, the other piece just south, in between Booth Street and Keystone on the south side of the river, there is a strip by the Riverside Apartments that we would include in this, in this resolution. This is a much more difficult to read, but it breaks up some of the spaces a little better with titles. Those are in your packets, it'll probably be easier to read on the packet, maybe not, honestly, but, yeah. So some key considerations, the regulations changing along the path from park to non-park or park to sidewalk, park to rightaway. It's confusing for residents and visitors, is I think there's a presumption that the regulations are consistent throughout, so you can ride your bike for a little while, then you have to get off technically. So this just kind of clarifies that our river path is consistently able to be used in the same way as a park would normally be, so. It would also help line up our maintenance responsibilities. There's pieces of the park that are maintained through different departments, through different organizations, and this would clearly place that under the parks, parks maintenance responsibility. I already kind of mentioned the vehicles, that's another consideration. One interesting thing is that our park regulations prohibit blocking paths, but on sidewalks, you can block a path as long as there's 30 inches of clearance, which I know has been a frustration point about consistency and enforcement, and again, and understanding. So this would incorporate those spaces into a park path, which would let us be consistent once again with our, with our community. And this also helps the efficacy of the River Ranger position by having those boundaries and those included in the parks allows them to move straight to park regulations rather than doing notices on non-posted items in the rightaway. So with that, I will open up for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Good job. All right, questions? Councilwoman Dewar, three minutes.
Could you put your map back up?
Sure.
What I was confused about is, not that one, but the red, as you said. The areas that are not parked today, but they're city-owned land, can you point those out again?
Sure. Let's see, where's my cursor? This will move a little bit better. Okay. So the substantive pieces here are the, along Riverside Drive going up to Bicentennial. So until it hits Bicentennial, that's all rightaway controlled by the city, but it's not.
So where's Bicentennial?
Bicentennial's this little triangle piece here off of First Street.
Yes.
You see that?
Yes.
Okay, and so basically, coming down here along Riverside, this would be an incorporated portion. This is a city-owned parcel next to the apartments that is owned by the city but is not designated as a park, so we would designate that.
This is the walking area along Riverside that goes from, like you said, Bicentennial, it goes past the Lear Theater.
Yes.
Goes to McKinley.
By McKinley, yes, exactly.
And it ends at Booth?
It ends at Booth.
Okay.
At that point. And then, and then there's just some non-contiguous control on the other side of Booth, so we're going to wait and kind of incorporate that as we go, if this continues to make sense.
And then across the street from Booth, that's in?
This is, yes, this is a small strip that goes and kind of dead-ends into Keystone.
I meant across from Riverside. But, and that's a Booth Street Bridge right there.
Yes, Booth Street right here, and then goes all the way to Keystone. So this piece would be incorporated as a park now, whereas currently it's property that's owned by the city.
That's good.
But not incorporated.
And so there'll be set hours for these areas as well?
So there would be, they would follow park hours, and one of the?
Are those sunrise to sunset, or eight to eight?
Typically, it's a little bit later in the summer, especially if there's lighting, it goes to until 10 o'clock in the summer, so. And as long as people are using this as a thoroughfare and not loitering or hanging out or anything like, there's not going to be an enforcement measure as a part of that. So if someone's riding their bike through at 10:30, we're not going to bird dog them.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other council members? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd love to make a motion. This is something I have advocated for, for a long time. So anyway, we are on D1, I think it is, and the motion would be to designate all City of Reno-owned or controlled property located adjacent to the Truckee River between Booth and South Virginia as a City of Reno Park pursuant to RMC.
All right, thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, can we jump to item D5? Please.
And Madam Mayor, just, I just want to just make sure the record's clear, that was the adoption of the proposed resolution. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item, item D5?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do, we did receive correspondence on this item for letters of support, but we do not have any live public comment registered.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, hello?
Hello, good afternoon.
Take it away, Cynthia.
Madam Mayor, City Council. Cynthia is Prosa Chief Equity and Community Relations Officer, for the record. The item before you is a presentation and seeking your direction on allocating ARPA funding. In alignment with the strategic plan collectively, the items that you will hear from, projects and contracts all align with these top priorities for the city, public safety, sustainability, infrastructure, and certainly supporting our unsheltered community.
And Madam Mayor, just for the record, I'd like to note that Councilmember Brekis was absent for the last vote and is not on Zoom at this time.
Right, thank you.
The items before you for consideration include two contracts. We currently have contracts with Rise and Karma Box and three projects related to parks and recreation. These projects are scalable, they ensure that we comply with ARPA guidelines, and most importantly, the allocation would align with ARPA requirements of doing so by December of 2024. Touching on the first two items, so these are contracts for Karma Box and Rise. We currently have standing contracts with them. They will be expiring, their last day is actually on Monday, so come Tuesday, we don't have those contracts with them. The contracts would be for 12 months. It's providing continuity of services for this community, and I would like to highlight that they're currently very well-integrated with Clean and Safe as we operate, but most importantly, they bring in lived experience and trust with the unsheltered community. In addition to the services they provide, when we think of outreach, we think of interactions with individuals out in the elements, but they also provide transportation, support with permanent housing, not just in applying for, you know, a facility, but also in securing furniture when people move in and provide that aftercare follow-up and are also assigned special projects. So when we need extensive outreach, say at Paradise Park or Barbara Bennett or Record Street, they step in to support us as well. Additionally, with the Rapid Rehousing Program that council had approved on the 28th, this is part of the work that they're doing in connecting those individuals to us, and they also support debris removal throughout the City of Reno. And last but not least, I do want to highlight that the work that they're doing also incorporates outreach tools that we have, including one that's fairly new that you'll hear about more shortly. It's Drops, it's an application on a mobile device that makes outreach a lot easier, smoother, and more approachable. And to highlight the work that this team has conducted, we're very fortunate to partner with them. In 2023-36, housing arrangements were conducted, that includes, or excuse me, shelter housing arrangements. Sorry, I'm looking at my notes here. Housing arrangements would include permanent housing or access to, say, Crossroads or Hope Springs, which is longer term. Shelter arrangements include Caris Campus, Safe Camp as well, Our Place or Eddy House, identification replacements, this is a very essential component of this work because IDs are lost frequently, social securities cards are lost or stolen, and without that, it makes it a little bit difficult to apply for some resources. Forty-nine family reunifications and 99 resources were also accessed. Earlier, I mentioned that they help with debris removal, so Karma Box does have a team that helps with this. And if we quantify, just going back to my 13-gallon trash bag, which is the average trash bag used in a household, that's over 11,000 trash bags collected in the last year alone. This work is not easy, and certainly there are a lot of no's when you're doing outreach, but I do want to remind everyone that every single no is closer to a yes, and this data really highlights that work. And with that, I will pass it over to Nathan.
Thank you, Nathan Elliott, Parks and Recreation Director for the record. Here are a few of the other items that are being recommended for the reallocation of this ARPA funding. The project highlighted at $450,000 to conclude or to complete the lights at the Reno Tennis Center on Courts Five and Seven would significantly increase the capacity to serve in that space throughout the year, whereas right now, we're limited to daylight and very limited lighting opportunities in that space. The rolling recreation trailer is an awesome impact tool that we've brought to the city this year that takes parks and recreation to the community for parks that don't have a facility near them or need activation. You'll be able to see that in action starting next Monday, very consistently at Barbara Bennett Park from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and on Saturday mornings, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. So the goal is bring the kids out, bring the families out, give them activity, and let them take their parks back. So, and then on the far right, we've got mobile security cameras that have an audible response to let people know when they're going into an area that they're not allowed to be in. We use this in the parks currently. We only have one to try to test it out. This would allow us to add five more, and they could be set to park hours where, say, if it's in West Street Plaza, that if somebody wanders into West Street and wants to linger there for a significant amount of time, it'll notify them that they're outside of the regulations of the park. So we'd add five of those and be able to deploy those at different parts of the city and problem areas for our park system. All right, with that.
Okay, awesome. Okay, love all of that. Let me just ask you, Nathan.
Sure.
On the rolling unit, explain how that works. Like, I think it's a killer, killer concept. I love it, love it, love it. But it's not that easy that you just find the time to do it, grab the staff. I mean, it's labor-intensive. I know, because I owned a fashion truck. You gotta have...
We need to get that back out there.
Do you know what I mean? So I know, like...
Yeah, fashion and fun.
Like, well, and it's also sort of pop-up, it's on the go, which is awesome, but kind of explain the logistics, because the other thing is, like, and you weren't here before, so it's a good thing, but we bought, what was that, that theater rolling, what was it? What do we call that?
Stage?
And it hardly ever gets used, and it was very expensive.
Yes.
What was that?
It's the Showmobile.
Yeah.
Yes, we've retired that.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I think the difference is...
I need you to explain to me how this works.
The simplicity of this is it's literally a trailer, and it has equipment in it, like sports equipment, it's got board games, we can do a screen-on-the-green movie night, our staff can do it, two staff can operate this. So as far as staffing, finding people with the right energy who want to engage in a lot of spaces is key, but we have those, and we've had a very successful summer, and a few of you have gotten to participate in those. This would allow us to bring some consistency to some areas where we could start to build consistent participation from the communities and really get a foothold in those spaces.
Okay, I love that.
It's totally doable.
Okay, here's what I really want to see, though, because we touched on it today a little bit, and it's so awesome, and we're not doing it because we tend to not want to compete with businesses, but there are not any businesses doing it, and I would love it if you would commit that in the summer, you're going to make it a mission to include that part of like getting rafts out, getting people, because we have that beautiful, what do we call it, river raft amenity course, and we don't use it. So can you commit that, for my support, that you'll figure out some way to really engage in that space? Because I just feel like it's such an exciting part of summer and the river, and it doesn't happen.
Sure, I definitely think this could be connected as far as the little more extreme, we would probably need some support with the insurance and things like that, but connecting it to the river and inviting people down to play and then have areas of refuge when they get out of the water and things like that is definitely something we can commit to.
Okay, awesome. Love it. Okay, Councilwoman Reese, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. I think all of the things that you've posited in this allocation meet all the needs that I can see. Obviously, it's a small amount of dollars in the overall course of things, and there was probably more asked than we could ever cover. So for my part, I want to say thank you, especially to Mrs. Sparza for her presentation about the work that Rise and Karma Box Project do. I think it is hard work that they do, and the space they occupy is very challenging, and so, but I do like the concept that they're well-integrated with the Clean and Safe Program, so they're all working together, so thank you for that. But otherwise, everything else looks awesome to me. Thank you so much. I will say, there was one thing that didn't quite make it to the end line, and, but I think I know the answer to this. There's an expectation of this council about trashcans downtown and especially along the river. Tell me, because you probably are intimately familiar with our inquiries about this, because they end up being in parks a lot of time, where are we with those? Are we getting closer to having those all deployed and purchased and we're ready to go? And I know Madam Mayor has been asking about these.
He knows, he knows I'm very salty over this, and that was going to be my next go-around, and I love Councilwoman for bringing it up. And Brian, I don't know if you know anything, or Ashley...
I'll turn it over to Brian.
You would, yeah. This is where, because I was a huge proponent of bringing this money back, and I am salty over the fact that I don't see the full allocation of trashcans. I know we've said we would piecemeal it out and put it on the river. It's totally unacceptable. Those trashcans are so problematic for people reaching in there for drugs, paraphernalia, everything under the sun. I want this taken care of. It's very hard to support other things that are recreation-related when there's other safety issues that need to be addressed. I'm going to ask ACM Attorney over here, because maybe you don't know, Brian, I know we've had this conversation, you did not know what I was talking about, rightfully so, I get it, but ACM Attorney, why don't you tell us where we're at with that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I can speak to two things, and I think Brian can give us details on the river portion of trashcans, because my understanding is that we have one section which are trashcans along the river, and he can speak to that. Secondary is the request that council has made for trashcans. Those were originally not part of the Virginia Street placemaking allocation. However, I understand that staff is trying to figure out how to cobble together the monies that you're looking for.
And I would say, take it out of the placemaking and get necessities. Can you imagine not having a trashcan in your bathroom? I mean, come on. Like, this is where I see red and see it loud and clear, that we can go off and spend money on, you know, pretty placemaking, but we can't have necessities, and it shouldn't also be the DRP's responsibility. If the DRP did not exist, then the City of Reno would have to clean it up, period. And I want trashcans everywhere. That's why you see them in Disneyland, that's why you see it clean all over the place whenever you're downtown in the most challenging areas. Go in Midtown and look at their trashcans, how nice they are, they actually advertise what's happening, what's coming up. Like, and I just feel like the fact that we can't even get trashcans, but we're going to do other things, this is where I get sideways. One minute, I hear we're going to get them, the next, I hear, you know, oh, we're just doing them along the river. So I do want some clarity. See what Councilwoman Reese brought up and how this gets me going?
We understand the need for cleanliness, and we support you in that, Madam Mayor. The reason why it's separated is, Brian could say, we have them coming along the river. That was part of the allocation. Do you want to speak to that? And then we'll go back to the downtown ones, because I have the separate...
Yes, part of the Truckee River Vision Plan, the ARPA funding, was to do trashcans, pet waste stations, as well as improvements to West Street Plaza. The trashcans are on order.
Yeah, thank God. No, I knew that, and you guys have told me that, but I feel like I get diverted, like you guys want to divert me to, oh, here they are along the river, so we'll appease her over there on the river. Fine, good, that's great. That should be like no-brainer. But also, and whenever I say trashcans, I also want the dog poop stations. We just did, thank you very much, Nathan, and Councilwoman Taylor, and Monica and her team all came out, all of you guys that came out. We had over 100 people that cleaned up the river on Saturday. It was remarkable. But here's where I get super upset, is, again, we were cleaning up trash, and I saw nothing for dog, you know, waste stations and no waste bags downtown whatsoever. And there is a lot, a lot of feces downtown, a lot, and none of those have come to fruition. And so I keep feeling like I get this game that goes on and on and on. So I want dog stations so people can get, you know, their bags and clean up after themselves, and then I want trashcans. I want downtown to be cleaned up. I feel like this has just come to a head where if I have to send one more email about a trashcan, I'm going to lose my mind.
So, Madam Mayor, with river, and then I'm going to come back to your downtown, we have on-order trashcans and dog waste stations. So river, taken care of, ordered, it is now currently marked, anyone who walks on the river path will see a pink dot. Wherever that pink dot is, is where a trashcan is going, so you'll be able to see them in close increments, because we know that that's important.
Yeah.
So that's the riverside. For, do you want to say more things?
We have 48 trashcans and 32 pet waste stations already identified for the river corridor.
Okay, that's the river. I get the river.
Yes.
I also want to hear about downtown, because I've been walking that a lot, and
it's filthy. It's absolutely unacceptable.
Madam Mayor, I'm just a little concerned that we're getting a little far afield of this particular item.
Jonathan, but I've been asking and asking, and I can't seem to get an answer, so...
Fair enough. I just wanted to make, yeah, put you on, yeah.
Mr. Attorney, I do think that we're being asked to vote on ARPA projects, and I think that if we don't vote on one, to Mayor's point, I mean, the point is, do we need some of this money for the issues that she's saying, which would lead to a no vote on one of them?
Yeah, and that's a fair comment. I just want to put...
I guess I'm trying to state my case for this council to understand how important it is to have a clean city, and I think they agree with me. So that's where I'm going. So I know this will be a great media headline, we want trashcans everywhere, right? Because I know how the medias will be like, Mayor Shimi can't get a trashcan. Let's just say, call it out.
So, Madam Mayor...
But I'm passionate about it, because I feel like I shouldn't, this shouldn't be an issue. If I, I don't know, if your mayor can't get a trashcan, I don't know who can. Sorry.
Well, I think they're hearing you, Madam Mayor, it's very, you know, you're not like other mayors, you come correct about the trash. You don't want to see these things. It's very demure and very mindful of you.
Demure? You sound like a, like one of those young hipsters, it's very demure.
Mindful of you.
Very mindful, demure.
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared, unless other people have questions, to make a motion.
Yes, please do, but I think I made it loud and clear.
Oh, I have some comments.
Oh, do.
I have some comments.
Well, I was trying to not continue to fester the situation. Okay. Anyway, let me go this way, and then I'll come right back to you. Sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Reese. You were good, Councilwoman, and I appreciate Councilwoman Reese allowing me to have the opportunity to talk about it, because I didn't want to make it to that level, but I did. Go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
I think these are worthwhile projects. I had the same question, though, that you did, Madam Mayor, about the rolling playground, play equipment, let's call it, right? Mobile play equipment, is that a good way to put it? Rolling cart? I wasn't sure what they were. I will tell you, my question is, are we going to have additional ARPA money at this last sort of gasp? Hundred thousand, three million? I have no idea. Does anyone know? Is there more coming than this?
My understanding is that this is the final allocation.
Yeah.
Should anything change, council will be notified.
Okay. I know that we're under a timeframe to get all contracts done by mid-December.
Correct.
And so I just want to plant a seed, and I know that Mayor Shimi knows about this. I know she's still thinking about trashcans, but, and I'm not sure where this falls, but we have over at Animal Services, it's identified, we have a huge spay-neuter problem with dogs and cats, and it really relates directly to our affordable housing issues. When people have pets, let's say they're at the Caris Campus, they can't move in unless they're pet-certified, it's disease-free, it is spayed, et cetera, et cetera, but it's, these services are not widely available, and they're very expensive. So the county is looking at putting three-quarters of a million dollars towards this project, but there's still more need. And so I just wanted to plant a seed, which is that if there is these last remaining dollars, 50,000, 100,000, that is something I would love to see it go to. I understand there may be issues about that, but we are part of a three-party agreement with the county and Sparks on animal services. If we weren't part of that, we'd be doing it all by ourselves. So we're part of a unified approach, but I want to make sure, again, that if, it really, again, relates directly to affordable housing issues and unhoused people, being able to get low-cost spay-neuter so people can move into homes, okay, or apartments or whatever. I just want to make a note on that. I know it's not one of the choices here, but it's, if I had a choice, it'd be the next in line, and I think we are going to have some unappropriated money. Okay, all right. And Madam Mayor, I just made a pitch for some additional funds for spay-neuter. We got an unsolicited proposal this week for that.
I do want to, just before we jump over there, I want to remind you, you know the county is looking at some funds on that aspect.
I just mentioned that.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, 750,000.
But before we jump in, I want to make sure that that gets allocated.
I'm working that issue as well.
Okay, thank you.
But we got also a proposal ourselves, so I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you so much. What you know, I absolutely love.
I know.
Okay, Councilwoman Ebert, go ahead.
Yeah, I have some questions. I noticed in these agreements, it said that there's some requirements about reporting from these groups that get the ARPA funds. Are we receiving reports from either, or from RISE or Karma Box?
We are. The reports are submitted to staff. They also participate in what is called the HMIAS, the Homeless Management Information System. So data's entered there as well, based on interactions that they have with the community. And they're also utilizing an app called Drops that we recently launched, so.
Okay. So we do have, like, information, we do have data on
Absolutely.
their, you know, success with their programs, things like that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So I had another question, too. Is that something that council can get an update on occasionally, too?
Absolutely. We, the data that was presented to you is actually going to be part of our annual report. Clean and Safe did one last year. This year, we're developing a more comprehensive report that is also going to include data from housing and neighborhood development, with the rental assistance programs, deposit assistance, and community court data. So that will be released, I would say, in the next month or so.
Okay.
That will highlight that as well.
Okay.
And I would also add that every month, we send out council memos highlighting interactions, and that includes our Clean and Safe team, our outreach, RPD, Park Rangers, and Community Court as well.
Does it include these groups that are receiving ARPA funds?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I also just had some questions about, you know, concerns about these organizations being in compliance with any kind of tax laws. Is there any regulation for us to be concerned about if somebody loses, like, their nonprofit status or anything like that? Is a vetting process happening to make sure that they're up to date with everything that they need to do before we allocate any funds to them?
For the nonprofits to be brought forth, they need to be in good standing, so that information was verified.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
No. But you already have one, so if it was in Midtown, it would...
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm going to ask for just... Still heated over trash cans.
No, I mean, I'm just going to ask for a little bit of leniency, because I'm super passionate about this, too. And I want to approve everything in here. And it's not one person, it's not one program, but I'm really, really frustrated. I am an advocate for safe and clean city. I started working on this before council, reaching out to Councilwoman Brekis with what I saw downtown. I got on the board of Eddie House. And since being on council, I have supported every initiative this council has for police, security, more code, more higher wages, more cameras, more River Rangers, hundreds of thousands of dollars in activation. And we're asking for, you know, $700,000 more for Karma and RISE, which, again, I'm supportive of. But in our last report, we saw 177 people did not want services. They didn't want services. They didn't want RISE. They didn't want Karma Box. They didn't want Clean and Safe. I can't walk my dogs without getting whipped at. My neighbors can't use the park without getting contact highs. People can't use our river without having trash, without having camps.
Yep.
And I need to understand how these programs get us to a clean, safe city. And if this isn't working, what do we need to do? And I'm not frustrated with the team. I'm just wondering, do we need a place where we have a zero-based shelter where these folks can go? Because they're not the ones that want services. They aren't the ones that need our hand services. There are 177 people out there that don't want anything to do with help, and they're destroying our places. And I need to understand how we get there. Is it a collaboration with the county? Is it with the Sparks? Is it all of us? What do we need to do? Because it's whack-a-mole. And I've called 911. I've called the non-emergency number. I've talked with city staff. I've worked with Cynthia. It's constantly, it's on the railroad tracks. It's on the river. It's on our streets. I walked Fourth Street last night. We have somebody that wants to put $23 million on Fourth Street, and there are people littered all through Fourth Street. If they don't want to go to the CARES campus, they can't ruin our public places. And again, I'm sorry, I'm really passionate, but we're throwing more money on this. How does this get us where we need to be? Anybody? I'm welcome.
I think, right now, we're looking at how we allocate these funds, and there's a lot of frustration, I think particularly in downtown and to your, to your comments. I think we, this is a crisis. And it's really hard to see that I can't get a trash can downtown, or even for, you know, a poop station for dogs. I mean, come on, like, really? You know, like, I can't even get that, because a year ago, at my last cleanup, I asked for it, and still nothing. So I feel like a broken record, also with enforcement downtown. Now, some of that stuff is getting diverted over to Fourth Street. I think she's right. All of us up here have, and this is not directed to you, you're just coming before us, but all of us up here have supported every single initiative when it comes to a clean, safe city. And yet, I think there is a lot to be desired. And, you know, I don't know, but looking at maybe some of these in some possible way, bring it back, and everyone loud and clear might want to hear that anyone that was allocated some ARPA money, maybe there needs to be a readjustment of our thought process.
I just, again, I need to understand what the solution is. And then my other question, specific for Karma Box and RISE, we're out of ARPA money, and the city isn't going to be able to fund these projects anymore. So what is their, what is their succession plan? How are they going to be getting funds in the coming years? What does that look like? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Because I'm going to move forward.
Yeah, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to support Councilmember Taylor in what she said, and I wasn't going to go that hard, because it's not my ward. But that's kind of what I was getting at in asking for these reports on, you know, what are the outcomes downtown? Because I don't live down there, but I am in the city, and I can't say that...
But Councilwoman Ebert, it's also, these services would also be for you as well?
I know, but I'm just saying, there's areas that are, it's more concentrated.
More challenging, okay.
And I call for services in my ward, and I see them come out and help people in my ward, too. But there's definitely areas where it's more concentrated. And I don't have the struggles with people with the whips in my neighborhood. I have my own struggles, but that's unique, more so to Councilmember Taylor's. And I agree with her. It's like, it's not really, the problem's not gone. We've put a lot of money to it. There's a lot more money to it, to something that hasn't solved the problem, and the money is almost gone. So what are we doing, really, with this money? Like, I don't feel like we're getting results, and the money is going to run out, you know? So do we have a long-term strategy? And I know it's ARPA dollars, so we only have limited amount of time to do things, which is why I've been asking for a long time to have, like, a plan B for uses for this money. But, you know, I don't, I don't know that we're getting our monies worth. It doesn't sound like we are for Ms. Taylor, so I just wanted to say that.
All right. Give me a motion. I don't, I don't really want to support this.
Yeah, well, maybe we should table it, and you should...
Why don't we bring it back?
I mean, if you want more input, and you want them to do something different.
I do want to move forward. The one thing that I think, well, no, I mean, I think we can all get here, but I really hope that, you know, that people understand that this gets kind of frustrating whenever, like, I feel like, I guess I feel like a broken record, and that's sort of hard. And these are all things that should not be victims to the things that we're frustrated about. So I want to be very, very supportive.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, I am leaving. Will you please take over?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I must leave at 5:00 as well, so we're going to zip through the rest of the agenda.
I know. I'm just, in case one of these blows up. Okay.
Good. The last one didn't do so well.
That's what I'm saying.
Madam Clerk, can I just confirm that we've got to go to item D6, David 6, and also open the redevelopment agency at the same time? That's where we are now? Okay.
We have item D2, I believe, as well, Madam Clerk. We have item D2 first, council, and then I'd recommend moving to D6 and opening RDA.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Madam Vice Mayor, on item D2, I'll move to approve staff recommendation, unless there are questions.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions on item D2, which is about phlebotomy services and court testimony for the Reno Police Department? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Did I hear a second?
Yes, Ms. Taylor.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. We're going on to item D6. And can you check us, Madam Clerk, that we've covered all the items? I know we've taken quite a bit out of order. Item D6 has to do a disposition of property at 1940 East Fourth Street, and I think it's Brian.
It is, Madam Vice Mayor. With this item, I would turn to the clerk to open up the redevelopment agency at this time, and then we will
Okay, let me pull up that agenda, too.
Finish that and come back.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, can you show that we're opening up the redevelopment?
Yes. So we're opening the redevelopment agency board for Wednesday, September 25. We'll move into item A2, roll call. Councilmember Brekis, absent at this time. Dour?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Sheevy, absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board.
Okay. And then on to public comment for that?
At this time, we do not have any public comment registered for the redevelopment agency board, so we can go ahead and close that out.
All right.
I'm sorry. Mr. Shipman, do I need to read the link on this one as well?
Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, https://links.reno.gov/council925.
Okay. All right. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously and approval of the minutes.
So moved.
For July 31, 2024, for redevelopment agency board. We have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. And then we're going on to item C1 on the redevelopment agency, and that corresponds to item D6 on our regular agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Brian McArdle, Revitalization Manager, for the record, not too dissimilar to how we have disposed of other properties along Fourth Street. We have a similar letter of interest to acquire, or to, letter of interest of a current tenant, leaseholder currently on a city of Reno RDA-owned property that is seeking to purchase the property from the city and the redevelopment agency. How this aligns with the strategic plan is that it is, you know, we do make revenue when we dispose of these properties, as well as we do care about how these properties are disposed of, what their future is. We do like to see these leaseholders and tenants improve their property along with the sale. And so staff has received a letter of interest from Hoot and Tire, which is owned by Hoot and Real Estate LLC, to purchase the property that they currently lease from the city. They have done a few improvements on this property as well, but they would like to purchase it to do additional fencing, sort of secure the site a little bit more. And just for reference, this is right across the street from the CARES campus, as well as the new Hopes facility that has just been built.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions from Mr. McArdle?
No questions, Madam Vice Mayor. I'll move to approve staff recommendations, and can make all the findings consistent with our development and sale policies.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Ms. Taylor, to allow the purchase of this property by Hoot and Tire, or LLC. I didn't hear from you, Mr. Martinez. Did you have any questions about this?
Yeah, I did have my hand up. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity. I just wanted to put on the record that I appreciate staff looking at doing this process and making sure that we dispose of property when adequately. I wanted to see if there was any ways to support some of the efforts that staff has done in the Restore Program. I've heard from many of our small businesses what a positive impact that was for them. And so, in particular, I know Councilmember Taylor, the mayor, and I have been to a few meetings where Fourth Street business owners have expressed some concerns about issues going on along the Fourth Street corridor that are affecting their businesses. And so, just trying to see if there's a way that we can support those business owners to bring forward another round of the Restore Program to help with some of the issues that they're going, that they're dealing with. And so trying to get some of the money into the hands of these small business owners sooner rather than later, to help make a tangible difference and impact our community, I think would be a beneficial thing to do, given that this property is specifically on Fourth Street and can go back and help some of the blight and issues that we're hearing from the small business owners on Fourth Street. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Martinez. Any other comments on this item? All right. Well, we have a motion by Mr. Reese and a second by Councilmember Taylor, and I'm ready for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McArdle. Good job. I love it when this kind of thing happens. People become landowners instead of tenants. They take an extra investment in their property. Makes a lot of sense to me. All right. Moving to finish the redevelopment agency, the only thing we have are F1, which is comments and announcements related to redevelopment agency.
Madam Vice Mayor, I just...
Did I skip something?
No, I just, I think everybody is doing a good job. I just want to make sure the record's clear that that motion was both for the city council on the city council agenda, and it was for item C1 on the redevelopment agenda. And if we could just confirm, I just want to make sure there's not a...
I'll confirm that I was, and I had referenced both Charlie 1 and D6.
Okay, very good. And so now we're closing out the redevelopment agency with F1. Any board comments on this agenda? No, seeing none. Is there a final public comment on this agenda?
Not on the redevelopment agency board.
All right. We will close the redevelopment agency board. We'll move back into our regular meeting. Moving beyond D7, what is remaining? Just H1. All right. Well, Henry 1 has a lot to do with city council comments on activities they are doing on various boards, commissions. Let me go around the room. Ms. Taylor, anything? Mr. Reese, nothing. Ms. Ebert has nothing. This is comments. We're on H1. Mr. Martinez, any comments for the group?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any either. All right. We'll close out H1. We'll turn to our final public comment, which is J1.
Damian Cole.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Damian Cole. For the record, I am 17-year resident of downtown Reno. I would like the written comment and verbal comment that I'm making to be entered into the public record, please. I would like to express my great joy that the city council unanimously voted to pass the River, the Truckee River Vision Plan. Councilwoman Dour, thank you very much for making the motion, and Councilwoman Taylor, thank you for seconding it. I believe that this plan is the best foot forward in the path that will ultimately enrich the city by revitalizing what I feel is truly the city's core essence, the river. Before the railroad, before the casinos, there was the river, and building a bridge across it, creating Fuller's Crossing, is how this city began. Being a resident of the Riverside Otterslofts, I hold the immense privilege of living precisely on the site where this happened. Now that the plan has been adopted, and now that the city has voted for creating a special parks district overlay and moving to adopt the plan that chooses to reintroduce the law and forgotten policy choice of having residential, commercial, and retail frontage face the river rather than turning their backs on it, I feel it is time to begin an important conversation about the number-one sociopolitical culprit that is making this plan, against making this plan a reality. NIMBYism. NIMBY, acronym for Not in My Backyard. NIMBYism, NIMBY acronym for not in my backyard, a term originally coined by proponents of the nuclear industry lamenting about the country's reluctance of building new nuclear power plants in the nineteen-eighties, has since been turned on its head for the last forty years to become the rallying cry against nefarious policies prohibiting positive changes in society such as affordable housing, racial equality, gentrification, and now, most recently, zoning policies that stand in the way of filling in the missing middle housing gap, and building equitable infrastructure for low-cost transportation alternatives to automobiles. In the context of the river, NIMBYism has become prominent. Originally, the Truckee River plan to create what is, was then called the Green Belt, it was achieved through acts of municipal, county, and state legislation. The Truckee River Green Belt was not only adopted and executed by these entities, but also adopted guidelines for the city's Reno redevelopment agency's neighborhood guidelines, and those guidelines had stated that the first floor of every commercial frontage within the redevelopment zoning district was to be open to the public, free of fencing, and opaque closed-off walls. It was decided wisely, in my estimation, that the key component of creating an open and prosperous vibrant community was to do so precisely as this, and all lands redeveloped were to adopt, build, the standard. It looks like I am not going to get past the first page, um, very sorry about that, I'm going to have to...
Well, Mr. Cole, feel free to send it to us, if you'd like...
Oh, oh, it's right here, all right, thank you.
Okay, or to hand it to our clerk, who will share it with us.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You have options.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thanks for being here, and let me ask, I noticed we have some new people in the audience, I didn't know, were any of those interested in making public comment? We're on our last item of the day.
It would just be an introduction of the group.
Well, come on up, and then after you speak, fill out a form, and we'd love to know who you brought to introduce us, too.
Hello, my name is Sarah Jones, I'm with the Northern Nevada International Center, and I work as a program coordinator, this is the Open World Program, um, they are a delegation from Vietnam, they're members of parliament, and they're also joined by a facilitator from the Hanoi Embassy, and we wanted to bring them to your city council to learn about how constituents can talk to their local elected leaders.
Okay, well, we had quite a, we had two hours of public comment this morning, um, I think it was, it might have gone to three, actually, no, two hours, and then we've had a very short public comment here at the end, but, um, we welcome them, and you said they are from where?
Vietnam.
That's what I thought you said, and how long are they here for?
So, they started their journey in DC for about a week, and then they've been in Reno since Friday, going to the Aces game, exploring our local community, they stay with home hosts, and then they started their program officially on Monday, where we met with various resources, legislative leaders, um, and were able to kind of learn about democracy in the United States.
Right, and then you said some of them themselves are in an elected role or a parliamentary role?
Yes, they are all elected.
All elected officials?
Yes.
Our counterparts, all right, that's fantastic, and is that elected for city, equivalent of a city, county, the whole country?
These would be national assembly leaders, so they are equivalent to our congressmen and women.
Okay, well, we're very honored to have you here today, um, we couldn't be more pleased that you've chosen to visit with Reno, Nevada, and see us in action, and I'm glad you had a chance to meet with legislative leaders, um, we are, I guess, the level of government closest to the people, um, and it goes thereon, but you are equivalent, it sounds like, to our national congressmen and women and senators, and so, wow, thank you for choosing to visit with us, um, love to see more of you, actually. All right, well, thank you for being here with the International Center, I've been pleased to support your group, as, you know, over the last ten years, it's been an honor as well, you do amazing work there, you really do.
Thank you, we appreciate your support so much.
All right, all right.
Yeah, if you haven't done a home host program through the Northern Nevada International Center, you might consider it, because it's great, we've had folks in our home from China, from Russia, um, from Kyrgyzstan, so it's, it's pretty fun.
It's amazing, all right. Okay, any, um, final public comment, Madam Clerk?
We have no live public comment, Madam Vice Mayor, but for the record, um, either after four PM yesterday, or the comments were general in nature, we did receive two additional letters for J one, one letter in opposition and one letter of concern that will be uploaded to the meeting portal and a part of the permanent record, so we're just looking for a motion to adjourn.
All right, all right, we have a motion from Mr. Reese, second from Councilmember Taylor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We are adjourned.